All the meeting, daughter. Mr. Denae, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sir.
Please raise your hand, take your hats off. Hand over your hearts.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll observe a moment of silence. Madam Secretary, call the road, please.
Hasheb, Gustan, Zadra, Sveraza, George, Ayazi, Kishel.
Here. There's one item we'll be hearing right after before the consent agenda, and that's item I-1, ordnance relating to City of Reno, Nevada's Senior Lean Sales Tax Revenue Refunding Bonds for Retract. Public hearings 12:15. Item F-1 through F-8, public hearing this evening. Item M-1, TCA Properties. Any changes to the agenda you'd like to make? Have a motion, have a second? Have a second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimity. Item A-4, public comment. We have two people that don't wish to speak. Tim Young, in support of the preservation of the position of Resource Development Cultural Affairs Manager, and the Reno Chamber Orchestra's Scott Faulkner. Garcia favors the preservation of the Resource Development Cultural Affairs Manager position. People wishing to speak? We have a lot of people to speak, so if you hear somebody that's already said something, you're going to say pass to the next one, if you would, please. Get along, Mary Ellen Horent.
Good afternoon, and thank you for letting me speak. VSA Arts of Nevada is also located at the Lake Mansion, which we've all visited. We thank you for your past support and realization that the arts make a difference in Reno. The cultural event grant helped from the Lake Mansion Jingles with Art and History on December 4th, and our Youth Art Month exhibit during the month of March, and our Free Youth Art Month Festival to the public on March 19th. I realize, J-15, that you're considering reducing the amount of the cultural event grants, and we totally respect that decision. If you know me and our organization, you know we're very thrifty, which has really come in handy in these past couple of years, so we respect that decision. The thing that we're most concerned about is the elimination of the arts and cultural position. We here and we all have said, think out of the box, be creative, be a global thinker. Those same attributes will get us out of this financial mess. Yet the very activities that promote these qualities in our children and adults continue to be reduced or eliminated through funding and staff cuts. We are very concerned about the possibility of the elimination of the only arts and cultural staff position for the city. We cannot expect volunteers to provide near the same level of expertise or availability as a staff person. Working with volunteers is not the same as working with a staff person who you know will be there for advice, questions, and concerns, not only for all the arts organizations, but for the media, for artists, for tourists, and locals. Thank you again for realizing the importance of what we do day in and day out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Turkey Stremel.
Good afternoon. My name is Turkey Stremel, and my husband and I have had Stremel Gallery for over 41 years. And as part of the vital and active art scene here in our community, I have seen the arts prosper through the dedication and the passion of a few of our art advocates. I know for a fact that the arts have become a major draw for outsiders to make Reno and Tahoe their destination to live and to visit. The arts have become critical, not just in Reno, but all over Nevada and the United States. To keep it high standing in our region, that is no small feat. It takes a uniquely talented person to cultivate this rare talent we call managing the arts. The best person I have ever met for this job is Christine Fay, and she holds the most important position our city has for our continued public art programs. I was in the Public Art Committee for over eight years, and in that term, I watched Christine negotiate and build communications for the arts in our community. She is the glue and the foundation to keep the public arts alive and essential. I know you all have a really tough job on this board committee, excuse me, but you have no idea how hard it is to keep and maintain, communicate, negotiate, and deliver the arts to this region. It's sort of like herding cats across the Truckee River. Communication with the artists and the public, professionalism, and results-oriented are major in Christine's DNA. If you eliminate her position and her unique talents, all of our public art assets will be compromised to the point where we, as a community, cannot say to our region that this is the arts. The outdoors and the arts are essential to our city and our community, and are critical for our economy here in Nevada. I beg you, we beg you, not to eliminate Christine's job. We will all greatly suffer if you do. No one else is qualified to steer this mighty ship, and I for one, and many of us, do not want to watch it sink or go into the hands of someone who is not qualified to be our cultural affairs manager. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Robert Cook.
Mayor Kishel, council members. My name's Robert Cook. I reside at 1989 Corleone Drive in Sparks. I'm here to speak to you today in opposition to the cancellation of the Northern Nevada Senior Games. As you can tell from the hardware I'm wearing today, which is the result of one year's participation in the games, I have been an avid member of the group that does this. I moved here nine years ago, in 2002. In 2003, I became aware of the Senior Games and have participated ever since. I would have worn all of the medals I won, but I couldn't stand up before you if I had done that. So I realize that the budget constraints are severe. I don't think that the impact of the Senior Games on the city or the regional budget has been all that severe. I request that you reinstate them, if at all are possible. If not, keep them in mind that they need to be reinstated in future years. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Sam Denae.
Sam Denae, Encyclopedia Reno Government, and I have to admit, on the Encyclopedia Reno Government, I learn something every day. I didn't even know we had Senior Games. I guess the media, once again, is leaving something out. Besides leaving out Sam Denae's name, they don't even mention the Senior Games, at least not as much as they should. And now, a lot of folks are down here worried about that lady losing her job over there at the Arts Director Operation. I'm a pretty good artist myself. I've never even been invited to one of their functions, ever, and I'm not trying to speak against her, but that has to say something about this operation. Here we have Reno's own Two Wild Yankees Band singing sensation that's sweeping the nation, "We're Legends in Our Own Mind" Band, with well over 1,000 recorded songs out on YouTube and throughout the industry, and never once been invited to perform in any of their functions, and we do it always for charity and for free. So I'm not speaking against her necessarily, but I do have to say this. There's an art budget, and I'd like you to take a quick look, a deep look, and find out how much money is being sent over to Art Town. Art Town, that should be paying its own way after 10 or 15 years now. So why don't you take a look and balance the money between Art Town and maybe have that person take a little bit of, well, I don't even know what her salary is, bring her salary down into the area of maybe a new fireman or something like that. I'm here mainly to talk about the best person to be the new Reno City Manager. He doesn't have a lot of, nobody wants the job, it looks like. I'm volunteering somebody. He doesn't have any paper in the wall, but he knows this town inside and out. He's got spunk and gumption and moxie and natural charisma. He's a quick learner. He's brilliant, actually, and he was that close, a couple thousand stolen votes, a couple of thousand stolen votes away from being the mayor of Reno himself. So this person I'm talking about can handle this job. He's a quick learner, and he would take this job over at half of the salary. Heck, he would take it over at half of the salary of the city manager's assistant. How does that sound? I'm talking about that Marine Corps veteran who had a plan, still has a plan, to save our city, Chad Denae, my son. And he didn't ask me to say this, but he'll take that job over, and I will guarantee it with my own capabilities, my own background. I will guarantee that he will do a good job and save this city, if that's possible. As I close out, I do notice that our current mayor has come down from the City Hall enclave, the City Council enclave on the 15th floor. He's come down to the street level and found out, golly, there's tattoo par, and I'm not trying to be mean, I'm just funny. He's found out there's tattoo parlors and saloons and slot machines and all sorts of things. He even came up with the idea of having slot machines on the back of the bathroom stalls. And you think about it, that's a pretty good idea. He didn't really come up with the idea, but it sounds like a good idea. The next thing we could do is, you know what? Tax those bathroom stalls.
We could put a poker machine right there, maybe we'd get some of your money while you're up in common.
What did you say?
We could put a poker machine right there, that lectern there.
That's a poker. See, see, there's an idea.
Thank you for your input. Sometimes a man says things he shouldn't have said, and I guess I should have said it, but anyway. Nettie Oliverio.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Council Acting Manager and Mayor. I'm Nettie Oliverio. I am Chair of the Arts and Culture Commission for the City of Reno, and I had the pleasure of being at the council meeting on February 28th, when one of the council persons asserted that perhaps the position of the arts manager was superfluous, and that our volunteer commission could in fact take on some of those roles. And I hopped to public comment, as you know, and attempted to correct this erroneous assumption, and to outline what it is that that position actually does, and to clarify that in fact volunteers are inappropriate for that. Several of the members of our arts industry also are concerned about that perception, and they are here today. And if I could ask just a moment to have them stand up so that you can see our arts industry, just a few of them. Thank you very much. These are great people who are doing some great things. Anybody who got to see the Philharmonic on Sunday and last night knows that a couple of the gentlemen in this room are intrinsically interwoven with creating that magnificent performance, and so we celebrate them, as we do all of our arts advocates, our arts creators, our arts industry. We are very concerned that there would be a thought that the single, single city staff liaison that interfaces with this arts industry for all of you might be taken away from us. This is very serious business. As you have heard from me, and you will hear from many others, we totally respect and much appreciate the fact that you have declared arts, cultural, and special events as one of the four priorities for this year coming. And we say respectfully, it cannot be done solely by volunteers. There has to be a coordinator in all of this. One of the roles, the major role of the Arts Commission is to act as your advisor, the city council's advisor. My advice to you respectfully is, do not cut this position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Colin Ross.
Hello. My name's Colin Ross. I'm the Artist in Residence for the Renowned Foundation, and I'm also the Program Coordinator for the Elder Care Concert Series, and I come to you today as the Director of the City of Reno's Senior Music Workshop. So I'm, in a way, advocating for the arts in general, and specifically for the jobs of the Commissioner and also the Senior Services Coordinator, Amber Martin. I got the idea for this Senior Music Workshop from the Art Town staff. I wrote a grant to the Nevada Arts Council as a pilot program, and we did very good numbers with it. The City of Reno wrote a grant. Amber Martin, all I did was help with the narrative, and she made the program a reality. I told the grant people that I thought we could get 15 to 25 people onstage, and perhaps 75 to 100 people to attend a free concert. The first concert, we had 36 people onstage, and 180 people paid $10 to come see it. The second concert, we had 46 people onstage and 208 people paid. So we basically quadrupled the numbers that we promised the grant people. This is an example of the different aspects of the arts community. Art Town, the City of Reno's Senior Services, and the Nevada Arts Council, all coming together to create a program out of thin air that did not exist. This gives me a one-day-a-week job that's not in a bar, and it gets all these wonderful friends of mine that are seniors out singing and having a great time. This program has been endorsed and is being participated in by some of the memory care facilities, because they realize what a great therapeutic thing this is for Alzheimer's and seniors in general. There's a wide range of cognitive abilities, people participating in this program, from people that are sharper than I am, that are just old, to people that literally don't know their relatives, but when they get onstage to sing these songs, they remember these songs, and they sing them with me. These programs are ongoing, and they're a really successful deal, and I'd like to just, you guys consider, I know the budgets are tough, but try and keep as much for your arts as you possibly can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Jose Cabelas. Jose Cabelas? I probably mispronounced that, sir, and I apologize.
It's okay. My name is JM Cabelas. I'm currently working for Stingray Tattoo. I was just coming up to you guys for, about tattoo eyes and what's going on with it. I'm doing the art show for next month, and I'm having kids participate on this kind of event. And high school students, everyone will be appreciated to come. It's an open invite, and hopefully this thing comes up to going on every month, every year, you know, so something big that will come up to put Reno on the map, honestly. And if you guys can name any famous tattoo artists, I have a lot in mind, but, you know, it's just a question for everyone. Art is something that I devoted my life into, get me out of trouble, something really passionate about. Thank you for your time for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Howard Rosenberg.
I'm here on the false pretenses. I'm not Howard Rosenberg. I have been told that I can't be Howard Rosenberg, otherwise I'll blow everything. Therefore, I've come to read into the record the following letter. Dear Mr. Mayor, I understand that these are days of lean budgets. It's come to my attention that Councilwoman Sveraza and Councilman Ayazi have objected to the proposed budget for the Arts-Culture subdivision of the Parks Department. They apparently think the major grant sponsorship should be kept intact and paid for by eliminating the position of the Arts and Culture Manager. They have apparently suggested that the management of the Arts and Culture Programs can be done by an all-volunteer Arts Commission. As a founding member of the Arts Commission, I'm stunned. Volunteers with professional positions of their own are supposed to take over the professional management of the Arts and Culture Programs, which include, in addition to grants, management of a multimillion-dollar art collection. Not only is that unrealistic and impractical, I suspect it would create liability issues for the city. If there is no professional management of these programs and collections, they'll be gone in a heartbeat. Grantees will have no contact point. There will be inadequate accountability, which is bound to end in a disaster. Worse, the city's professional caretaker would be out of the picture completely and leave it unprotected. Would you leave your portfolio without a manager? I don't think so. I might add that I understand the Arts and Culture Manager also does a number of other management jobs for the Park Department outside the parameters of the Arts and Culture Commission. I'll stop reading this and be Howard Rosenberg again. We all know that arts have brought in a tremendous amount to the city. We really don't have a hell of a lot more to sell, except arts and culture. It's what makes people want to come to our city. It's what might bring them back over and over again. We've got to reinvent ourselves. We've got a 20-year head start on that reinvention. We need to keep professional people in the position, particularly Christine Fay. I started Art Town. It was Mark Curtis's idea. I got the money for it, but if it weren't for Christine, it would never have come into being. They never told me about garbage. They never mentioned that, but you have to prepare for it. Christine knew that. They never told me about protecting the public. I never thought about that. I thought everybody would behave wonderfully. There was a man that was homeless that sat down in the middle of a group of people the first night of the Arts, of Art Town, and the family got up, grabbed their blankets, and went for the exit. I was going to go over and belt the guy that did this. Christine said, keep calm, find out what's wrong. So I went over to the man with his family and said, did something happen? And he said, look at that man over there. He offered me wine. And I looked at him, and I said, was it a bad vintage? That's exactly what happened. Everyone relaxed, they went back to what they were doing, and we started something that is really phenomenal. I'm not happy with where Art Town has gone, but that's beside the point. I realize it's only three minutes, and for me, is that all? Well, that's about as sensible as putting out a fire with applications.
And it is fun to have you here, and thank you for being here.
Hi, my pleasure.
Rayford Regis? Rayford? Okay, I just couldn't read your writing, sir. Sorry. Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Rafael Reyes. I've been tattooing for 17 years locally. I apprenticed under Kelly Miller. Kelly Miller was my master for 13 years, so I learned a lot about my business. Most of you probably don't even know nothing about my business, although you want to run it. A lot of shops opened up. I was the second shop that I worked for here in Reno. There was only two shops. Now, there's 20 shops, 26. You cannot stop that. You want to stop that? Stop the internet, because the internet is showing everybody, all you guys are tattoos and you're hiding, all of you are hiding tattoos. And you show it on the internet. So that attitude is changing the attitude that I cannot teach three, four, or five people at once. I can only take one student, and that's what I do, the way my teacher did to me. But there's videos, there's Google, there's everything out there telling people how to tattoo themselves, or how to tattoo their brother, cousin, and everybody else. We need education on this thing, not prohibition. We need to teach people the dangers of tattoos and the good things of tattoos. I tattooed half of your fire crews and half of your police people. At the same time, when they locked me up, I didn't use my tattoo privileges. I was a citizen at the time, and I behaved like a citizen. As I got caught in two days, I was going to show up. But as a businessman, I will protect my industry, and my industry is tattoos. It's been here since caveman time. Before politicians were here, before you guys were here, I was here. And I've been here, and we won't go away. You know, you guys got to regulate this in a good way. You guys got to come up and talk to us. Don't put us in the corner. Even the art industry put us in the corner. We don't like you. You're taboo. We're not taboo. I have three kids, three beautiful daughters. I got a wife that I've been feeding with my art, and I will not let nobody take it from me. Not even my master, when he told me I wasn't capable. 13 years later, I proved them, and I took out, I bought them out. That's who I am in this town. Who do you guys know other than Cat Von D? What other tattoo guys? Can you tell me? You got one? You got one? They come here every year for the convention, the first national tattoo convention happened in Reno. Lady Luck happens in Reno. I'm trying to arrange a getaway in Reno. You want to push us away?
No.
Is that what you want to do?
No.
Why would you?
No.
Regulate us in a fashion, in a good way.
That's all we're looking at.
In a good manner of way.
That's all we're looking at.
We're already regulated by the Health Department. I already pay you guys enough money. If you guys don't even let these people open up, they will go underground. They don't stop them in the prisons, they don't stop them in the jungles. Tattoos is humanity. It's a blood-burping ritual that will never go away.
Nobody's trying to do that, sir. We just don't need one in every other building.
It's part of our culture.
Thank you. Tim Jones.
Good afternoon. I'm Tim Jones, Chair of the Board of the Nevada Arts Council, the agency which is responsible for, at least on the state level, encouraging participation in and providing support for Nevada's arts and culture, our creative industry. To that end, we provide hundreds of grants and support services to cities, organizations, artists, and schools throughout Nevada every year. When I watched the video of the February 28th council meeting and heard the question about the need for an arts manager in the city, which is the position that people have been referring to, I became concerned, especially after so many years of having a professional cultural affairs position here in Reno. Allow me to address this, if you will, from the perspective of the Nevada Arts Council and our philosophical belief and practical application regarding cultural partnerships. As our dollars become more precious under the current budget situation, just as your city dollars are, we look to those municipalities and organizations who provide the necessary assurances that their partnership brings an active and strongly committed level of oversight and stewardship for this funding. And this funding is often a combination of federal and state dollars. It is our experience that cities solidly supporting a position where this management and oversight is present are best equipped to provide that reliability and effectiveness as one of our partners. And as a result, and this is really what we're talking about, our citizens, young and old alike, reap the benefits. The grants panelists who annually review the Nevada Arts Council applications also share in this approach. I have chaired many a grants panel, and I can assure you that I have heard concerns voiced regarding grants management abilities of applicants, just as questions are raised about the artistic excellence of the project itself. It is my understanding that one culturally focused supervisory position in PRCS was lost last year. For the benefit of our partnership with the City of Reno, for the benefit of our citizens who have come to rely on arts and culture as being so critically important in our city, I urge you to weigh with great consideration any city, I urge you to weigh with great consideration any thought of removing the one remaining professional position responsible for the oversight of cultural affairs in the City of Reno. Thank you. Try not to, sir. Try not to.
But you're going to.
Hey, we're state.
Thank you very much.
You know what's coming down from the state.
Maria Bengachia? I messed that up.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
That's alright.
Just couldn't read it.
Everybody does. My name is Moira Bengachia, and I'm the Chairman of the Board of Directors for Reno Little Theater. We're a nonprofit organization that's been providing live theater to this community for 76 continuous years. We're very close to opening our new home on Pueblo Street, employing over 75 local construction workers in the process. Restaurants in our neighborhood can't wait for us to open because they know we'll bring them business. Merchants in the Wells Avenue corridor are depending on us to continue the economic development ball rolling in the midtown area. We are committed to continuing the years of hard work it's taken to get us this close to our new home. Why am I telling you this? Well, I'm telling you this... Because I lost my spot. Because we've already funded nearly $800,000 for the building, and we are looking at borrowing $300,000 to get it open and moved in this year. Thus proving that we are doing everything in our power to keep the arts alive in our community, and we are asking you to do the same. Arts and culture continue to take huge hits in funding. Don't pull the plug on the Resource Development and Cultural Affairs Manager. You've said that arts and culture and special events is one of your four funding priorities for maintaining and proving the value of our community. Prove it by keeping alive the position that can best help you achieve that vision. On another note, did you know there's an A-list film production in town? The Motel Life, starring Dakota Fanning, Emile Hirsch, Stephen Dorff, and Chris Christopherson, has been filming here for several weeks now, bringing much-needed money into the community. Since we no longer have an Nevada Film Commission, could not the Resource Development and Cultural Affairs Manager be our conduit to the Southern California film industry? Maybe. Thank you for the support and professionalism and expertise that we have always received from your cultural affairs staff. Let's keep it going. Thank you.
Leo? I can't, Sam? Leo, I can't read your last name.
Well, because you know me longer than most people have.
Well, I know that, but I couldn't read it.
Leo Sembrano.
Good to see you, yes. Now that I see you, I know who it is.
Well, I was going to talk about something different, but what I want to say now is this: Thank you for having me and listening to me, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, there. When I sat and listened to these people, I found out that we're all tied in together, okay? What I was going to ask you, if you really looked at the people you were going to cut, the reason I say that is because I used to work for the City of Reno. And I found out that a lot of us, you people, do not look at what you really do and the bottom line. You'll tell me yes, but I know you don't. And I'll give you an example. When I first came to the Wazeta Reno, I was given a work order. And I told the boss, I said, "You don't want to do this." He says, "Yes, I do." I said, "I'm not going to do it." She says, "I'll take you to the boss." I said, "You're taking the boss." He did that. But what it amounted to was this: It gave me a sign to put up. It was blocking the man's driveway. So I'm looking at this. If you block a man's driveway, what else would you do to us? Not you personally particularly. I'm talking about other city managers. Because when I met Doug Michelle, I coached him in a bob, okay? So ladies and gentlemen, with you people that have the event centers you want to take care of, we're all tied in together. Are you sure that you want to do what you're doing to these people? Because without the citizens groups, without the youth groups, people that you cut, bilingual people, you're also cutting their throats too. Not a good idea. So I'm asking you, save their person and think about us, the older people and the younger people, when you do this. Because it all comes down the line. You're affected too. You're doing your work as well as you can, but look at it twice, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark David?
Mayor Bob and the City Council members, thank you for letting me speak. It's a motivational speech. Please think of me as just a person after I'm done. I'll tell you some of the alibis that I've done. I've come up with the sinking of the sub before the SALT treaty was signed, two years before that. So I had the upper hand. I've captured instrumental on Pablo Escobar. Put down Memorial downtown and one in Fort Hood. I don't know, Bob knows about that. And I've also did an Amber Alert, came up with the Amber Alert system. Chris Campion of the FBI can tell you about that. And I helped him with the shooting in Virginia. A shooter in Virginia. Channel 2 and Ron Percival also has helped me with a baby shaken syndrome in Truckee. Out of that fund, they started a women's center. Out of this, I've never done it for money, and I've always done it for the community. People, when they get in hard times, I think of what I can do for the community, not what the community can do for me. And I hope that the community can keep this in mind, and everybody can come together and get out of this situation that we're in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eddie Lorden?
City Council, I'm speaking in regards, I'll take off after the tattoo parlor guy over here. I hear you're possibly going to try to do liquor license moratoriums, and you're against tattoo parlors. Well, I for one don't want the City Council to be the head of my moral compass, okay? There's been millions of dollars made in this room off gaming and liquor licenses. Now you're going to be in charge of our moral compass, whatever happened to free enterprise? People should have the right to go where they want. If these establishments go in and if people support these, then heaven forbid causing more jobs, revenue streams, a rented building, so on, so forth. And last time I checked, these businesses were legal. So I for one don't want the city to make these decisions for me, especially last time I checked, there were millions of dollars in debt. I'm in the black. I don't want them making no business decisions for me. It's come to the point anymore to where I can't rent a building out. They've taken away rentability, like if you have an automotive shop, you can't do automotive now. Now you can't do a liquor license place establishment, and then all of a sudden you can't do a restaurant, anything to do with liquor licenses. And now what I see coming probably is they'll probably say no bars, and then they'll say no tattoo parlors, but by the same token, they'll try to selectively give liquor licenses to grocery stores, stuff like that. And that's again, that shows prejudice, like they're trying to not do these tattoo parlors because they say it brings unsavory people for the police force. Well, I got news, they're trying to drive them to the casinos. More drugs and prostitution goes in in one casino than all these businesses put together in one evening. So I don't know where you're going with this, but if you do a liquor license moratorium, you're going to stop all possible growth in the Reno area as far as restaurants, bars, grocery stores, or whatever you come up with. And I don't like that or rentability, so it drives investors away. So it's a sad thing here. You know, let's do a recap. Before we went over this liquor license moratorium, before election time, remember? And I said, "Now that we're on tape, how are you going to vote against bars and casinos?" Everybody, Dwight had the gonads to stand up. He's for the business people and everybody else, and it kind of went away. Now here it comes again after election time. And I for one don't want the city making these choices for me. I think stopping growth, and for you to say it's okay to drink here and not there, I'm over 21, I can make my own decisions where I want to go, what I want to do. That's what freedom's about and free enterprise. Let the people decide, not this council continuously hampering business in this town as we don't have jobs. And then as we've lost, we're about to lose, Nevada State Fair will be the second state that don't have a state fair. We've lost street vibrations, hot August nights. I warned you a year before it happened, it happened. Now I got news, the Phoenix and Las Vegas is trying to get the air races. So at the end, when we have no more business going, the only thing we have over on California and Oregon is a 24/7 thing, and these businesses have the right to do business here. And then when California never comes here again, let's see how successful we are with two casinos in town. So I hope people can do free enterprise and you can cut through this political agendas and stuff like that and read the writing on the wall while they're trying to push everyone to the casino and stop this crap so we can be successful business people and bring Reno back to what it was when I was a kid. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Gettle?
Hi, I'm here to remind the Council that with the Virginia Street overlay zone that was pushed through a couple of years ago, I felt it was rather ramrodded. And I've spoken to a lot of people that used to work for the city in the planning. And the aspect of it that I'm concerned about is the multi-use part of it brings that use all the way up to Humboldt Street, which is one half-block from the ladies of our snow school plus the other elementary school on Lander. So what I'm begging the Council is to take away the controversy, controversial part of what the uses that are allowed on Virginia Street, that a lot of them are here in the conversation today, that could possibly create havoc on all the residential neighborhood west, all the way up almost to Arlington. I don't think that's what the Council intended. I don't think that the people in the planning read it thoroughly because it creates a code enforcement problem. And again, it creates the controversial issues we have on Second Street as well as Virginia Street. You bring them up into a well-established neighborhood that is going to create a lot of havoc. And if you, and my understanding is the reason for the zoning changes was to bring more investment, more money into the neighborhood to make it a semi-downtown. If you don't take the controversy and the drama away, investors will not come in, whichever it is. I happen to be in the rental business, and I need the assurance that it's not going to be controversial. We do not have uses in the drama. My tenants don't want the drama, and I don't think anybody else does in the neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Bill Fisher?
Good afternoon. Liquor licenses and that type of stuff? I just say location, location, location. CNN has a show called Keeping Them Honest. Reno has the children's advocate, Keeping You Honest. Last fall, during the hearings for Right Way Markets liquor license, the Reno Police Department was opposed to granting liquor license for many reasons. The owner had been cited for selling alcohol to kids numerous times. He'd even had his license suspended for selling to kids too many times. The police knew the problems that would occur with fighting and panhandling right next to the ace of the new ballpark. The police department recommended against this license. Right Way Market appeals the decision. An arbitration judge overrules the investigation. Volunteers of America Homeless Shelter, St. Vincent's Dining Hall, and most important, the Children's New Family Shelter oppose this license. We brought over 10,000 signatures collected in just over a week against this liquor store. Leaders from all over the city testified against granting this liquor license. Our mayor and Councilman Ayazi were against it. The Detox Center for Alcoholics is only 50 feet approximately away from this liquor store market, I guess. The liquor store next to the family shelter, almost the whole city opposed. Now the people oppose opening these phony markets next to schools. When it comes to children, I suggest you back your words with actions. I ask you to watch the videos of the council meetings pertaining to Right Way Markets liquor license last fall. Dates are July 14th and July 26th, 2010. Sorry. You will see Councilman Jessica Servaza was the driving force to push this liquor license next to the family shelter through. On Wednesday's March 2nd, Reno Gazette Journal, Councilman Servaza stated she is opposed to liquor stores masquerading as convenience stores. How could you say that when you were the mastermind behind the Right Way Market liquor license? The license I opposed on behalf of the children at the family shelter and parents bringing their childrens to the ballpark. Do you honestly think the voters didn't pay attention to issues pertaining to their children? Children and family issues might have been why you had no success in your last election. I'm really sorry. Believe it or not, alcohol does more harm than good. I hope now, Councilman Servaza, that you will help close that liquor store next to the family shelter and oppose any liquor stores close to schools. I hope you see the light. It's time for some responsible actions from our leaders. I hope the City Council stops catering to alcoholics and drug addicts by opening cheap, sleazy liquor stores next to schools, family shelters, and parks. If you don't, you all will be unsuccessful in future elections because drunks don't vote. I suggest you cater to families and school issues and children's issues. Parents vote. Support Mayor Kisho. No schools next to parks and schools. He knows who votes, parents.
Lee Hurst?
Good afternoon. My name's Lee Hurst, and I work with 85 to 100 senior citizens on a daily basis. I've worked with them for the last eight years here in Reno. I have an excellent rapport with the City of Reno Parks and Rec for senior citizens, and I've promoted this program for many years. Recently, Rosie Tibidwiza was let go from her position. Many seniors feel the loss. Things are not ran as smoothly. The staff that is left is not as caring or supportive for senior citizens as Rosie was. Seniors enjoy what the city has to offer for them. Many of them have been thinking of quitting the program recently, that I work, at least that I work with. If Rosie's not hired back, they don't want to participate in this program anymore. Instead of paying three part-time employees, please consider hiring Rosie back at a full-time position. Rosie can handle the job by herself where it takes three part-time people to do what Rosie does. Let's see. On top of doing a good job, she was very considerate of seniors. She goes over and above her call of duty. There are also many Spanish-speaking seniors that now have no one, that now have no one, I wrote that wrong, they have no one to communicate with because Rosie also spoke Spanish. This is from the seniors that I work with. They said, "We as a group understand the cutbacks the city has to make. What we don't understand is the city laying off an asset like Rosie Tibidwiza." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jesse Matornik? Jesse, you got to help me, Jesse.
Yeah, it's a hard one.
It's, for an old country boy like me, it's real hard.
Hi, my name's Jesse Martinuke. I grew up here. My father opened the oldest tattoo shop in Reno 32 years ago here. And I'm down for, I'm okay with like some kind of regulation. I don't think you should stop any tattoo shops from opening. But we, the established tattoo artists here would probably be more than happy to help you guys in like regulating in some way, like making sure that tattoo artists are high ethical morals and standards. But to just stop any kind of growth like that, kind of un-American, I think. And I don't like seeing tattoo shops open right across the street from each other. I think it's underhanded. But there shouldn't be just a total stop on that either. That's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Jesse, I want to, since I'm the one that brought it up, not my fellow colleagues, I don't want to do away with tattoo shops. I just want to come up with how we're going to handle them and where they're going and what they're doing, and if it's zonings and stuff like that, that's all. When you get three of them in one block and stuff like that, and that's all I'm looking.
No, I agree with you. And I'd be more than happy to like help you guys out too and anything you need to know about the business.
Thank you very much. Having no other public comment cards, I'll close the public comment section. Did you want to say something? You need to fill out a form, but come on up.
I did.
Well, they didn't give it to me. Shame on her. Then you can run.
My name is Terry O'Hamlin.
No, no, you can, okay, go ahead.
I sing with the Masterworks Corral, and we are a nonprofit corral of 60 volunteers who sing throughout the community to bring musical therapy where it is most needed. My concern is that our survival depends on solid leadership. Handing over the Resource Development and Cultural Affairs Manager's job to volunteers is not reasonable because of a lack of capacity to get the job done adequately. Management of our city's arts resources is a job that deserves and warrants a professional like Christine Fay. We need full and concentrated focus to make sure the left hand knows what the right hand is doing. It is unacceptable to eliminate the only arts and cultural position that exists in the city government. We need her. We need her leadership, and we need her job. And I still have my 50 cents to add to entertainment tickets. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the reason we've had a little confusion here is people have signed up to speak on a certain item on the agenda instead of speaking under public comment. And that's why we're going to close the public comment section now, and then when we bring these agenda items up, you can speak under those agenda items. I'm not trying to cut anybody off, but we need to move on with the agenda, so... So that's, that's the confusion and I apologize for the mix-up. But okay, but we will recognize you when the items come up. This time I'll close the public, yes ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I know that we have the I-11, I believe, is the first one. I would ask that after that, because of the public testimony, we could go to J-15?
That, that would be no problem. We'll go to J-15 so they don't have to.
Great.
That's the one that, that's where the confusion is. So we'll go to J-15 after we do item I-1, ordinance relating to City of Reno retract bonds.
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to read the ordinance first then, then have the discussion or do, why do you want to proceed?
Well, no, you can go ahead and read the ordinance and then we'll do the discussion.
Fine. This is bill number 6739, an ordinance authorizing an amendment of ordinance number 6006 relating to the outstanding City of Reno, Nevada Senior Lean Sales Tax Revenue Refunding Bonds Retract Reno Transportation Rail Access Corridor Project Series 2008A and City of Reno, Nevada Subordinate Lean Sales Tax Revenue Refunding Bonds Retract Reno Transportation Rail Access Corridor Project Series 2008B, providing other details in connection therewith and providing for the effective date.
At this, this time we'll take public comment. Let me get the public comment out of the way and then we'll have staff report. Mr. Diney?
Sam Diney, in the process of getting public comment out of the way before you can go about your business, just the way you worded that, Mr. Mayor, is not exactly citizen-friendly. Let's get it out of the way. Anyway, Sam Diney of the Encyclopedia Reno Government.
Did not mean it a slur or anything.
I know you didn't. I just thought maybe I would remind, it didn't sound politically correct.
Well, someday I'll learn to be political.
I know, I know you just work hard at being politically correct. Anyway, I've attended every city council meeting since, since the railroad trench was initially discussed and even before that, 1994, I started out in 1994. And you, I spoke about the railroad trench more than all of the other, well, more than any other citizen and probably more than most of all of the citizens added together. In some ways I spoke for it, in some ways I spoke against it. But one thing I did warn you was that you are not gonna have that bottomless pit of money coming in forever funding all of your plans and all of your schemes. And it came home, almost came home to work a real hardship on the community. What happened was you had these bonds that were due, and simply as I can make, put it so people understand the words, money, a huge amount of money was due to the big banks back east and various other banks. And it was due and it's actually been due for a little while now, but there have not been enough revenues coming in as I predicted. Not that I'm trying to say I told you so, but there have not been enough revenues coming in. Before I go any further, I should say this is one of the, as I read this deal that's going on right now, I-1, this is one of the best days in the history of Reno. Because as I read, read the staff report out there briefly, those banks back east are gonna give you two and a half more years to come up with the money to try to get back on our feet again, back on our feet again. And that is a wonderful thing. They had the potential of, potentially, they could have bankrupted this community by ordering, okay, he says no. Never would have happened. He hates the B-word, okay.
No, no, they couldn't have bankrupted us because they're revenue bonds. They're not obligated by the general operation of this community. They are revenue bonds, tax bonds and stuff like that.
Okay, take it back. They could have worked a hard.
Taxes are down, taxes are down, the money's not there.
Right, I'm saying, okay.
So they could stand in line or collect them.
Mr. Mayor, you know I hate to argue with you and I thank you. I, I appreciate your gumption, I really do, your spunkin' gumption, standing up to Sam Diney. That is really power, that is a good thing you're doing there, Mr. Mayor, because I did mistake, I, I said bankrupt. They could have worked a terrible hardship on this community by coming in and just telling you what you did wrong and how things are not working out the way Sam predicted they wouldn't work them out. I don't want to make this sound like a confrontation because I actually came up here to say this was, this is a really, really good day for Reno and those banks should really, really be thanked.
Well, we appreciate you and thank you very much. Sorry I interrupted you. All right, now bring it back to the table and staff report.
For the record, Jill Olson Finance, as you stated, Mr. Mayor, this is to extend the letter of credit that is on the retract bonds, 2008A and B for two years. These are revenue bonds supported by the sales tax for the retract. There is no other pledge to these bonds other than the sales tax that's been committed. There is a limited revenue source and indeed we are deferring the principal and interest payments on the B-bonds. There has been no payment default of any kind on these bonds, on the A or the B bonds. This allows the city time to, in the two and a half years for the deferment period, to either restructure the bonds if, if there's feasibility to do so, or hopefully sales tax will stabilize and hopefully recover and we'll be able to continue meeting the payment terms of the debt service, you know, upon the expiration of the next term. And we're happy to answer any questions. We have bond counsel and the financial advisor here to answer questions as well.
Well, Jill, you and Donna Dreska did a super job negotiating this along with your staff and drawing the line in the sand and we really appreciate what you did.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was certainly a team effort on the part of bond counsel and the financial advisor and everyone, so.
Any comments, Mr. Augustine?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was just gonna echo your comment, you made them first. But I think that going nose to nose with Goldman Sachs especially and getting this two-year extension, I think is a great benefit to the city. Jill, your staff and bond counsel, thank you very much for standing up and certainly former city manager Dreska, because this was one of our priorities, going head to head with these people and I know council had talked about that. I think we got the results we wanted for a period of time and this is nothing but positive.
Thank you.
Mr. Asher?
Jill, in the staff report it indicates that we wanted a three-year extension, we got a two-year extension from Bank of New York. And then during that time period, that the city will be able to make the debt service payments during the period of extension, but not after the extension. So what projections were you, you looking at that indicates we'll be okay during the two years, but not after the two years? If we're at the same time saying that we're anticipating sales tax revenues to stabilize in the future, which tells me we'd be able to make the payments after the two-year period?
Well, after the two-year period, during the two-year period, we won't have to make the payments on the B-bonds. That's why we're able, you know, to make the current, the debt service payments during that time. We are only deferring those payments though. So at the end of that two-year period, the payments that were due during the two-year period will be added on to the payments that are due after the two-year period. So there will be an increased level of payments. So we will need a significant increase in sales taxes if we want to just pick up where we left off there. So that's, we would need to either restructure the debt or have a significant increase in sales taxes. So we will need to be negotiating before the end of that two-year expiration to meet debt service.
But my understanding, maybe it was a misunderstanding on my part, I thought the deferred payments by Goldman Sachs, which was the subordinated bonds, was gonna be added on to the tail end of that obligation. Is there, when the two years expires, do those payments double? Do basically, how are we gonna catch up after the two-year period expires?
What they, they took the payments that are, would have been due over this two-year period and they added them to the payments beginning in December of 2013. The interest that would be due in 2013 gets added to the interest that's due in the future in 2013. So we have additional principal and interest due beginning in December of 2013.
So that may, was that basically, is that additional payments, is that spread out over the remaining balance of the series B bonds or is it, we have to catch up over the next two years following, starting December 2013?
We catch up in the next three, two and a half to three years, beginning in 2013.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Through this term, 14 through 19.
Yeah, during the term of 2014 through 19. And it's in a schedule, what page is that?
The one I saw was on our page, page 32?
I think that's what Kendra said as well.
So it basically goes through June 1st, 2019? That's all I have, Mr. Ashton.
Yeah, Jill, are these swap bonds still?
Yes.
So what's the, I mean, as part of the whole derivatives, what, what's the risk to the city here? I mean, what's our interest rate now?
The interest rate does not change. It's the same as it is now. And I believe the net is 3.63?
Interest rate is 3.32.
And then how much is the letter of credit costing us in addition to that?
The LOC fees are 60 basis points. So we're getting a very reasonable letter of credit fee and they did not increase the letter of credit fee.
So on the letter of credit, aren't they essentially saying that we're gonna make those payments?
Yes.
So they take the risk on that?
Correct. I mean, it's the same risk as they had before, yes.
Okay. And then on the, I just want to make sure in the schedule that we are not pledging any of the general fund obligation for the extension.
That's correct, we are not. It's still revenue bonds, same revenues are pledged strictly, that retract sales tax.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Augustine? Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I motion, moved to approve the staff recommendation.
Have a motion and second. One minute, we need to approve the ordinance.
Refer.
Motion to refer, second's okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, turn to item in your agenda, item J-15. Before you, before you start, we have some people that would like to speak on J-15. Mike Ginsburg?
Good afternoon, I'm Mike Ginsburg. I'm the president of Sierra Nevada Community Aquatics. I've been before you guys many, many times. It actually started three years ago after Idewell, or after Moana Pool closed down. Today we're here, we were here last council meeting to talk about keeping the aquatics that we do have open. So as you know, I just want to repeat that we met a couple weeks ago, a few weeks ago, we came up with a letter that was dated, you guys all received it on February 18th. As a unified group, all of the aquatics user groups, these are the competitive user groups got together. It was Lakewood, Northern Nevada Aquatics, Reno Aquatic Club, the Reno Area Triathletes, Sierra Nevada Masters, and the Sierra Nevada Water Polo all came together. We formulated what we thought we could do to help the city get Idewell trainer pools open and keep our pools open that we do have. As a unified group, we came up with this letter. I'm just here today to say that we support the staff's recommendation on J-15 and throw our support behind the item, opening up of Idewell Pool with option number two, it's 13 weeks. I appreciate your time, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I'm Stephen Jacobs and I am chairperson of the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. You all may know that seniors are either the fastest growing population in the state or one of them. And unfortunately, many of our seniors are in lower economic groups and face difficult financial challenges due to being on fixed incomes, decreases in their retirement income equity in their homes, and of course, rising healthcare costs. This results in them having less money for entertainment, socialization, and mobility as well as access to information important to their health and well-being. About 23% of seniors live in relative isolation. Parks and Recreation and the committee collaborate with 15 local agencies who provide programs in city facilities and utilize 50 volunteer hours, providing several hundred hours of services to seniors in a month. Programs that offer physical and intellectual fitness along with social networks save everybody money by keeping people independent, living in the community, living in their own homes. This is a goal which the state, county, and city all share. The senior services staff of Parks and Recreation has at this point only one full-time member. Without that full-time member, programming, coordination, ideas, things that come from the committee would probably totally disintegrate. The advisory committee urges the council to retain this position as full-time. I also want to mention, somebody else mentioned Rosie, and I want to correct that Rosie doesn't do the job of three part-time people, she does the job of three full-time people. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Jerry Taylor. I'm a past member of the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee and currently I am a volunteer instructor at the Neal Road Senior Center. It's my understanding that the park and recreation position that is currently in jeopardy is the only paid full-time position that we have within the senior services program. Some seniors may choose to go to the neighborhood casino to socialize where they will probably spend their social security money and they definitely will inhale secondhand smoke. Other seniors may choose to stay home, sit in front of the television set, and sip brandy. Personally, I don't like any of these choices and I'm hoping that Parks and Rec can continue to offer other recreational opportunities to seniors. I am one of the contributors to the Park and Rec Senior Program. I have just finished teaching an eight-week beginning bridge class and I had 12 seniors who had never played bridge before. Yesterday at the afternoon drop-in bridge game at Neal Road Recreation Center, out of the 12 people, five of the players were in my class last year and four were from the class that just finished. Currently, there are over 35 programs offered to seniors. So even if we are able to use volunteer instructors, we still would need a staff person to coordinate all of these senior programs. Please think twice before you cut that drop. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I am Jim Kitter. I serve on the City of Reno's Arts and Culture Commission, the Executive Committee of the Reno Chamber Orchestra, the Advisory Board of the College of Liberal Arts and School of the Arts, Chair of the Advisory Board of the Reno Jazz Orchestra, and previously served on the For Love of Jazz Board and is the Treasurer and Artistic Affairs Chair of the Reno Philharmonic. As the Acting Vice President for Academic Affairs at the University of Northern Colorado, given significant financial difficulties, I reluctantly recommended the firing of 47 tenured faculty members and reducing every classified employee to 75% time. I also served as the first Director of the University of Nevada's Office of Planning, Budget, and Analysis from 1983 to 2001. I therefore know the difficulty you face in addressing budgetary issues of which few are of your making. However, in my 40 years of experience in planning and budgeting, it taught me that it is important in time of fiscal constraints to maintain essential elements of the infrastructure of an organization, be it a university or a city. be it a university or a city. The City Council has designated arts, culture, and special events as one of their four priorities. Such a focus is of paramount importance if the city is to attract visitors, business and corporate entities, and their employees and their families. For the past three years, an ad hoc committee of the Arts and Culture Commission, composed of community and cultural leaders, has been preparing a major revision of the City of Reno Cultural Master Plan. Scores of us encouraged by the city have developed a plan for the future. But that plan requires professional administrative oversight and management by the city, and it will be severely damaged if the Resource Development and Cultural Affairs Manager position is abolished and that management and oversight is provided by the volunteer members of the commission. I propose, no, I strongly recommend that some of the funds allocated to the commission for grants to artistic and cultural organizations be used to continue the manager position. That position is essential to maintaining the progress made by the city and its commission. Although awarding grants would provide financial assistance to those artistic and cultural organizations this year, there would be no longer a professional position to oversee existing programs and activities and the recommendations inherent in the master plan. Any remaining funds could then fund fewer and smaller grants. However, those organizations can still seek financial assistance from private donors who could support their concerts, plays, and art exhibits, but would be reluctant to support a position that should logically be funded by the city. I believe one should put their money where their mouth is. And my wife, Mary Ann, and I have written checks payable to each of the organizations that I have mentioned earlier, and they are ready to be mailed in these addressed and stamped envelopes, should you accept my recommendation. I believe others will follow my example to help replace the diminished funds and donate to the organization, organizations of their choice. It is now up to you to maintain that all-important position of arts and culture to the City of Reno.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Jim? Jim, wait a minute. Come here. I don't handle money. No, no. I took your word for it. Thank you very much. Stephen Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this opportunity to speak. My name is Steve Davis, and I am the Assistant Director at Nevada Humanities. We are the sister agency to the Nevada Arts Council. However, we are a private nonprofit, the state affiliate of the National Endowment for the Humanities. I've been with the organization for 15 years, and throughout this period, we have been supported by the work of the Arts and Culture Commission. And so I want to speak both in favor of the Arts and Culture Commission and their manager, Christine Fay. I'm going to take a slightly different approach, because what I have seen is that the funds that we have received have supported a number of institutions and events in the City of Reno. These have included Chautauqua, the Young Chautauqua Program, book festivals, literary events, and youth programs. But what's happened is the small grants we have received from the Arts and Culture Commission have leveraged other grants, federal grants, corporate, and nonprofit grants from organizations. So the money we have received, I think, has doubled or tripled or more to the City of Reno. So it's been an economic lever in that regard. We've also given grants throughout the City of Reno that have helped. I also think that if we're thinking economically about the role of culture in the city, we have to think about the kind of a city that, the kind of businesses we would like to bring here, clean industries, high-tech industries, the quality of life that they want to provide for their employees and for their staff. And it is the kind of things that we do, that the Arts and Culture Commission does, that will ultimately, I think, bring the kinds of businesses and economic diversification to this community. So I want to conclude by saying, I understand that you have very difficult decisions. I don't know how many babies you're going to have to, you know, deal with, like Solomon, but, you know, I hope that you are able to support as much as possible the work of the Arts and Culture Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Terry O'Handlon?
It's me. Thank you.
You've already talked. Okay. Sam Dene.
I could do it again.
No, I don't need you again. Unless you've got some real scientific stuff coming up. Thank you.
Sam Dene, the Encyclopedia of Reno Government, and I don't serve on any commissions or committees. Never been invited to one of these, so what's with that? But I have dedicated my entertaining and musical abilities to seniors throughout the community and veterans for the last 10 years. The Two-odd Yankee Band singing sensations sweeping the nation were legends in her own mind. Band volunteers, never been paid for one thing, offered money, turned it down. But I want to put a different spin on this. With that deal that you just made with the bankers back in New York, has to give you a paradigm shift in breathing room. And I don't know when that came down, if it came down yesterday or the week before, or before or after all these things were put on the agenda. But it has to give you a paradigm shift in breathing ability. I know you have to pay the money two and a half years down the line, and so you're supposed to be saving it, but it should sure give you some relaxation room for the decisions that you're going to make. I was the chairman of one of the pilots unions for Pan American back long ago, and we came on hard times. The money was running out, and they had to, they only had so much money coming in, and they had to decide how to send the money out. And as the chairman, I recommended, don't lay anybody off. Figure out how much money you have to save. Calculate how much money you're paying to the salaries, and then have a proportionate reduction, or at least offer proportionate reductions in salaries to people, instead of throwing the bottom guys out into the street. Figure out how much money is, how much money you have, how much money you can save, how much money you can afford to pay, and then offer, offer the people to be allowed to keep their jobs with reduction in salary proportionate to the amount of money that you have coming in. That's really all I have to say. I hate, I hate having to lay people off. It's a horrible thing, as you well know. And, and we certainly want, we certainly want to protect the tattoo parlors. They bring in, the tattoo businesses, they bring in quite a bit of money. Conventions, the whole thing, but nobody ever talks about them. And I don't have any tattoos, but that fellow that I recommended for city manager, he's got four tattoos.
Thank you very much. I have four people that don't wish to speak. Their names will be entered into the records and their comments. I'll bring it back to the table, ready for staff.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Honorable City Council Mayor and Acting City Manager, Schlerf. My name is Julie Conway, Director of the Parks Recreation and Community Services. I'm pleased to be here today as a follow-up to the meeting on February 28th, when the City Council discussed this item related to the Parks Recreation Community Services budget. And I have prepared the staff report to provide you information regarding your question and provided information regarding alternative budget reduction proposals. Also, the Acting City Manager just now distributed to you a 11-by-17 chart that provides information to you regarding the departmental divisions that illustrates, by division, the supervisory staff and by division, the function and services, and highlights the services that are provided by each division and the supervisors' roles in that, in those services. So what I have done is to provide, in the staff report, alternative reduction proposals today for your consideration. And I am seeking your direction regarding which specific reductions that you would like to proceed with for the fiscal year 10-11 budget for our, the Parks and Recreation budget for this year. I would like to emphasize, related to those services, that the programs and the services and the facilities that were included in those reductions were done after very careful consideration by myself and by staff. This is not done lightly. We took several months to look at this. And as you see in the staff report, we had criteria that we looked at and asked very careful questions. Regrettably, our department, as other departments, had to look very carefully, and we are now down to very beloved services and programs, as you've heard. And if it were not for these programs today, it would be other programs that you would hear from. And it is very, very difficult for me to stand before you today and hear that these are the programs that we're looking at, that are presented to you as alternatives. And, and what I'd like to emphasize is, looking at these criteria, it is truly a balance at looking at these criteria between reducing revenue by, or looking at the services that earn revenue, I should say, and looking at what services and how many people are served by those services. And also looking at, is there a service that there might be some other organization in the community that might be able to provide that service in lieu of the city? Or, and also looking at another criteria, could that service, in some cases you've seen where we've proposed to close a facility, could we look at that service being provided at another city site? So could we transport those individuals to another city location so we could reduce the cost to the city? So we, we've looked at several different options, and so it's a balance of those criteria. So based on the last meeting's discussion, what I heard, and certainly looking at the minutes, you had considerable discussion about reinstating Idewild and trainer pools and keeping Sabian Center open. And, and your motion was specifically, come back with options to potentially reinstate all the services. And so what I have done is to provide alternative services for you to look at, either to reinstate all the original options or to, to pick and choose the original services and reinstate some services with the options I have selected or to reinstate all of them. I also wanted to share with you, and this is, this is, I have been asked to do this by the Executive Director, Willis Allen, of the Pioneer Center. He sent me this email, and he asked me to share this with you, that they are, and I read this for you, that the Pioneer Center wishes to volunteer a 20 percent reduction in their proposal, cultural grant currently at $63,700. So their proposal, they're willing to acquiesce or to give that, their, their share, and also to cover the $2,000 of the Sierra Arts Foundation. So they will cover that for the Sierra Arts Foundation, which is equal to $2,000 and of the Sierra Arts Foundation. So they're willing to cover that amount for the Sierra Arts Foundation. They asked me to share that with you today. And that totals $14,740. And they, he indicated that due to the city's financial condition. And I'm, I will share that with the City Council. I have prepared for your benefit, if you'd like. I prepared the PowerPoint slides of the last meeting. So if you'd like to see that up on the screen, and I have copies of that, if that would help you, or if you'd like to have that benefit for the audience, I can put that up on the screen and/or what you have in your packet. So if you'd like that, just let me know, and we can put that up on the screen. And I have copies, hard copies for you as well.
How would the council like to handle?
The, the information that is in your packet, as well as what the PowerPoint slides that you had from the last meeting, which showed the options from the last meeting.
Yep. No. Go ahead. Before you do that, we have one person that I overlooked to speak. Donna, would you come on up? And then we will get right into it.
Donna Clontz, Reno citizen. Sorry to be the last one in the between of all the, all the presentations. I am a volunteer as part of the Senior Services Advisory Committee for the City of Reno and have spent several years working on senior matters here in town with Medicare counseling and even Nevada AARP work. My husband and I moved here to Reno about 11 years ago. And one of the reasons that brought us here is that Reno is so rich in services and programs for senior citizens. I was really surprised to see the seniors, senior services supervisor job on the list of things that are potentially to be cut this, during this tough time for the City Council, because I know that the council has seniors as a very high priority on its, on its minds here for the city. As many other people have spoken before about the possibility of losing the one experienced professional manager of important city programs, your senior services supervisor, Amber Martin, is key to getting grants for the city, to recruiting more volunteers like me to be, to be part of your programs and providing classes in, in the recreation department offerings, and also in ensuring continuity and good management of the programs that you already have and collaborating with those 15 other agencies that are all providing services around our region that save all of the, of the programs a lot of money because they share staff and space and costs to make these programs available to the seniors that, that are moving here in, in great numbers. We serve in Reno, according to the numbers, over 2,000 seniors a month. That's a, that's a, that's a wonderful number to be able to, to, to say. And we can't let them down. We can't let those programs go away because of losing the person that's managing all of that for us all. So I'd urge you to please keep that job intact as a full-time job in the budget this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What I, what I would like to do is, for the council's benefit in looking at the staff report, is to highlight the alternative service reductions. And so that you can have, you know what you saw before. You know what those were. The, again, we looked at these, as I showed, and as I stated before, what the criteria are, and those criteria are still the same. So we looked at the criteria, and, so these are the ones that, that were selected. And again, I want to emphasize that, that it is obviously your choice as to either take, replace all of the original ones or a pick and choose, if you wish to select some of the original ones. So that, that is what I'm seeking from you today, is, do you wish to replace all of the original reductions or only reinstate some of them? And therefore, not all of these would have to be selected. So that's, that is, that is your, your option. So under Park Operations, the, under the 350 capital fund, you've heard me talk about that before. The total there would be $143,052, and that would defer park maintenance projects. Those are, those are capital projects that we do. Those are capital projects that we do every year. And these projects would be playground resurfacing, and they would be deferred for another year or two. There is already playground surfacing out there. What we would be doing is replacing it. So that is, that is what that is.
Julie, where are those locations?
I'm sorry, okay.
On the play surface installation, where are those locations?
The locations of that, we have, I asked Jeff to come up here. We have some options on that, and Jeff, if you'd like to speak to that.
Jeff Mann, Parks Manager. The two locations here are Summit Ridge Park and Wheatland Park. And this is part of a project that was approved by the council last November for a new type of safety surface product for three sites. This eliminates two of those sites. Silver Lake is the one that we would continue to do.
Summit Ridge, and I'm sorry, what was the other location?
Wheatland Park. It's down by Hupaker Elementary School.
And then with the Park Operations, we would reduce our park supplies additionally, and that would be fertilizer and general repair needs. Last year, we did, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but we did go to the NABs. And can you come back up here again? And we have gone to the NABs this last year, and were we successful in getting some money from the NABs? For some of these supplies?
In total, Jeff Mann, Parks Manager, in total, we got about $52,000, I believe, from the various NABs for general park maintenance supplies. Very little fertilizer, but signs, some playground equipment, weed control efforts, things like that.
So selected that, again, based on criteria, is there another way, if depending upon whether council retains that?
Julie, is that $10,000 part of the first recommendation of the $61,000? Or are they completely different? You have general park maintenance of...
It's additional.
Sixty-one.
It's additional. It's additional.
And then, maybe we can cut the chase here. The Summer Discovery Camp is just canceling the field trips.
Yes.
The Discovery Camp would still be in place?
Yes.
So if we were to cut the play surface installation and the parks operation by 10, the Discovery Camp by 9,200, do the Rosewood Golf Course by 20,000, that may be under a different thing anyway later today. The Sabian Teen Center, we're going to keep open, but this just reduces the hours, correct, of 20,400?
20,400 would keep it open five days a week.
Which is reducing the hours?
It would keep it open five days a week.
Right.
So that's not, that would keep it open as it is right now until July, until June 30th. And then we come back to you for the 11, 12 budget.
And we do the Idah Wild Pool Option Two, a mix and a match, and these two things proposals you brought to it.
And Closing Sunday, if you notice that, which is the recommendation of these competitive groups.
And the arts and culture sponsorship, we take up Mr. Willis on his offer, and the general park maintenance of $61,000, that gets us within $105 of what you had before. So that's something that would keep the pools open the way we want to. Keep open the Trainer Pool. The Challenge Grant would stay there so that they can get the elevator in over at the Reno Little Theater. Senior Services would stay. Actually, we could also take the $20,000 from the Arts and Culture Commission from their travel budget, I think it was. And that gets us a little over. We could probably, actually, we could put back the field trips then, under that scenario. And that would give us $11,000 more cuts than we need. So we can use that back for the general park maintenance or park operations. So if we took the play surface installations out, that was something we're going to try. Not every park has them anyway. That's 91,000.
We would still do one. Pardon me for interrupting.
Reduce the park operation by 10, Arts and Culture Commission by 20, Rosewood Golf Course by 20, the Sabian Teen Center by 20, Option Two and Idah Wild Pool, Arts and Culture Sponsorships by 14, 7, and the general park maintenance by 61,000. That gets us to $274,000 in cuts. And then all the seniors stuff would remain. I just mix and match the two different tables.
Are you saying keep the arts and culture?
Challenge.
But don't take number six on the alternative service reductions? Did I hear?
Yes, do take six.
Do take six, okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Yes.
So what I have, Dave, is we take off of the alternative services, one, two, six, and seven, in total.
One, two, six, and seven, yes.
Right, because you said to...
Right.
And then on the original staff recommendations, it would be items one, two, and 14,740 from item four?
Correct.
And you...
Item six.
Item six from the original?
Correct.
Okay.
In entirety.
And that's 274,000, which is 10,000 more than the previous cut. So if you want to, I mean, it's up to you if we need park operation or... That gets us to where I heard what the council was interested in retaining.
Dave, I can ask you a question.
Sure.
Help me with this. That you're talking about the staff recommended service reductions, the first part of the first pages, that comes to 263. And you're saying you live with that?
No, only parts of them.
It's a mix and match.
You take one, two, four, and six out of that one.
Okay, take those out. One, two, four, and six, okay.
And one, two, and seven out of the second page, and part of six. I'm sorry, one, two...
Six and seven.
Six and seven.
Okay, which leaves the youth and leaves the seniors intact, the 24 and the 37. Okay, that's public comment we had, the testimony we had, and I think that works. I said this before, and I think that when we're looking at doing this, the people that are most affected and least able to do anything to countermand their effectiveness is our seniors and children. And so if we can keep them whole, or close to that in some way, that answers the question. That's what you're saying to do. Okay, I agree.
I have a follow-up question on that, on number four, which is the alternative service reductions. On Sierra Kids, I thought we made money on that.
This particular site, we don't.
Okay.
And that's why, this is not self-supporting.
Is that a net amount?
This is a net amount.
Because obviously, we're going to lose revenue when we close.
Yeah, this is a net amount.
Okay.
And again, you use it, we use that as a criteria, as to balance all the other criteria. And not every site, we don't like to use that as an absolute criteria because of what Councilor Guston said, because some of our users can't afford it. But this particular site doesn't break even. And it's mostly because we don't have enough youth, and that's why, one of the reasons why we picked that site. Unfortunately.
I just wanted to clarify, because Dave's leaving, I agree, Dave, we're leaving that one in.
Yes, we are.
I just wanted to confirm that's the net amount.
Yes, we are, right. Doesn't mean that it's not needed, it just means it doesn't break even. Right now, and, right.
Now, I look at that, that's almost $2,000, only 15 kids that go there, correct?
Right. Doesn't mean the kids aren't...
That's not my warts, I don't know. Is that your wart, Dan, or Billingshurst is?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to still figure this out. Say again, Dave.
Billingshurst, is that your wart?
Yes, it is.
And then with respect to, on number five, for the alternative service reduction, which I agree, I don't think, I think senior services has been hurt enough. We've lost coordinators in that department, and Amber really is the only person that interfaces with the board. You'd also indicate, when we talked before, that if we were going to put on the senior games this year, what would be the cost, and what would be the protocol to follow for that? To see if we could build in some dollars today on letting that go forward.
Well, we have the, we have some revenue there, and we would get some revenue from the enrollments. And the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee has put some money, does have some money. We would probably go back to them and ask them to put some money towards this as well. We're shy about $3,400. So that can either, what we'd probably do is go out for sponsorships for that. But right now, we're shy about $3,400 for that event. And right now, what we would intend to do is put that as part of May, the Seniors Month, which is in May, and coordinate that. We need to get started right away on that. But we're shy about $3,400 for that event.
Okay, I think we've got chairman here, obviously, and we had this discussion yesterday at the Senior Advisory Board. There's an additional $3,000 discretionary fund, so if the board wanted to use those dollars, then that would close the gap. So I don't know, we don't meet for another month. It probably wouldn't hurt to have a conversation with you, Julie. We need to get started right away. Assuming those funds can be available right away, then we could start working on the games in May. Because we won't meet until April, is our next Advisory Board meeting.
Well...
Peter, if I could, the cuts that we've looked at, if we like them, we're still, we've cut 10,000 more than we need to.
Absolutely.
So we can move forward with that now, and if that gets replenished, it could be replenished.
That would, that would help. That would help get us there.
Mr. Guston.
Regarding the senior games, it's 3,400, and you have 3,000 in your senior advisory, and I have some money in my discretionary, so I could at least put $1,000 in that.
Okay, thank you.
See, my intent, Dave, is I think we were there, at least what we've done with Dan and I, that the additional 10,000, we could look at using in some of these other...
Well, it brings up the question, I mean, do we really want to spend that much on the, at Billingshurst? Or is that, does that make sense to keep it? In any year, would we look at that and say, you know, maybe it's not making sense for 15 kids? If we keep the Sabian Youth Center open, I mean, I don't know if that's close enough to where those kids could go there.
Well, the Sabian is open five days a week, full-time, no hour cuts.
Correct.
Right, correct.
So I mean, we could, you could almost cut the, cut the...
What is the Billingshurst program again?
It's at the middle school, and it's the Sierra Kids program, so it's right after school up until...
Is it the middle school, or is it at the old gym?
No, it's at the middle school.
Oh, okay. So that's up in the north.
So you're not talking about the old gym and the soccer field?
No, it's at the middle school. It's a Sierra Kids program.
Okay.
So if we cut that, we could keep the Sabian Center open seven days a week? I mean, who would use, who uses it more?
Well, let me have Daryl speak to that. The Sabian Center is often rented on weekends, so, but I'll let Daryl speak to that.
Daryl Feams, Youth and Senior Services Division Manager. Billingshurst is the only middle school in Washoe County, and that is because it has a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. The other schools are different, they only have seventh and eighth grade. So the principal requested that we try that service. This is the first year for that program, so it's really just beginning to build. But the Billingshurst students are quite a distance from where the Sabian Teen Center is. No, it's actually the new Billingshurst Middle School. And I mean, we could possibly transport by van from Billingshurst to Sabian, but yeah.
I was thinking of the whole wrong...
That would be the possibility.
But that 15 youth that you're talking about, is that, that's 15 a day?
It runs 15 to 20 per week.
Per week?
Yeah. I, it's per day, but the enrollment is between 15 and 20 a day.
Per week.
Correct.
So if I'm looking at this chart you just handed out, under Sierra Kids, you've got 686 daily, that's AM, and then 761 kids PM daily. So we'd still be serving with Sierra Kids, even if this was eliminated at Billingshurst School, quite a few kids throughout the entire program, right?
Absolutely, and the Billingshurst numbers are not included in those numbers because it is a teen Sierra Kids program. So we don't list that, we don't actually total that into those Sierra Kids totals.
So are they anywhere on this, currently?
Uh, not sure. I don't believe so.
Okay.
Could those youth be serviced at the Summit Ridge facility?
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with what that is.
I mean, it's a park, but could any of the services that are received? We do the same service at Anderson, it's a park.
Oh, okay. We do a program at, yes, we could look into that, absolutely.
The reason I think that...
Mr. Guston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason I think that makes sense, when you look at 37,000 versus 15, I didn't look at it clearly enough. I mean, when you're trying to balance dollars among other groups and be fair about it, that seems to be quite a high expenditure for 15, 37. I think so, there's got to be some equity in what we're doing here to explain how we're going to go about that.
That's what we do too. That's exactly what we do. Although, you know, that's, again, part of the balance. But then you think of the human life, and the person that's getting the service, and, but you have to because how many people are getting the service, and how much is it costing per person? And that's the same thing that we, the same question we asked about trainer and all the pools, and it's an important service to provide, because where else do they get the service? But you're debating exactly what we debate. I mean, this is, this is what we go through.
Let me clarify it one more time. Trainer's pool is staying open, or is that being...
Yes, yes, according to the proposal that Councilor Ozzy has put forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You were going to go until Sabian is usually rented on the weekends, then what are the cuts we're making in Sabian?
At this point, if you put it back at 20,400, then there would be no cuts.
I mean, what is it now? What are we actually cutting from Sabian? Just hours of operation during those five days?
No, you're putting, you're reinstating it to five days a week, so there wouldn't be any cuts to it.
Under this, what I said, it did cut Sabian, because I thought that kept it at five days a week.
You're keeping it to five days a week. It has not been open on weekends, correct? Yeah.
Well, what I'm saying is, if I put the money back in, you just said that it's usually rented on weekends, so I wouldn't, I don't know where the 20,000 is coming from.
The $20,000 allows us to continue to keep Sabian open. Sabian Center should have been closed at the first of this month, had you reduced the budget by that $20,400.
Keep it open entirely.
Keep it open from 2:30 until...
So we've got to keep the 20,000 in to keep it open at all?
To keep it open at all.
Not just at limited hours?
Correct.
Okay, so you have to put that one back in.
Exactly, and then what's, if that's what council chooses, then when we come back for the 11, 12 budget, now this is just for four months, then we're going to come back for the 11, 12 budget and present it to you then.
So if we fund Sabian, and we don't fund the Billingshurst, then that still leaves us with cutting 27,000 more than we needed to. So we have some room there to do some emergency stuff if we need to, or maintenance, or whatever.
And if I may make a suggestion, if you would allow me to make a suggestion, the reduction of Rosewood Golf Course in fertilizer, that is, that is a concern of mine that we make...
We'll have that discussion with the RTC thing this year.
Yeah, we will.
That may be, that may be changing anyway.
Yeah, but that is a concern of mine, because we've cut it so much already for this year. That is a concern, that we cut that that much. I put it in there because we're down to the bottom, but...
Well, I guess what I'm sort of saying here in a proposal would be, here's what we don't want you to cut. If you move the other ones around, to run that, take that or $20,000 and put it into Rosewood, that's sort of up to you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Any other discussion, questions? Mr. President, and then Mr. Heschel.
Yeah, Julie, how long does this get us through, till...
June 30th?
June 30th. And I do want to get to the public comment, because it is something that I mentioned last meeting, and I think it's important. And I see the pool groups coming up and doing some volunteer things, which I definitely appreciate. And I still think it could be done with the arts as well. I mean, we're looking at, you know, Mr.... I mean, we're looking at, you know, Mr. Mayor, we've laid off a hundred people. We've laid off quite a few in public safety. We have done other things in the city. I don't think we've cut any arts funding in the last three years that I'm aware of. Julie, have we?
Yes, we have.
Okay, what have we cut?
Can I get back to you on that as far as how much we've cut? Because I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. I think if we can get back to you by the end of the meeting and I can talk to Gala. We have, we have cut positions in arts. And we have proposed to cut arts grants and they've been reinstated. And we have cut arts, I mean, we've cut positions in arts as well. So I, I know we have cut in arts and culture.
Why don't you get that information?
And we can come back to you. I would, I think that the most accurate data I can get would be from Gala. But I can just tell you that we've cut positions there and we have proposed to cut the arts and culture budget and it has been reinstated. So I can get back.
Yeah, you proposed it, but the council has reinstated.
That's right.
I believe we've done that each and every time over the last three years, I believe. Councilman Ozzy's put it back in the budget. But I, I do, Mr. Mayor, because some of the public comment was directed towards me, we're looking at a twenty million dollar deficit for next year. We've laid off police, firefighters, I'm sorry, we're going to have to do things that change, changes the way we do business in the city. And when I'm looking at a hundred and twenty thousand dollar position and I'm looking at the professional arts organizations out there and I'm looking at what the aquatics have done, stepping up to the plate and, and how we work together and partner with them as a city, we've all got to come together and, and make this happen. I mean, this, again, is, is a Band-Aid through the end of the fiscal year, what we're doing here. But I think we've been extremely supportive of the arts. Each and every time this, this city council has of the programs that we do, the arts funding, the different organizations that we look at. But there's things that we're going to have to do as far as partnerships. And I, I hate the fact that, that there was some implication that we haven't done that at this table. Because I think we have. But we have an obligation, too, to make sure that, that we're providing other services. And when you're looking at a twenty million dollar hole, we've got to cut somewhere. And, and so I think this is just a Band-Aid, Mr. Mayor. And I think the seniors, too, those programs, absolutely critical, vulnerable population and the programs that we provide to them. But for next year's fiscal, I mean, twenty million dollars we're looking at. So this gets us through this fiscal year, but I, I, I think, Julie, you're going to have to go back to the drawing table. I still have concerns. I'm going to say it again. The ratio with the rank-and-file employees who were laid off within the Parks Department who provide those senior services and other things and, and the management. And I still haven't gotten an explanation for that. I just got the sheet ten minutes ago with the management and supervisory staff. But I, I do want some details on the reductions in force and, and what we're doing. And, and I've asked for it and I still haven't received it.
Mr. Asher.
This, I think this is a good start, Julie, because this really starts to tell the picture of what, what's going on. What I'd like City Manager to do, if possible, if you could overlay this, so for example, as I understand, let's just take youth and seniors. That particular division cost us, I think, approximately four hundred thousand. And I thought we generate maybe a hundred and forty thousand in revenues through the programs. I, I'd like to see that overlay on each one of these divisions. So we can get a sense of, you know, what our cost recovery is. Because you indicated in the staff report, you know, in making these tough decisions, you look at the number of people served, you know, whether it's fifteen per week or whatever the case may be. I'd like to see that information overlaid on these programs, just like we do our budget every year.
Sure.
Where we look at the number of staff, hours, the money dedicated, and then those are the inputs and the outputs are then the programs. What do we get for that time, the, the matter of FTEs and temporaries that we have? And then, and I noticed that in each, what's not in this picture is the number of temporaries that are in each division that each one of these supervisors are supervising, presumably, and the cost associated with that. So that, that would help me. And then you also indicated at our last meeting that a lot of these supervisors, now that we've lost people, coordinators, et cetera, those supervisors are actually doing that work now, or a portion of it. So I'd like to see that information, too, to see what programs we potentially can save because people are obviously working harder and longer because we have less people to do the programs. And then one of the speakers indicated on, on our senior games that we now have three part-time employees working. If I understood that correctly, we, we have three part-time employees that are doing some of the work that Rosie was doing before.
These part-time employees are real people splitting time.
Well, that's what.
That's what, no.
Yeah. Usually they're, I think they're called sixteen sixties or?
We have ten thirty-nines, which are twenty-hour-a-week employees. And those are part-time employees, which are twenty-hour-per-week employees. You're referring to fifteen sixty employees, which are thirty-hour-a-week employees. And those are different type of employees. They're, they're more than ten thirty, or more than twenty-hour-a-week employees. So I'm not sure what the citizen was referring to. And so the information you're interested in is the type of employee that we have working on?
Yeah, in each division.
Okay, we have that information.
What this doesn't tell me is, you know, how many full-time FTEs do we have?
And we have that information.
As well as our temporaries, whether they be twenty thirty-nines or fifteen sixties, whatever we call them.
We have that.
So that we can get a sense of, and then what we're getting for that.
Yeah, we can provide that.
Because that really then begins to give me the roadmap and the picture as to, you know, a good example is, is Billinghurst. I mean, but for that, I would, I would have not had enough information to, to, to move forward with Dave's suggestion or the suggestion that, you know, we might close that side down, given the fact that there's fifteen youth there.
Mm-hmm.
Or that, or that that's the net amount after revenues, for example. So if you provide that information, I think that would be very helpful.
Okay. Can do.
Mr. George.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to clarify, I know we said that this just takes us through June thirtieth, but it does fund the pools through the season, correct?
What we will do is, you've indicated that you want those pools funded into eleven-twelve, and so that, the answer is yes. That means we will fund them into eleven-twelve. And for all of these services, what you've said is that you want those services into eleven-twelve. So when we prepare our eleven-twelve budget, it will include these services. We, we won't come back and, and have them excluded from the eleven-twelve budget. You've indicated you want them into, included in the eleven-twelve budget.
Right. And then I agree with you on the maintenance for Rosewood Lake Golf Course. Because I think if you go to, you go too far below standards and you're going to lose play and you're going to lose revenue.
Right.
I mean, so you're, you're double-edged sword there. I mean, if you cut it too much and, and the course doesn't live up to standards.
Right.
You're going to lose, you're going to lose play.
Right. And I think we've got some flexibility if council agrees from Councilor Ozzy to.
Obviously contingent upon our discussion a little later today.
Right, right. Depending on timing, right. And if I may just ask for clarity, the, the last conversation about Billinghurst, I'm not sure I, was that leave it in or take it out? Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood council's direction.
Mr. President.
Dave, I just want to see in those calculations if we put the senior games in and the.
Yeah, that leaves us with twenty-seven thousand dollars.
But also the fertilizer for Rosewood. I, I do think it, it needs to go back in. That's been cut to the bone over there. So if we put those two items back in, are we balanced?
Yes.
So you're proposing to put those two items back in?
Yeah, the senior games, Mr. Mayor, and the.
Senior games weren't on the list, but.
And I think we've already taken care of that because between Dan, I already put my discretionary funds towards that and ultimately the board can.
And I'll be glad to put some discretionary funds towards it also.
Because really, this only takes us through six-thirty.
That's right.
So we're going to have the same discussion with some of these carryover dollars as to keeping those programs in play dur, during the next fiscal year.
Any other discussion? Any other comments? Chair will entertain a motion. Mr. Ozzy.
Mr. Mayor, I will move that what we take out of the budget would be the play surface installation for ninety-one thousand fifty-two, parks operation for ten, the youth at Billinghurst for thirty-seven thousand, from the Arts and Culture Commission, twenty thousand, Idah Wild Pool Option Two for thirty-seven thousand one hundred fifty-five, Arts and Culture sponsorship, fourteen thousand seven hundred forty, General Park Maintenance, sixty-one thousand dollars for a total cut of two hundred seventy thousand nine hundred forty-seven, which is seven thousand two hundred ninety-five more than staff brought to us.
Okay.
So that could be used for the senior games or whatever.
Right. Second, I've got a motion and a second. And we have had one company, JP and Sons, that has offered to adopt a park for a year. They're a landscaping company and they will come in and paint, they'll come in and fertilize it and take care of the.
Is Rosewood a golf, uh, park, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I don't think they'll go that far, but we can find a nice park and save some money. And I will get with you because there's an individual in town that told me that he wanted to step up and help some with swimming. So I will get with you on that.
Thank you for your guidance. I really, very much appreciate it.
All right, I have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
You can ask a question. Come on up, real quick.
Jim Kitter. Jessica correctly pointed out that this only takes us through June thirtieth. My proposal that we use, the Arts and Culture grant money, will be gone if we don't make a decision sooner because the Arts Commission will present to you their recommendations for next year's funds at your April meeting. And if, in fact, you approve those grants, then that money is gone and my proposal would fall on deaf ears. So what happens with those grants?
Mr. Asher.
I was going to have staff, could staff somebody address that quickly? I mean, is that something that you can, we can?
Arts and Culture Staff?
Christine.
Christine, could you, my, address, Mr. Kitters?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. You didn't hear his comment?
I. I'm sorry, for the record, I'm Christine, Fair Resource Development and Cultural Affairs Manager. I believe he wanted to know whether or not the grants were coming forward to council soon. And typically, we bring them in April. And the commission has already reviewed those.
Okay. Is that to answer your question, Mr. Kitter?
No, I think it is.
I'm still wondering whether or not my proposal to transfer or to allow the Arts and Couts, Arts and Culture Commission to use the grant money to fund that position next year would be a moot point if, in fact, you approve giving the grants out in April. Because that money will be gone.
We, I don't think we can do that at this time until we see what we're looking at.
So I guess I'm asking you, can you hold off making a decision until you address the budget question first?
Yes.
Because otherwise, you lose all of that grant money as a, as a player in the game.
Yes. Mr. Ozzy, you have something? Okay, anybody else? All right. Let's move on to our agenda. Cash disbursements, Mr. Asher?
None, Mr. Mayor. Notice.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion. Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. This time, we'll go to the consent agenda. You want to pull C-three for discussion? Any others?
C-one, A-two, Mr. Mayor.
C-one, A.
Also, C-six.
A-two and C-six?
Yes, sir.
And C-six. Any others? Chair, yes? Chair will entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
All the items that are not there, all in second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Ozzy, C-one, A-two.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the owners have signed a document with the same hours of operation at the other location, at that location, so I'll move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, have a motion for approval to have a second? Have a second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item C-six, Mr. Ozzy.
I understand for staff, Mr. Mayor, we have to remove one item on that, requiring them to have another meeting. If we take that out, they'll sign that and everything will be fine. So I'll make the recommendation that we approve this extension and remove the requirement for additional meeting.
Okay. Do you have a second? Have a second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item C-three.
Just for our, the public's focus, to be aware, this is a use that we really do need to be a large access and credit for. Here, we've given them half of the budgets that needs to prevent their private grants that they could contribute to the things that could be the most important of their neighborhoods. And these two malls are including forty-five thousand dollars to bring lights to some kind of, kind of same areas, the Isabel, Gentry, and Lumberly area, as well as a flashing light out at Maria Wrenberg. And again, I just want to give a credit for coming forward and utilizing their budgets to, to kind of fill in the gaps for some of the city services that we haven't been able to address in our budget.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll go to public hearings, item F-one. Madam Secretary, all the notices been sent.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given, no correspondence was received. I do have one public comment.
Okay. Having no public comment card, I'll bring it, oops, you got one. Bill Thomas.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and council members. To simply state, I'm here representing the property owner in support of this annexation and available if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Bring it back to the table for discussion. Any items, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, based on the evaluation of the ten annexation criteria in the Reno Municipal Code, all move to approve the requested annexation by ordinance.
Okay, have a motion to have a second? Have a second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ordinance, F-one-one.
This is bill number six-seven-four-zero and ordinance annexing to and making part of the city of Reno, certain specifically described territory being forty-one point one-four acres, a property located six point six miles northwest of the Red Rock Road and Interstate three ninety-five intersection, point four-nine miles north of the Jackpot and Full House Road intersection in the SPA Special Planning Area, master planned land use designation, Washoe County, Nevada, together with other matters properly relating there to.
Excuse me, have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F-two, we have a couple of public comments. Mr. Ray, Demarest, Demerits?
And for the record, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, excuse me, all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, no correspondence was received.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, come right up. Sorry, I butchered your name, sir.
Oh, that's all right. Ray Demarest, I live on Del Monte Lane.[1697.33]
Ray Demarest, I live on Del Monte Lane, and I'm here to speak of the topic of the annexation of Mr. Harris' property into the rest of his property. As you know, his overall goal with a major portion of his property is to have it all going before planning commissions to have it all rezoned commercial, and I would hope that, and urge the council to consider that the two properties, or the one property being annexed, should remain a single-family residence and its boundaries should remain the same. I think it would be a terrible effect on the whole Del Monte neighborhood there and all the neighbors if Del Monte Lane should become a commercial zone. It's just a tiny little road, and it'll be a very detrimental effect on what's a very nice little neighborhood right now. The road is so small that trucks can't turn around at all. We've even had on our property a huge truck realize it was lost and turned around in our front yard. There is nowhere to turn around. It's a small road, and I hope that you can stipulate that it remains single-family residence, this property being considered for annexation, and that the boundaries remain the same. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Garrett Gordon. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Members of City Council, for the record, Garrett Gordon with the law firm of Lewis and Roca, representing John Hara and Millford Fork Limited Partnership. Today, we're requesting an annexation of a 9.2-acre parcel on Del Monte Drive to give you your bearings. Here's the Neil Road Roundabout, Kitsky Lane, First Independent Bank parcel, Ranch Hara PUD. The parcel in question sits right here. It's clear that the findings can be made, as the property is, one, contiguous to the city's boundary, and, two, falls within the Reno sphere of influence and Truckee Meadow Service area. It's also important to understand the timing and context of this request. We've submitted a handbook amendment for the entire Ranch Hara property late last year. This includes, not as a gentleman stated, all commercial, but partially commercial, partially medical office, an event center, commercial equestrian center, and between 30 and 40 acres of open space. It was scheduled for planning commission in January of this year, but we have continued the hearing three times to work out concerns of the neighbors. This request is part of a larger compromise with the neighbors there on Del Monte. It does two things. One, provides greater certainty of future land uses in Ranch Hara, and, two, increases single-family residential buffer to the existing and proposed equestrian use. So, like I said, over the past couple months, we've been working with the neighbors. They had a concern that this parcel could end up commercial, could end up medical office, could end up something other than what we intended. So we're asking annexed in. You'll see, hopefully, at the end of April, our PUD application, which shows that we will continue to have a single-family buffer there to hopefully provide a nice buffer between the homes and the proposed commercial equestrian center. I'm here for any questions, and I appreciate your time.
Okay. No other public comment, I'll bring it back to the table for discussion. Any comments, Ms. Edra? Yours on...
Can we have legal kind of confirm, please, that this, when an annexation occurs, there is no change in property use? That's a separate step that has to...
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney, you are correct. The changes in zoning, although there is a translation table, it goes from county zoning to city zoning, which is the equivalent, but the major changes in zoning would occur at a separate hearing and would be noticed for that hearing after the master plan has been amended, if, in fact, you decide to amend the master plan.
Just wanted to make sure that that was clear to the individual that spoke earlier. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments? Ms. Edra.
Based on the evaluation of the 10 annexation criteria in the Reno Municipal Code, I do move for approval of the requested annexation by ordinance.
Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F22.
This is bill number 6741, an ordinance annexing to and making part of the city of Reno, certain specifically described territory being 9.2 acres of property located on north side of Del Monte Lane, 1505 Del Monte Lane, .33 miles west of its intersection with Kitsky Lane in the SPA Special Planning Area Master Plan Land Use Designation Washoe County, Nevada, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Have a motion, have a second. Second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F3. Discussion, Madam Secretary, all the notices sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, no correspondence was received.
Okay. Bring it to the table, staff.
Yes, thank you. Renee Rungis, Director of Human Resources, Mr. Mayor, Council, and City Manager, you have before you an agreement to amend the collective bargaining agreement with, between the city of Reno and the Reno Police Protective Association. And basically, what this does is return some monies in the form of concessions to bring, help bring back the 11 police officers who were laid off, who were scheduled to be laid off March 1st, and that would be in effect from March 1st to June 30th. It would be the June uniform allowance payment in the amount of $160,113. The holiday wages for the Memorial Day holiday, for those employees who work the holiday, they will only be paid their regular wages in the amount of $67,744. And those employees who have the holiday as their regular day off will not be compensated in addition to their regular monthly salary, which would save $43,447. So the total concession would be $271,304.
And that takes it through June 30?
That takes it through June 30 of 2011, yes, sir.
Any other, Mr. Azee?
Yeah, Renee, and there's no conditions on this agreement, correct?
In terms of conditions, meaning no guarantees of...
Yes.
No.
Okay, and then, have we brought back the officers yet?
Yes, we have.
Okay, so they are working. Great, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F4, Madam Secretary, all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, no correspondence was received.
Okay. Having no public comment, we'll bring it back to the table. Staff.
Thank you.
Identify yourself for the record.
Pardon?
Identify yourself for the record.
Yes. Renee Rungis, Director of Human Resources. You have before you an agreement to amend the collective bargaining agreement for the RPSAE, that's the Reno Police Supervisory Administrative Employees Association, the Lieutenant's Unit, to also help direct concession funds towards retaining the 11 police officers who were scheduled to be laid off March 1st, and they have agreed to give up their uniform allowance payment due in June, and that amount is $2,550.
Second. Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Secretary, item F5, all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, no correspondence was received.
Okay. Having no public comment cards, I'll close the public comment, go to staff.
Renee Rungis, Director of Human Resources. This item is an agreement to amend the collective bargaining agreement with the, again, the Reno Police Supervisory Administrative Employees Association, the Sergeant's Unit, also to give up their uniform allowance payment due in June in the amount of $37,400 to help retain the 11 police officers who were scheduled to be laid off March 1st.
Move to approve. Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Secretary, item F6, all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, no correspondence was received.
Okay, no public comment cards, I'll bring it back to the table, turn it over to staff.
Thank you. Renee Rungis, Director of Human Resources. This item is an agreement, again, with the Reno Police Supervisory Administrative Employees Association, the Deputy Chiefs Unit, to amend the collective bargaining agreement to give up their uniform allowance payment for June in the amount of $2,400 to be used towards funding the 11 police officers who were scheduled to be laid off March 1st.
Move to approve. Have a motion, second. Have a second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F7, Madam Secretary, all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, no correspondence was received.
Okay, close the public comment section. Back to staff.
Thank you. Renee Rungis, Director of Human Resources. This item is a letter of agreement with the Reno Fire Department Administrators Association regarding a vacant EMS manager position and two vacant division chief positions, and this agreement allows the emergency management services manager position to remain unfilled for the remainder of this fiscal year. And in addition, it allows for two division chief positions to remain unfilled until January 1, 2011. This letter of agreement will automatically be extended for six-month intervals after July 1, 2011, unless mutual consent is withdrawn with 30 days written notice by either party.
Move to approve. Have a motion and second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F8, Madam Secretary, all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and no correspondence was received.
Okay, close the public comment, no cards.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. On this item, we wanted to put for the record that Councilmember Zadra has a continuing disclosure, because she has a sibling that's married to a firefighter, so she would have to abstain on IAAF collective bargaining matters.
Okay. Ms. Rungis.
Renee Rungis, Director of Human Resources. This item is regarding the International Association of Firefighters, IAAF, Local 731, and there was some discussion at the last council meeting regarding a proposed agreement that was brought forth to the council. It's the item that you have in your packet that was presented to you on March 2. You reviewed that, and then, in addition, you requested a couple of items be added to that agreement, and those items were to institute a two-week vacation request submittal requirement, and also to run an eight-hour vacancy on fire apparatus before having to call back. This item was presented to the IAAF, and the IAFF stated that the language inserted by the city was unacceptable, but the IAFF further stated that is ready to move forward on the March 2 agreement if the council was still interested in pursuing that.
Discussion. Well, they were gonna, did they take this to the vote of the people like they said they were?
Yeah, did this go the membership, Renee?
I don't believe it did, but perhaps the president would like to speak to that.
You want to come forward, please?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Manager, surf, council members. For the record, Dennis Jagobson, President Reno Firefighters Association. No pursuant to our last discussion, my first obligation with the new language was to take it back to the original committee that generated the concession, which was my negotiations committee, and upon review of those individuals, it was determined that the language was inappropriate because of our open contract negotiations and because of the current articles to which these, this new language affected, and therefore was not to be taken further due to those issues, and that is what generated my rejection of the new language.
Any other discussion or questions? Mr. Azee.
Dennis, part of the issue, we just got concessions that were read into the record from all the police groups, and there's still two, even if we were to go with your proposal to bring back four, there's still two issues in here, item seven and eight of the agreement that puts essentially conditions on, stipulations on what you guys are offering for concessions with guarantees from the city. I mean, is that something we can talk about today?
It's something that I really couldn't talk about today in negotiations. The reason those conditions or those line items were inserted in negotiations and discussion with your staff was that my members wanted assurances that the money that they put forth would go directly to these firefighters being placed back on duty and serving the community, and this was just a condition that my association members requested as assurances.
Is that for just through the July 1?
Yes, sir, that is through this concession period, which ends June 30, 2011.
But the problem is publicly, you're saying that you guys are offering the same concessions as the police groups, and that's not accurate, because you're putting these two additional conditions on here that you're tying the hands of the city council by doing so.
We understand that the condition, our position is that the initial offering up of our service or our monies from our benefit package is very similar to those that other bargaining groups have offered. As I said, the reason for the conditions are strictly so that my membership can have confidence that the money that they offer up goes to, directly to their members, and that was conditions that my membership has placed bottom of my organization and my management team.
But, so it's not accurate, though, to say that this is just like the police concessions, because it's not. You're stipulating to number seven and eight in here.
If the police do not have those exact verbiage on there, then it wouldn't be an exact duplicate, and I don't believe that we intended to say it's exactly, just in the spirit of the same concessions is what we're going with, but that's why the language is there.
But it's not. You're asking us for guarantees, so I think it's inaccurate when you guys go out and say that you're offering the same thing that the police are, because you're not. They didn't have any strings attached to their concessions. There, if you'd like, we can give you a copy of exactly the language that they've put in.
I understand your point.
Even the administration, the managers, the battalion chiefs came forward, they didn't have any strings attached to their concessions either.
I understand your point, and as I said, my position is that the basic concessions from our organization with respect to the benefits give up, that's what we're intended to be virtually in parallel with. But, yes, those other conditions are on the document.
Mr. Azee.
But those two conditions aren't from your membership, they're from your, I don't know what you call them, your bargaining team?
They're from the bargaining team as discussions with the membership, and this goes back with a little history pursuant to the issue of our concessions, which were accepted back in 2009, and the resulting disagreements over the 2009. Our membership felt that with that, they wanted some additional assurances, and if it is unpalatable to the council, we certainly would understand that that would be part of your decision process.
Well, let's bring that out publicly, because I think some of the statements have been inaccurate. It's been stated all over the place that the city of Reno guaranteed no firefighter layoffs. Can you show me any document that said that in 2009?
Not that they actually guaranteed no firefighter layoffs, just as, and I don't have the wording in front of me, because I don't have the document in front of me, but it was something that was, unless provided by law, I believe, or it was something...
I think it was that if the business wasn't there and we had further cuts to do, we would do it.
There was a clause giving recognized management's rights, yes.
But not anything guaranteed.
But I'm reading all over the place that the city of Reno reneged on that negotiation. Is that what you guys have been telling people?
We reneged on that negotiation?
That we did. That we promised no layoffs and we laid off anyway.
You promised no layoffs in the spirit, and then obviously layoffs occurred.
Did we promise no layoffs or not?
Excuse me, I have a question.
Did we promise no layoffs or not?
Except as otherwise provided by law, and that was our understanding of the intent of the agreement.
And did we do it by law?
Apparently, we agreed that...
Can you show any document, any council meeting where any city council member ever said that we would not do layoffs? I think we were very specific, saying that there very well could be layoffs.
Okay, and I don't have that information from every council meeting, sir, but...
I mean, the problem is, is out in the public, it's being told that the council did not live up to that, which is why your membership put that in this time, when last time we did what you guys agreed to also, the same agreement. And it's just getting, you know, all these rumors and innuendo out there that isn't true, like you saying that this is the same as the RPPA, that's not accurate at all, that we laid off after we promised that we wouldn't lay off, not accurate at all. So that's what makes this difficult for us, too, is I read all this stuff that the city council has backed off of some things that we have said, and we haven't.
Okay, well, I can appreciate your position, sir, and as I said, I wasn't part of that original negotiating team, as you know.
Were you a firefighter then?
I was a firefighter then, yes, sir. I was a captain.
Were you involved in knowing what was signed and what wasn't signed?
I was, I was kept apprised, as my membership was, yes.
And is it your opinion that we did something that we said we wouldn't do?
I believe that the, my team believed that the spirit of the concession was that this was going to provide for those jobs to remain, and as I said, it turned out to be with economic conditions or whatever driving factors that those jobs did not remain.
So you just said also that your membership wanted these two conditions in there, but you haven't asked your membership, have you?
We have done just internal polls, just a verbal. We have not actually done a vote to have the membership approve that specific verbiage.
I tell you, if this is a brotherhood, I'm not sure I want to blow him. Mr. Azee.
You know, on the two items, I wasn't here last meeting because I had a conflict, but in my calendar, but which is bullet four and five that I have in, at least in my status staff report, and that's the waiving of the rights for the apparatus, as well as the request for holiday and vacation time. What's the concern? Is it, you need more time? I mean, if we were going to take this out of the agreement today and move forward with your proposal to save the four firefighters, is this still on the table for us to discuss for the next fiscal year?
I'm sorry, again, the original document without the new verbiage, is this what you're referring to?
Yeah, and I understand you've taken it back to your group, and they've said, no, we're not going to agree to those concessions. Is that because you haven't had time to consider them, or are those simply, are those still on the table for negotiation for the next fiscal year?
The new verbiage, sir, that was added by council?
Yes.
We do believe very strongly, as indicated to the city manager in my letter, that those are very much an items that we would like to discuss and have been discussing, but in the forum of contract negotiations, which would provide long-term relief to the city as opposed to short-term relief for just a few months. So, yes, we would like to take those items and keep them within the negotiation process, and we're very prepared to continue to do that.
Do you anticipate that being done before the end of this fiscal year, coming to agreement? agreement?
The contract negotiations?
Well, at least on these two items.
Well, as part of the contract, I would like to continue moving forward with the city on both contract years that are open, yes. We are prepared and we had meetings up to and including this morning, waiting to continue with the city on both of those items and on the two contracts.
Okay. With the end result, making sure we save firefighters' jobs to protect the public, correct?
That is our common goal, sir, yes.
And that's why I'd like to clarify something. Everybody says three-man crew, four-man crew. If they're really concerned about public safety, they would go to the three-man crew because we could keep 90% of our stations open. But because they won't go to the three-man crew and you have a fire...two fire trucks show up at every fire within eight to 10 minutes of each other, so...huh?
Minute and 50 seconds.
Yeah, excuse me. You're right. You have six to eight people on scene. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, you're saying, you told us last time that you could, if we agreed to your terms, you could actually take this back and have a vote in seven days, correct?
On the original, excuse me, on the original document, yes. That was already pre-approved by my team and I would take the original document as submitted to my membership for the shortened vote, yes.
Now, in that situation, we had to lay off 36 firefighters. Why wouldn't you take a proposal to save all 36 firefighters?
We don't have the ability in this short time, in this short period of time, to come up with the funding with the numbers we're provided by the city at, I believe, $38,000 per firefighter. This was what we have left in our contract period and so the...this is the amount of money that we could come up with on short notice.
I mean, it could be as easy as a reduction in pay.
If that's a condition that the council puts on us, we can go back and look at it, but again...
It's not a condition. I mean, I'm just asking a solution. That's not...
I'm not sure...
That's nothing that's being negotiated right now, correct?
Restate that, please?
That's nothing that's being negotiated right now, correct, in contract negotiations?
What is...I'm sorry, I lost track.
The reduction in pay.
Not a reduction in pay is not anything being negotiated.
So that's something you could take to your membership in seven days and save 12, 24, 36 firefighters if you wanted to.
I'm not sure if my team would look at that, but I can certainly take it to my team.
You could.
I could take it to the team for discussion, sir.
But you could...that is something you could do if your team agreed. You could take it to a vote within seven days.
It would take longer than seven days because I'd have to generate a new concession document. But once, if a concession document was generated, then it would be a shortened time, yes. But I'm not sure if the finances are there. I don't have this in front of me to say that the finances are there.
To take a reduction in pay?
I don't know what the cost is for 36 people for the period of time that you're discussing.
I think it's about 10%. Is that correct? Who's...
I'm giving you...
So, but that is something that could be done and it's never been offered.
No, it has not been offered.
I mean, you're worried about saving four firefighters and I'm...if we can come up with a way to save those four firefighters, I'm all for it. But that really does nothing to help public safety.
Doesn't help us.
Doesn't help us a bit. We can't fund a...we can't open another station. Takes 12 firefighters to open a station.
Yes.
I mean, it does...it saves four guys' jobs and it's four guys that are not unemployed. And if we can do it, I want to do it. But it really does nothing for public safety in this community.
It's a step...it's a start. It's all I can...it is a start, but it is not...
Four out of 36.
Right. Yeah.
You had to add the other 20-something we laid off before because they, you know, they've had the time to do what you're suggesting, Mr. Dorch.
That's what I mean. I mean, that would be...
But they haven't done it. This is another delay tactic. Excuse me, go ahead.
And again, I think there's some frustration. Again, you don't want to go to three-man crews so we can't open additional stations. You don't want to save the other 32 firefighters so we can open up additional fire stations. I mean, you really aren't coming forward with anything substantial that benefits this community. I mean, like I said, if we can benefit those four and get them back to work so they're not in the unemployment line, I'm all for it. But you're not doing...you're not offering anything that benefits this community.
Well, I'm sorry that you feel that way. As I said, I...we have not addressed direct pay reductions on this document. That is correct. Those discussions would be for, you know, for long-term. And I know we've been faced with some percentage reductions by staff on our 11-12 contract.
I understand that. But your reason for taking these other two items out of here were because you say they're currently in negotiations and you can't discuss them here.
Yes.
A reduction in pay is not.
No, that was not brought up. Actually, that was removed from the negotiations by the city.
Right. So that's something you could take forward immediately if you wanted to.
I don't know that. I would have to check with my team. But again, or it could be brought up, which we're still waiting from the city's proposal. It could be brought up in the 11-12 contract.
And they did take cost of living, did not take cost of living for a couple of years.
I understand that.
No, I understand. Mr. Frasim.
Actually, a question for Renee, and I think this gentleman wanted to say something if he wanted to.
Did you have something to say? Come on up. Come on up. You're already mouthing off. Come on up, sir.
Come.
Well, come on up here. Get to the microphone, identify yourself for the record.
Sure. Alan Whitworth, fire captain. Listening to some of this, I, you know, I get a little upset over what's said and what isn't said. I feel that we're not getting the whole story out there and I don't really want to get up here. I'm not a very good speaker myself and that's why Jake's up here. But it really...I apologize for me spouting off like that, but it really upsets me to see some of these comments. Jake, you know, for him being caught under the pressure here, he doesn't think of everything as what's going on. Like Councilmember Dorch brought up that we haven't given anything. We have. We've given a lot. And these guys, believe it or not, are doing a good job and contrary to what you feel, they're doing a good job. And this union executive board is working hard to work with you guys. And it seems every time you turn around, he's getting hit, you know? So I don't have facts and figures. I can't throw out a lot of information.
That's your opinion and you're entitled to it.
But I do work there and I'm damn proud to be a fireman. But when I hear this going on, it upsets me a lot. And I've lived here all my life and I've worked construction, I've worked for UPS, and I've worked for grocery businesses, and we work just as hard as anybody else out there. And that, I want to say, these guys are doing a good job. So I apologize for spouting off.
No, no. I appreciate you speaking up.
Mr. Whitworth, let me...no one said that they're not...people aren't doing a good job. It's just that we're in financial trouble.
And I understand that.
So if you...and I know you don't have facts and figures, but maybe we can get some of this miscommunication out of the way. What in your mind has the local given up?
They have given up, like his cost of living, and they're willing to give up more. But I'll tell you one thing. You guys talk about the three-man engine companies. I'm a captain and you know what? I could survive the three-man engine companies. But when is the end? When is the end? When we say, let's go with three-man engine companies and you open all those stations, what's going to turn around the following week and you say, we're going to close down the station? When I have four men on an engine, right now, even though we've got other stations closed, I can depend on that many people showing up to help me, okay? Because as you get older, and I'm 53 years old, I've got a few more years left, but as you get older, you're incapable of handling the amount of stress. And I'm telling you, you got stressed from just handling the fires and stuff. And then on top of that, wearing those turnouts, they increase their core temperature and the body tries to compensate and your heartbeat goes crazy. And you can be in fairly good shape, which you're still going to have a problem.
Nobody's disputing anything you say.
I know that.
But the problem is, we have to...well, so the problem is, we want to get firefighters out throughout the community and keep stations open.
Sure.
And our contention is, and we haven't heard anything different, is three people are better than no people.
And I agree.
Okay.
And you talk about, you know, making these stipulations. We want a stipulation, one is which, when do we say, okay, we give you this much and then next week it's something else? It's something else. And then some of the...
Well, let's...
Let me finish. Some of the information that is out there isn't quite up to snuff, okay?
Well, tell me what it is.
And it's really tough to go to the media and say, hey, these guys aren't saying it because we're a professional group here. We do not want to make anybody look bad. We're not here to do that. We're here to do our job and we're trying to do that job.
We understand that. Mr. Aziz, go ahead.
But what else? I mean, that's...everybody's been giving up pay raises and everything. No one in this city, pretty much, I'll say 95% of the people, has actually given up pay. When we're looking at a $20 million cut next year...
You didn't take a raise.
We didn't take a raise to a total of $4.5 million.
You did not give up pay. You didn't take a raise.
I'm saying a cut in pay.
Right. And that is a cut in pay.
Well, that might be our fundamental disconnect. I mean, for the public out there who don't...we have 70% unemployment with construction workers, they would gladly have their old job without an increase in pay.
And I had a business in construction. It's gone, okay?
Yeah, while you were a firefighter, correct?
Before I was a firefighter.
So what else has been given up? I know that there was temporary...I was supposed to see if I have it all right. Temporary giving up of uniform allowance for one year and maintenance of the uniform allowance for one year. What else? That was only for 2010, I believe, or was it '09?
You could answer that.
And the permanent concessions of all COLAs beyond, I believe it was June...
No, no, no. No. Because your contract was over. Your contract was over July 1st. You didn't concede no more COLA raises. The contract is over.
Well, I thought you were going back to the 2009. You were talking 2009.
Right.
Right. And as far as...
We all say, yes, you gave up a COLA, okay?
Okay, that's fine.
We all...we thank you for that. That's great. There's been no miscommunication.
Correct.
That the firefighters gave up a COLA raise. But you also still get merit pay bumps and also longevity pay bumps. So people are still making more money than they made a year and a half ago, correct?
Making more money? No, my money...you know, I speak for myself. My paycheck has been the same.
Well, I'm not saying your overtime might have been cut, but your base pay and your longevity pay and that has gone up. And that's the issue is, and I agree with you, I wish we could sit down publicly and just say, let's talk about this. Let the entire public see what's going on here and then we can make some decisions. Because I absolutely believe that everybody in the city, every person in the city works hard. The sewer workers work hard, the firefighters work hard, the police work hard. And that's not a rationale for saying we don't deserve to take a cut. I think if everyone would take a cut, we would be a lot...we wouldn't have 36 firefighters laid off right now.
Total's 56.
So could we take...yeah, 56 since last year.
And sir, I put forth again that those issues are very palatable to us. We would like to discuss it, but we believe that the best service to the community is to take those additions or those issues to the contract and make them permanent as opposed to a three-month issue.
We've been in negotiations for over eight months.
On that, and that item is not on the table. You're right. That item was removed.
Over eight months on the other items and they're not...we're not sold with those.
Everything.
And that's not on the table.
Originally, it was.
Eight months, we've been...eight months on the last contract.
Sir, I can't negotiate here, but I understand what you're saying.
I'm not negotiating.
And I still believe...
We're not negotiating. This is hypothetical.
But I...to answer the original question, I believe it was of Mr. Dorch, is absolutely we want to move forward and absolutely would like to get these contracts signed. And I have presented that opinion quite a bit to the previous city manager since I've been the president. Mr. Esker understood that. And I think we had the same conversation with Mr. Lef last night, that we are prepared. We'd like to get these signed. We'd like to provide relief to these citizens long-term via the contracts.
Well, one thing the councilman Frasim brought up last time is, would you be willing to go directly to binding arbitration?
Would I be willing to go directly to binding arbitration?
Get out fact...get rid of fact finding.
Well, the fact finding is over, sir.
I mean, for even for the next contract negotiation, fact finding isn't over because we don't have the decision here.
Well, right, our participation is over.
So even for this year and for next year, because that would...if we can't come to a term, then that cuts over a year off of our negotiations. If you guys would go to...and we ask this of all of them. Can we cut out the fact finding or direct to binding arbitration?
Are you asking my opinion of that, on that? Well, my concern with that, first off, I believe the fact finding process, although it was expensive for us, was a very positive process. And I've relayed that to the mayor and I relayed that. It's, you know, all of our cards are all face up and we, both sides learned some very interesting positions on it. So I believe that was a very healthy process. To go straight to binding arbitration, I think that that would circumnavigate the actual intent of the law, which will provide for the fact finding. And I know that the city is also...
No, no, no. We could both voluntarily agree, like they did in Clark County. Like they did in Clark County, they agreed to go directly to binding arbitration. That cuts a year out of this process.
It can't.
So if you really say that we can get to something quicker, if we can't, this gets us quicker at the end.
If we get to quicker through negotiations, that would be the best for all, I would believe.
Let's do it this weekend.
Negotiations? I will...we will be there. Absolutely. We pick the time, my team will be there. We will be there for this weekend. And we were there two weekends ago. We will work anytime. We will be there for the city. Absolutely.
Mr. Gustaf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dennis, first of all, thanks for coming up and creating the dialogue with the council because that's, I think, part of our frustration. We haven't had much of a dialogue with your side of it. Couple of questions I have, and I can't figure out where the disconnect is and where it's been for so long. And I think I might have gotten a clue today. Do you think it's the feeling of your membership that if they don't take a COLA, they have actually taken a pay cut?
You know, I can't speak for the whole membership, but I do believe that until recently, we didn't believe that we were being, and I hate to use the word credited because it sounds self-serving, but that it wasn't acknowledged because many of the other organizations hadn't done that. We were one of the few, if not the only, that did it. It is being acknowledged now and hopefully we can move past it. We're not trying to continue to drag up something that happened two years ago, but there is a disconnect there, yes, sir. And I think we're moving towards getting rid of that.
I think we need to because we're talking about cuts. Other people, what I hear is they're talking about, we didn't take a COLA, and we can't equate those two. At least our other employees don't equate that. Let me not put it on them, let me put it on myself. I don't equate that as being a cut, not taking a merit increase or a COLA. Second thing I heard from the gentleman who came up, and thank you two for coming up and expressing your thoughts, was he said that he's captain and he wouldn't mind going to the three-man crew, but then he started to say and held up what he was going to complete about what happens next. So I think there's...there seems to be some kind of inherent distrust on what happens next. I don't need for you to answer that, but rhetorically, I'll just say to you that what happens next, if you went to three-man crews and we changed that for whatever reason, we'd next, if you went to three-man crews, and we changed that for whatever reason, we'd have to answer, answer to the citizenry. If you don't think they would be in this room full and say, wait a minute, you said three-person crews, man, excuse me, I, I use man generically, three-person crews, and we changed that for some reason, I, I don't think we'd ever hear the end of it. So, I think whatever that, that, that mistrust may be, we need to get rid of that, because that's not, we're asking for that, that three-person crew to keep employed, the people that we want to keep employed, so all stations can, can open with no ulterior motive to do something, ah, we got that, now we can do this. From one person speaking, and I think the other council feels the same way in the discussions we've had, that's what we want to do. We want to keep everybody employed for the safety of the people working and also the safe, safety of the citizenry. So, if there is some mistrust there, work on getting rid of that, because we're not looking at, at doing something beyond that. We're saying, this is what we want to do, and if we don't, if we go, if we were to step back on something we did, I'll tell you, the citizens wouldn't stand still for it. They would be all over us. So, again, I thank you for listening, but I, I think we need to really solve whatever this, this disconnect is about, about salaries and cuts and COLAs, because it, it seems to be, I understand, your side can bristle and get their back up, that's what we're doing, doing the same thing. We need to get that dialogue working so that this is taken care of. I appreciate you listening.
And I appreciate your comments, sir, and, uh, your general theme, I definitely echo it. Uh, and, and we are, uh, making strides on our end to close that gap, and I am getting very good, uh, cooperation from staff, and I think we're, we're on the right track. I do believe that.
One of the things that bothers me the most is we've known these, we had these problems, and I don't know of anything besides these petty little things that you've come up with. I respect the firemen, I know they do a great job and everything else, but you've known for six, or your staff or your company's known for six or seven months that we had these shortages, and I don't see anything significant on the table. And it just really bothers me that, maybe we got negotiations mixed up with the other, but you've had plenty of time to go to your membership and see what concessions they'd be willing to, because I talked to a lot of the, uh, younger firemen and stuff like this, they're willing to do something, but it seems like the old timers want to throw the young under the bus, because it's all five years and under that we're throwing. And, and to not open more stations, uh, when they tell me how many minutes is it before another truck's on site?
I think it was a minute and fifty.
Minute and fifty seconds, two minutes, or something like that. I, I just don't understand. And I, they talk about public safety, well, if they're really concerned about public safety, they would put more, uh, they would get it to where we could do some units, and to protect, so we don't take that off of the table, uh, we could do whatever we needed to do, uh, that, that wouldn't be a permanent deal, but it'd be one that would could just get us through the thing. But that's my comment. Ms. Srazza?
Dennis, I guess, just following up, because I did mention the binding arbitration. Part of our challenge is, I mean, at the rate we're going, I mean, I don't even think the public understands, we don't have a contract with fire, it's expired. I mean, it expired last year.
Correct.
The way this process is going, it could be another two years before we even get to, um, this contract being completed. We could both agree to binding arbitration, as Councilman Azzi said, it was done in Clark County, they've got a resolution, now they're already working on their next, uh, contract. But I guess what the frustration is, is three years ago, in 2009, when we're looking at this, I've asked and asked about this calling in for vacation. And I understand it's part of contract negotiations, but it seems like, uh, uh, for both parties in good faith, this would be something that would save jobs and everyone could come to the table, but you're talking about hearing from us, I've been saying this for three years, three years, to help us reduce the overtime. And I keep hearing from your members, the blogs everywhere else, oh, you know, this isn't going to save the city any money, this, this isn't doing anything, but if that's the case, why not just do it? If there's really no savings there.
Well, I'm not-
It's not hurting anybody.
If, if it's not driving up overtime, then why not just do it?
And I believe that was well discussed, and again, I'm prepared to move on that. Uh, we do have a, an appetite for that. Um, I was not involved in all those, you know, negotiations that you met, I just took over, uh, four months ago. Um, I was just a member before that. But I know our team, and the team that I have assembled now has discussed that. That is definitely, uh, on the table. It was discussed in the marathon session, as I mentioned, last, uh, council meeting, uh, the 24th, 25th, and 26th, uh, there were proposals placed on the table. It was an open forum session, so nothing binding, but those proposals were placed on the table, and we were very close. I believe that the, the process can be completed, and I believe we can get both contracts without any further, uh, arbitrations or, uh, fact finding. We can move forward on these contracts, and we are willing to do that and get these things signed and provide relief long-term.
But Dennis, that's another thing, I, I think that you said to the press was that we were almost there. I, and I think there was a quote by somebody that said, we're almost there, but the one stipulation the city wanted would have put public safety at risk in the contract. I'm not even sure what you're referring to.
Did I say that? I don't believe I said that.
I, I believe someone on your executive team had said that. I, I think Channel 4 had, had done something on it as well, that we were almost close to reaching, uh, an agreement.
The, the session that we had, which was very open, and again, I was not there, uh, but from the reports that I've got, and it seems to be, uh, consistent, is that this open forum that, that we created, uh, came very, very close, including the seven and a half percent, uh, that the council was, uh, asking for, for 11-12. We came very, very close to these numbers. And what I'm asking is the opportunity to either accept or deny, uh, our concessions, but yet to move forward on these contracts and get these things in permanent format that will provide relief for the citizens.
And then, one last question, if I could, Mr. Mayor, on, on this agreement today, would you be willing to take it to your membership if we took seven and eight out and made it consistent with the rest of the public safety concessions? We leave, we leave four and five for the contract negotiations, but seven and eight, so we make it consistent with everybody?
I can take that back, and I can give you an answer this afternoon. I don't have, uh, that answer for you. As I said, you, I've given you reasoning why that's there. Uh, without that, you know, it doesn't change the body of the, uh, actual dollar value. Um, whether that is a hinging factor to my membership, I can't stand here and tell you yes or no. I know that with it in there, it was, uh, very palatable to my membership, because they felt, and I said, talking to, uh, in, in reference to what, uh, Councilman Guston said, there is a, there is, and I don't like the word mistrust, but there is an air of uncertainty. This was a way for our team to bridge that. Um, we felt that with no layoffs coming the next four months, it didn't matter, uh, as far as the actual application of those line items, that we all hope that these four jobs and these, uh, jobs we have continuing are going to be of, you know, be stable for the next four months. Um, if that's the request of council, I certainly would go back, and I can have an answer, uh, very shortly, uh, whether the, uh, you know, they believe that that would be a, uh, an issue that would still remain palatable, and, because again, councilwoman, we want to take something to our membership, they'll pass. It does, none of us any good for, for, to go through this if my membership, uh, doesn't support it, and even though we support it, uh, you know, as we will do so. Um, so, we were trying to give them something that we could really support. So, if that's your, if that's your request, um, please let me know, and I'll certainly take it back and get a very prompt answer.
Mr. Azzi?
I have a question for Renee. Renee, I, I've heard a rumor, and I want to either affirm it or put it to rest, that a lot of city employees are now going and getting their, their, uh, sick pay, getting, uh, payouts in the last couple of weeks. Do you know anything about that?
I think, um, you're referring to vacation payouts.
Yes.
I'll defer to, uh, the chief on that.
So, it's not the sick pay payouts, there's big-
If people remain employed, they're not eligible for sick leave payoffs, yes.
We've had, um, some, some, some of our members actually come in, um, for the record, Michael Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief, uh, and, and cash in some of their time. Uh, this has been going on for, uh, several months now, for a variety of reasons. Uh, there's some uncertainty, um, out in, in the city, I guess, and, uh, but we've had some members come in and, and cash out some of their vacation leave banks.
And how much more of that is there than we've budgeted for?
Well, we, we, what we typically do, uh, council members, we, we go back a year and we look at our actuals, and we build that into our budget, and, uh, that's kind of, kind of a running balance that we use, and I think, uh, we are either at that projection or we're over that.
So, but we didn't count on that. Where does that money come from to fill that? Just the general fund?
Correct.
So, by people cashing out their vacations, they've caused a larger deficit that we have to overcome now?
We are, i- if the department cannot absorb that overage within its, within its budget, yes.
Well, if we're already over that number, chief, how would we absorb it? If we don't, if it doesn't come to us now-
Well, you're, you're correct.
So, how much over are we talking about?
I don't have that information, but I can get that.
Because that's, that's an issue that I have too, and I don't know whether that's a membership issue or just our issue, but when people are basically making a run on the bank, that, that doesn't help me bring back any firefighters, to tell you the truth.
And if I'm not mistaken, where's Renee? Is that not an issue-
I just can't afford it.
-that we're negotiating right now, a cap on?
Uh, not.
No?
Not.
Not that I know of. And how much was, uh, driven by the 36? I don't know.
Any other questions?
Well, I think that's just something that should, should be on the table here, is that fire is now over budget even more, because people are just taking payouts.
And, and, and again, Reno Fire Chief Michael Hernandez, uh, the 36 firefighters that we did lay off, they did cash out, uh, all of their time, so that, that was also a contributing factor to why we're over, so.
Okay.
Mr. Asher?
Yeah, just, just briefly, you, you, the group, the bargaining, your team understands the reason why seven and eight cause us problems, just because between today and June 30th, legislature could come in and basically take a lot of our revenue away from us, so to guarantee that those four firefighters will have a job through June 30th, makes it very difficult to guarantee. So, hopefully that's been expressed to the team, so they understand the reason why that, those two provisions are problematic.
Okay, I, and we understand that they are, and this is, this was not after, uh, just a casual conversation, those, those articles were put in there, and we discussed with your staff, uh, and, and tried to explain the reasoning for that. It was, uh, so that our membership could, could bridge the gap with some certainty. And I believe, and again, I don't have that document in front of me, because I didn't know that we were gonna, I thought it was a dead document, but, uh, there are provisions in there that, that the monies, uh, still remain, and it's basically it's a pay-as-you-go, and yet, there is a, a, a period there to where, even if you are, uh, forced or to, to review that layoff condition, uh, that you, uh, you know, some of the money still remain in, in the fire department's, uh, budget. So, again, it was a, uh, two items there, placed there, uh, again, as we've, to kind of wrap it up, so that, uh, our members had some confidence or some, uh, good feeling that their money went directly to where they intended it to go.
It just says the agreement's void if they're laid off. So, the problem is, I, I don't have any control over the legislature. If they come in and take two or three million dollars away from the city, then ultimately there's nothing that we can do about it. We couldn't, we can't guarantee a fireman's job, we can't guarantee anybody's job. So, that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And, Mr. Azzi?
Well, I mean, just to follow up on that, we can't even guarantee how much you take out in, in vacation time. I mean, so, how do I do that? If everybody pulls out all their vacation time, and that costs, even the fire department, $2 million, how do we make that up?
Well, I don't have any numbers either, as far as, you know, the vacation, I know the 36 people were cashed out for obvious reasons.
I'm just trying to say that there's other reasons, other than the state legislature, that happen within the fire department itself, that may be cause for us to have to look at some, some reductions there. But, Mr. Mayor, I'm just wondering, and I know we don't like to use the word mistrust, but there obviously is some mistrust here, and maybe the, the, the middle road is if we take those two out and send it back. Um, but also, I think that I would be willing to say, I'll put the other two, get it up to six, if they voluntarily agree to not call in 12 hours ahead of time. I'll trust them that they won't call in, and they'll trust us that we, that we won't do the layoffs unless something drastic happens.
Well, I, I personally have a problem. I don't know where these four people do, I want to save as many jobs as I can, I hate laying off people, but on the four people there, it's nothing but a token. I don't think it's a good offer, and, uh, I can't, it's costing the city money to keep the people, because we're not getting the concession, and I think that, uh, uh, let's just go ahead and accept what's laid off and go from there. I, I won't support the project. Mr. Srazza?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do disagree with you, because we did the same thing with the police, that their offer of concessions for this fiscal year, and I think it's fair to be consistent with all bargaining groups. That being said, though, I, I would support going back to your membership, um, but we do have to strike seven and eight. Quite frankly, I think it's illegal. We have a legal obligation as a city council to balance the budget. And, and we, as other council members have pointed out, we, I mean, we don't know what's going to happen, foreseen, but at the end of the day, we have to have a balanced budget, and I think that ties our hands, that's why in the original agreement with the first COLA concessions, we specifically put that in the article, that, that we had to have that ability. I mean, we can't have our hands tied there, so I think to move forward in good faith, that, that, I, and I would hope, Dennis, that you would take it back to your membership without seven and eight, so we're consistent with all the groups, um, and, um, on what the other groups are offering to save those four positions.
Mr. Asher, then Mr. Dorch, did you have something? Oh, Mr. Dorch?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't, I don't see how it costs the city money if, if they're coming up with the concessions to cover those, those four firefighters. So, in that sense, I, if they can come up, if we can come up to an agreement, I'm, I'm comfortable with bringing those four back. And maybe, maybe, the devil's in the details here, but maybe there's some different language that we can come up with that, that meets that need of you guys to know that this money remains dedicated to those four firefighters, but doesn't tie our hands in the event something else happens. And, and, and right now, I mean, we're not anticipating anything else happening, but, but there's got to be something that gives us the, the ability to, to manage the city. And, and, in the event something does happen in the next four months. So, maybe, maybe there's, there's some mutual agreement that we can get to there, I don't know.
And this could be put off until the Wednesday meeting, if we have to.
Till next week, yeah. Um, but what I'm more encouraged by is the fact that you're trying to tell me that you think we're close on contract negotiations. To me, that's even more important. Maybe we can get there and bring even more than these four back, like the mayor's asking for, um, because, because that's what's going to have an impact on public safety. That's, to me, and I agree with the mayor on the fact that these four really don't do much for us, as far as public safety. But if we can get to that other point and have more stations open on a daily basis and provide what's needed in this community, that's what's more important to me, and that's the direction I'd like to see us get to.
And sir, I agree with you. Uh, this is, as all concessions are, they're short-term, they're a stopgap measure, it's a step in the right direction, it provides the, a little bit more safety to the public, but I absolutely agree, and so does my association. We would like to see these long-term, we want to get these behind us, we want to provide, uh, you know, some stability for you folks, uh, and for us, uh, in the financial arena, and we can move forward. And that is, uh, very much in the direction that I am, uh, taking my organization.
Chief, what do these four guys do for you? It saves four jobs, job, somebody, and they don't have to go on welfare.
Reno Fire Chief Michael Hernandez, uh, we would distribute them basically two on one shift and one on the, uh, the other two remaining shifts, so it just adds one more person in our, in our flexible staffing plan. It's, um, uh, from my perspective, I'll take one.
Oh, I know you would.
But, I'll, obviously, when we have, um, over 50 people that have been, uh, laid off, it's, it's an extreme challenge to the organization, it's a challenge in, in delivering service. Uh, I have deep concerns, um, over the, the risk that we, we take and the areas that we protect, uh, response times, the workload has increased for the firefighters, uh, so, you know, whether it's one, 21, 41, or 51, I, I will accept anything we can get, uh, you know, as, as, as the captain mentioned earlier, firefighting is hot, dangerous, nasty work. And, uh, but, four, I, I'd like to see more.
All right, well. Any other questions? Yes. Okay, I overlooked, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
I did overlook, and Mr. Burke wanted to say something? Dennis Burke, you had something to say, sir? Apologize for overlooking you a while ago.
My fault, I applied late.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilpeople. My name's Nelson Burke, I'm a resident and property owner here in Reno, and I just want to tell you how sad I am, um, what I see going on with the fire department and the city council and the fire administration. Um, as a resident of this community, I think that the city ought to be able to run the town, I think that the fire administration ought to be able to run the fire department, and your union, all, all respect, guys, you're tying their hands. Desperate times call for desperate moves. You guys are part of the solu, you should be part of the solution.
Talk into the microphone, please.
Sorry. Those guys should be part of the solution, and they're part of the problem. All respect, you guys really need to dig deep and take some cuts. You can't, you can't expect these people to run the department and keep me safe and the rest of y'all safe, when they're digging their heels in and not being flexible. I'd like to be proud of our fire department, and I have to tell you, I'm not.
Thank you very much.
Very sad to see.
Thank you. Close the public comment section, bring it back to the table for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, um, two things, I think, is, is, I think we ought to send it back without those two provisions. For what Dwight said, I think that's exactly what we did last time. We came to an agreement of how we would word it, and we had to lay off, and we're getting blamed with not, oh, it wasn't clear. So, maybe we just make it clear, we have to retain that right, if we have to. I doubt we'll have to use that in the next four months, so this is just people pushing each other around for no good reason, I think, so leave it in, take it out, but we ought to send it back. But the other thing, I think we ought to come to a policy decision, and I don't know whether that comes from the city council, or whether it comes from the city manager, or whether it comes from the city manager, is when we do lay off, which we're going to have to do again, we all know that, next year, the policy of sending people home right away for three weeks. Because I look at these four we bring back, and if the same four might get laid off in July, then they get another three weeks off with pay. They just got three weeks off with pay. And bringing back the police officers, they got paid for, I think that when we do layoffs, it's not a firing, it's that you get, you work till the end, and that's the way it is. I think professionals will work their job. It's different if you're going to fire someone for, for something they did wrong. You might have an expectation they're going to take it out on you, but I think that's something that the city has to look at, and I don't know where that policy comes from and where, when we look at it, but...
Well, I think it comes from the council that when we do a layoff, it's effective that whatever day it is, it's not two weeks in between while we study.
Right. Right, because that's a part of it. For me, we bring these people back, and in July, we're laying them off again. I still have to eat that three weeks if that's the way we're going to treat it, that, that they get paid and there's no coverage.
Well, I don't know why they can't work during those three weeks or whatever it is.
So, I'd like that to come back to us.
We'll add that as an agenda item for the next session.
Well, I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor, to move this thing forward, that we take out paragraph seven and eight, which is the guaranteed employment language, and at least the copy I have is the additional language the council had at the last meeting, and that's in italics. So, five and six would go, we'd be, we wouldn't have, we'd be the four members, as I understand it, but paragraph seven and eight would be taken out, and with a little bit of luck, the, the team will approve it.
We would have to change six because that would bring back four. That would bring back four.
Right. Everything that says six is going to go to four. It's going to be basically the original offer, as I understood it.
Without seven and eight.
With seven and eight.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. I said no, and so it's five to one. And one abstention. Mr. Guston, take over on H1.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Resolution number 7557, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works to execute the interconnection agreements for net metering of renewable energy generating facilities for 12 sites: Stead Lift Station, Rosewood Golf Course, Reno Stead Wastewater Treatment Plant, Neil Road Facility Roof, Neil Road Facility Gym, Neil Road Facility gazebo, Miraloma, Fire Station 11, Fire Station 10, Fire Station 3, Evelyn Mount Northeast Community Center, and the Corporation Yard Sites.
Any questions? Move to approve? Or motion to second? Any further comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. H2.
Resolution number 7558, resolution granting approval of $15,000 to Arc Town for opening night sponsorship for fiscal year 2010-11.
Move to approve? Second? Anybody a second? Do I have a second? Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, let's move in the agenda. We already have covered I1 to the J items, J2. The Bella Vista Ranch Village. Yes, Bill?
Yes. For the record, William Goll, Senior Civil Engineer. This is a request to renew an existing subdivision extension agreement with Corona Scion LLC for the Bella Vista Ranch Village A2 subdivision. Staff inadvertently omitted a request for approval for this item. The interim security for the extension agreement will remain in place, and the developer agrees to continue to perform ongoing obligations. We request council to have staff maintain the agreement status and bring the item back for approval on the March 23rd council meeting.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frozone?
I'm a little confused by the staff report. Is this for a seven-year extension or a one-year extension?
It's, it's a one-year extension of the, of this subdivision extension agreement. It's just to renew it for an additional year.
Okay, because in the staff report, there's a paragraph that said, "will expire seven years after the date of the original tentative map approval."
That's correct. The subdivision extension agreements, the way they were written is they can't go beyond the full, the seven years of the original tentative map approval. So, at some point, they run into that seven-year window, and these, these will become void at that time.
Okay, so this one's just for...
It extends it from, from 2010 to 2011.
And then just a question for Marilyn real quickly on this one. On this one, and I believe, I don't know if the applicant's here, but there were issues with the impact fees, I believe, in getting that resolved.
I don't remember.
Can they come up?
Hi, Eric Gibbons, Corona Land Management Company. The impact fees that we've been discussing, we're working with fire and police, and it's really related to Phase Two of the Bella Vista Ranch. This is the A2 village of, of Phase One of Bella Vista Ranch. There are negotiations going on, as city attorneys can attest, regarding the fire station agreement and things like that, but that's, that's still ongoing. We're waiting for the scope of services from the fire department right now for that.
Okay, and, and maybe I just put that on next week's agenda for discussion.
Okay, I'll feature agenda items.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I'll go ahead and, I guess, what am I doing here? Approval for continuance?
Basically, we're asking to maintain the agreement status and to bring this item back for approval on the 23rd.
Okay, that's my motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. J3.
William Goll, again, Senior Civil Engineer. This is a request for assignment and assumption of an existing subdivision extension agreement with Monterey McCaffrey Foothills to HOF Financial LLC for the Palisades subdivision. Again, staff inadvertently omitted a request for approval of this item. However, this morning, I received a call from adjacent property owner claiming to have development agreements with Monterey McCaffrey Foothills regarding the Palisades subdivision, and was unaware of the request to assign the agreement to HOF Financial. He stated he would provide a letter to council with his concerns and request the item not be approved until such time that their issues can be addressed. I have not seen a copy of this letter. Following this conversation, I also received a call from the assignor's representative confirming the development agreements with Monterey McCaffrey Foothills, and his explanation was they were private party agreements. At this time, staff will need some time to review these agreements and their impact on the request, and our request is that you direct staff to bring this item back for council approval at a future meeting after reviewing those.
Bill, that would be my motion. And would you also qualify, in the staff report, it doesn't designate a time period. Would it be one year, as was the, the prior agenda item?
This, this is a assumption and assignment, so that we're, actually, we have the existing subdivision extension agreement, and it's being assigned from McCaffrey Foothills to HOF Financial. This extension actually expires in, in May, so they, the new owner, the HOF Financial, will have to come back in May and request a renewal of that subdivision extension agreement.
How long do you need?
Hopefully, we can bring it back in two weeks, but we haven't seen the, the agreements at this point, so we're going to try to get it back in two weeks, though.
Should I, should I say the second meeting, just to give you some protection, or are you okay?
I think they can instruct a bring it back on the 23rd.
Okay, bring it back on the 23rd.
Okay. Move to continue till the 23rd, meeting on the 23rd.
Do you have a sec? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, J5, discussion potential direction to staff regarding submission of a $5,000 discretionary grant application. Amber? Any, any questions for Amber at all?
I'm going to defer staff on the list.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. J6, update discussion potential approval of an alternative location for the Rosewood Golf Course as part of the construction of the Southeast Connector roadway.
Good afternoon. Julie Conway, Parks and Recreation Community Services Director, and I am here today. The item before you is to update, we're getting an update from the RTC project manager, Garth Otschel, regarding the Southeast Connector roadway, which has been under study for several years, as you know, and we as staff are also seeking council's direction today regarding an item related to the, the alternatives that we have in front of you regarding the options that are presented about the Rosewood Lake Golf Course. As you will learn from the brief presentation, one of the key reasons that RTC is here is that we're seeking your guidance about the preference about the alternatives that we have in front of you, and they wish to move forward on this project. They're at that time in the project that they need additional guidance. And staff has analyzed about many options, but we've presented the top six alternatives for you and have prepared the pros and cons for you to evaluate those regarding the Rosewood Lakes Golf Course. And there, we've made some preliminary recommendations for you, and based on that information that we have seen at this time, we have made a recommendation for your consideration. So, at this time, I would like to introduce Garth to provide a brief presentation for you.
Hang on just a second, Julie. I think, just looking at the public comment forums that were submitted, maybe those people would like to speak first because there are some answers that, that you may bring in your presentation.
Certainly.
Some questions that come forward that, that you might want to address, then. Let's do that, and I think it might be better.
Certainly.
And I, I guess one of my concerns is we're being asked to move forward with the decision today when the, the residents haven't even had the opportunity to talk about the options that they would prefer out there. I think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse here. I, I mean, I understand you met with the golf folks, and I know RTC did, but the residents haven't had their say on what their, what they would prefer having the impact of that road. And, and we had a meeting about three weeks ago about this, and, and those discussions haven't taken place from whether or not they want to preserve the golf course, whether they want it relocated, all those things. So, I don't know why we're here having this discussion before we're meeting with the most impacted people if this road gets built without having their input before we determine an option.
Councilwoman, I, I think you're, you're probably spot on for what these people are going to say, because just, just quickly looking through, they're asking about postponement. They have some other questions, but I think that's what they're going to address. So, if that's why I interrupted you rather than go through the presentation, I'd like to hear what those people have to say. I think all of us would, so let's do that, and I understand where you're coming from. Michael Snell. Is there, Michael Snell? Yes.
For the record, I'm, I'm Michael Snell. I'm a resident of Reno and live in the Rosewood Lakes area. And we've reviewed a lot of this. There's a number of us that are going to speak, I think, and there's a script. However, I have some specific questions about the options that have been presented. You, you have theoretically, you've posited that, that there's going to be a turnover of the golf course to the RTC. The RTC is going to give you money. You're going to pay off a bond. That's in all six of your options, and nothing in the options relate to the fact that the RTC can't start construction until they get licensed and permitted by the Corps of Engineer, and nothing has been stated as to what happens to the golf course while it's owned by the RTC. And my question is, who's going to take care of the golf course? Who's going to run it, collect funds from it? In, in your options, you state that, or your staff states that the city of Reno is responsible for maintaining the property after it's returned. However, it doesn't address what happens when the RTC gets the property next week and doesn't get licensed to start construction until, say, 2017. So, there's, that's something that probably should be addressed, or we should be informed about it. So, that's all I have on that particular topic. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Edward Schmidt.
Edward Schmidt and I'm Mr. Burke, and the other...
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Kim Rodemeyer. We are a coalition of the Upper Southeast homeowner associations and subdivisions in the area affected by the Southeast Connector. The groups represented are the Rosewood Lakes HOA, Herons Landing HOA, Roseview HOA, Eastside Subdivision, Hidden Meadows HOS, Mill Creek HOA, and Hidden Valley HOA. We propose that the city council of the city of Reno propose any decision regarding the SEC or Rosewood Lakes Golf Course for the following reasons. One, federal law with respect of the National Environmental Protection Act, NEPA, NEPA Section 150214 and 40 CFR 1506.1, limitations of actions during the NEPA process prohibit the exclusion or pre-selection of alternatives, including the no-build alternative until an environmental impacts EIS is prepared, which will evaluate all reasonable alternatives. If the council takes action, it will violate this provision by pre-selecting an alignment. The no-build preclusion, the selection of any alternative until all alternatives are studied in detail to determine the impacts of each, and then evaluate the no-build regardless of the fact that all the build alternatives fall within the confines of the Rosewood Lakes Golf Course. Two, no agreement should be made until the Army Corps of Engineers receives the application from the Regional Transportation Commission and renders an opinion on it. Three, the draft EIS has not been completed, and therefore, any decision made before it is completed is an uninformed decision specifically prohibited in part by 40 CFR 1506.1. Four, we want updated traffic data along with the actual traffic models for our review because we are challenging the benefit of the road given the changes in population projections by the state demographer. The significant reduction in population in Reno-Sparks-Washto County in the extreme time span prior to the population returning to the level of the recent past, which is not figured to be until 2030 or longer, essentially negates the original purpose and need for this project and allows the RTC to develop less community disruptive alignments. Five, the council has not had the opportunity to consider input from agencies, Indian tribes, or others, the general public impacted by the SEC. 40 CFR 1502.16 requires that the EIS consider the environmental consequences, which takes into account the objectives of federal, regional, and state, and local, and in the case of the reservation, Indian tribes, land use plans. Six, a nine-hole golf course may create a bigger drain on city resources and still would not meet the needs of the senior golfing community. Thank you.
Excuse me, I was just trying to write down some of the notes, her comments. Terry Thomas.
Thank you. Terry Thomas, Representative of the Eastside Subdivision. Good afternoon through the city council. I, too, am a part of the Upper East, Upper Southeast Homeowners Coalition, but today I'm speaking on behalf of the Eastside Subdivision Number Two, a community that is accessed off Pembroke on Sunnelio in the, in the western region of Pembroke. I concur with my coalition members' comments on the Rosewood Lakes Golf Course alternatives today with respect to the Southeast Connector project. However, I would also question the sufficiency of studies done, if any, to determine whether or not, A, the needs and demands of the golfing community can be met by reducing Rosewood Lakes from 18 holes to nine, B, whether such reductions in golf holes will generate sufficient revenues to cover both golf course operations and debt associated with the SRF bond services, bond service on bonds issued to provide the affluent water that is currently in use on that golf course, or will in fact place additional burdens on the city's general fund, and C, whether there have been sufficient opportunities for area golfers to weigh in on the alternative being recommended by staff today or area residents affected by your plans. I submit that I would conclude by my own experience and upon reading the staff report that the answer to these questions is no. The staff report makes no mention of any studies, not for demand on golf or for financial analysis of any of the alternatives that, that are being recommended by staff. In fact, as a financial person, the financial implication section of the staff report is woefully inadequate and contains absolutely no fiscal basis upon which this council can make a reasoned decision. It looks more like a rush to appease the RTC, who are clearly putting the cart before the horse, thank you, council, council members, for aza, before the horse insofar as they haven't even applied for a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers for the Southeast Connector. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guston, Mr. Mayor, and city council members. For the record, my name is Rick Odinski, and I also represent the Upper Southeast Coalition of Homeowners Associations. We represent about 3,000 people, and you've heard our talking points that we've raised. Let me just basically sum it up for you. We're asking you to not make a decision today because it's premature. In addition, if you make a decision today, you are in violation of Chapter 40 of the Code of Federal Regulations, Part 1506.1, which specifically prohibits pre-selecting alignment. If you go along with this, you are acquiescent to a pre-selected alignment, putting yourself in violation of the law. The 3,000 of us who have gotten together, they're representatives. We've agreed to consolidate our time and money in order to carry this forward as far as we need to go to see it done. It's just too soon. You don't have all the information, as this group, staff here for the city, has been spoon-fed information from the RTC because they have a agenda, if you will, that they want just a certain alignment, and they don't want to do an environmental impact statement. They think they're hoping to get away with an environmental assessment. We, with our discussions, are, have been led to believe that that will not happen, okay? And as a consequence, if you go ahead and become part of this process, then you're basically contributing to the violation of the law. And the other thing, as Ms. Sevraza rate, the point she raised, we haven't had a chance to come before you and tell you what we would like, okay? I am one of those people who lives out there and golfs out there quite frequently, multiple times a week, as these gentlemen will attest to. You know, I don't want to have my 18-hole options drop down to nine and then have to fight the traffic of the, of the road in order just to get off a good drive. I'd like to enjoy it, okay? And in addition, I happen to have one of those houses which will be physically closest to the new alignment of the road, okay? So, now I'm looking at thousands of dollars of improvements to shut out that noise, okay? And I'm really not looking forward to that either. So, in summation, it's too soon. Don't go forward. If you do, you're contributing to a process that violates federal law. Thank you.
Thank you. I noticed you didn't put your handicap down here on, no, that's okay. David Derucio? Derucio, is that correct pronunciation?
Irecio.
Irecio.
Thank you, sir. I want to thank all of you. Introduce myself, David Irecio. I am a citizen of Reno, and I am elected director on the Board of Directors for the Men's Club for Rosewood Lakes. After listening to these other people, I don't think I need to go into the options that we referred. We had a men's club meeting last night, and everybody on our board had made some discussions, and... on our board had made some discussions. And the main thing that we read was option number four was recommended. And again, just like this last gentleman, a nine-hole golf course, if that was in the plan to be done, we believe an 18-hole golf course would be better than a nine-hole golf course. To let you know, I am a member of DeAndrea, and I stay on the Board of Directors for Rosewood, because I think the city of Reno needs to have a big part in golf, especially for families and children. You know, if we look at the area of Washoe County in Reno, there's not, you know, eventually, when the economy turns around, there's a lot of golf courses that will be going private, and we won't be able to fulfill affordable golf for the use and families that don't have a high income. I think it's really essential for the city of Reno to keep golf in the recreation. I've been working with Jonathan and Julie, our Board of Directors, to help out in any way that we can as the member of the men's club, to donate time and equipment to help improvements on the existing Rosewood Lakes. But when we went forward with that, with the RTC proposal, that's been kind of put on hold because we don't know what the future entails. I do have copies of our recommendations for you on the options. We recommend option three, five, and maybe some alternatives to number four. I'd like to leave these with you. But there again, you know, as a member of the men's club, and speaking for all them, they also signed these recommendations for us last night, the city of Reno, we really believe, needs to have golf as a recreation and a part of the city. And we want to work with the city to try to make the improvements of Reno as affordable as possible. So, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Iricio, if you'd leave that with the clerk, that'd be great. Thank you. Judith Snell?
Mayor, council, my name is Judith Snell. Thank you for the opportunity. For your consideration, under the staff report, it refers to a possible alternative course. I think we all know that Reno is not going to be building any golf courses in the near future, both for financial reasons, and number two, because it's my understanding you don't have another, you don't have enough land in the southeast to replace the existing course. I would suggest you that as an alternative to the Southeast Connector, we have a Southeast Connector, and it's called the Moana Lane Extension, a multimillion-dollar project. All you have to do is get on 395, take the extension, go to Air Central, turn, and you're on double R, takes you anywhere you want to go. And if it's used, it alleviates the traffic. Brookside has been referred to as our senior golf course. It's gone. Rosewood is the only course in the southeast, and the lowest in fees of any course in Reno. The Reno website, Reno City, reports that we have five public courses, one in the southeast. And it is also the only course that advertises that it has disability equipment, so that those that are handicapped can play the course. If the Southeast Connector is successful, going through Rosewood, the RTC will remove 10 holes and redesign the course with nine holes. If the sector goes through with the golf course as planned, we will lose 60 acres of wetlands, and we'll be listening to the sounds of trucks going through our golf course and our residents' our subdivision. Instead of hearing four, we're going to hear the roaring trucks. I think it's incredibly important that your decision be postponed until the RTC gets its ducks in a row. While Mr. Garth did appear before us, I absolutely respect what he had to say and listened to his discussion. He spoke to Rosewood Lake homeowners association in generalities, not in specifics. Therefore, your staff report is really new to us. I thank all of you for not walking out of the room, as many as the county commissioners did last night, as the public was trying to speak on the changes on an animal ordinance. I sincerely thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that might want to speak that didn't fill out a card? Okay. Councilman Sevraza, I see why I said what I said, so I'm going to throw it back to you. Do you want the presentation from the RTC at this point?
I mean, we can have the presentation. My issue is there was a presentation made to the golf club, which I appreciate and certainly want their input. But I also believe that the residents who live out there are the most impacted by the decision of this road, if it were to move through. And so, for us to pick an option about what to do with the golf course without going out there and finding out what the residents want, do they want Rosewood to stay? Do they want it to retain as wetlands and place the golf course somewhere else, a nine-hole golf course? There's different options in here, and I think for us moving forward is premature before finding out what they wanted. And I had a meeting with RTC a couple months ago. I explained this to them, that I wanted them to meet with the residents and find out what their preferred options were before it even came to us. So, I'm a little frustrated, because I think it's premature for us to be making this decision without getting their input, when they're the most affected. I had a meeting with them about three weeks ago. It was a packed house. And they actually asked if three council members could come. I believe Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Iasi, you were both requested to see if we could have a town hall with...
But they never gave me a date.
No, no, they haven't. We haven't chosen the date.
Oh, okay. I'll be glad to go.
For a town hall, I explained to them we couldn't have more than three there. And they just wanted to have a discussion about what their options were, from everywhere, from the golf course to should the roads, should the road be raised, should it stay flat, Mr. Mayor, the lighting. There's all kinds of issues if this road were to move forward. And this issue here today is on the golf course. You know, we've talked about Northgate and doing things up there on the golf course. I think these people have the right to provide input before we move forward selecting an option today.
Let me just ask a question. Garth, can I ask you a question? What is your timeline schedule for visiting with these various interesting, interested parties?
For the record, Garth Oakso, project manager with the Regional Transportation Commission. My feeling on that is from the beginning that I took over this project over four years ago, is the RTC's intent has been to do what the city of Reno has decided for the golf course. My thinking is, would it be more beneficial for RTC to ask the citizens what they would like for the golf course, or the city of Reno to ask their citizens? Since it's a city of Reno facility, would it be in the best interest of city of Reno to determine what that option would be, or what those assets would be with the residents there? So, if the council so chooses, and I'm directed by our board, I will take the lead on that. But my thinking was, it's a city of Reno facility, and perhaps the residents could meet with city of Reno staff in order to then give us direction, the RTC.
I understand.
Okay.
And it's not my warden, that the councilwoman knows it much better than I. But I think the people are the city of Reno, and that's what we need to find out from them. So, we need to start scheduling those meetings with those people to get the input that she's asking for. And then, as the city of Reno are the representatives, then we can bring you back that information. We can't give you that information predicated on knowledge that we don't have. We don't know what they really want. And so, I think that's, I'm speaking for her, not for Councilman Sevraza, and I shouldn't do that, but I'll be quiet. Councilman George?
Is there any urgency to this item today?
The only urgency would be in that I foresee it being a complicated issue. One, deciding what asset city of Reno would like to maintain out there, and working with the citizens and that. Two, in how do we go about, as some of the citizens' concerns were, how would it go about if the golf course were to stay there, would construction coincide with operations of a golf course? Or, on the other side of the pendulum, if the golf course were to no longer be an existent, but relocate, how do we coordinate timings such that city of Reno still maintains a public facility for golfing while construction is starting? Because a golf course takes time. If a new golf course were to be built, for example...
Let me ask you this question. In the timeline for construction, how quickly do you need a decision from the city of Reno?
Well, personally, I'd like it as soon as possible. But obviously, we need to make sure we do due diligence and get the information that we need. Construction-wise, for the roadway, we're looking at probably about two years out from starting construction.
And again, how long can this process take before it starts to impact that date?
I think that ultimately depends on what the determination is. For example, if the existing Rosewood Lakes footprint were to be moved across the street from Pembroke, I envision we would want that facility up and running and able to host golfers before the construction and closure of existing Rosewood Lakes take place, so.
And I don't have a problem, you know, scheduling the meeting, and I think I agree that maybe the city should take the lead on that, to have those discussions. What I worry about to some degree is that this is going to be more of a debate about alignment and whether the road needs to be there at all. And I want to assure everyone, we've gotten past that. That decision's been made. And if it's truly, if it's truly a meeting to discuss the options for the golf course, I'm okay with that. But it's not, this isn't a meeting to discuss whether or not the Southeast Connector is going to be built. And it's not a meeting to discuss the alignment, because that decision's been made. So...
And I think, just to follow up on that, councilman, I mean, that was the discussion at the town hall, and you guys all know how I feel about that road. I'm opposed. But that being said, I believe the residents are the most affected. As I said, in your timeframe, Garth, the part through Rosewood is not that you say construction in two years, but I'm assuming the part that's going to get done first is through the Mills property. I mean, I'm sorry, the farms.
At this point, at this point, we don't know if we would start north to south or south to north. What we do...
But still, the golf course is in the middle.
Correct.
So, even if construction were to start two years, I mean, I kind of feel like you guys are rushing this thing. And I understand, we've got to have a decision on the golf course, but even with construction in two years, that's not where you're going to start.
You've got to be able to design. I mean, you've got to be able to design the whole road.
And also, in some of our mitigation plans that we have going forward, some of the assets that currently make the golf course a good place with the topsoil there is, we would want to salvage that topsoil to be able to use in our wetland restoration and our Steamboat Creek mitigation that we'd be doing there. So, while actual construction of the roadway may not occur right away, in order to follow all ordinances, we would have to be doing flood volume metric mitigation first. You know, we would have to be removing the material before we add any material. And we're looking at possibly having the roadway be one project in order to help with the economy at scale. So, there's just one contractor out there working, they can coordinate their facilities. They may need to take material from the Butler Ranch area and bring it up to the UNR area, therefore, traveling through that. So, we would want to have as much of the land as possible, either through right-of-entry or acquisition, whatever the case may be.
Yeah, I don't think 30 days is going to kill this, or 45 days, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I just, I thought, and I'm getting out of line here, but the question the first gentleman asked, Mr. Snell, I thought was pretty good about, what happens when the time you take it over from the city until it becomes operational and taking care of that land? That's important, because that's what Northgate eventually, you know, wasn't taken care of, it eventually went away. So, I thought that was a pretty interesting question about...
It absolutely is. And part of that, again, kind of gets back to what I stated before, is a decision sooner is better than later because of the complex issues we have in there. One of those being is the parcel itself is currently owned by city of Reno. The roadway through there would become city of Reno right of way. So, how do we go about working out the details of having a city-owned property that has a road then built on it, which is still city-owned property? So, our thinking would be, is we could definitely come to some sort of agreement, depending on what decision is made. And I agree, 30, 45 days is not going to be detrimental to the overall project. But at least, the process has started. That's key, in my mind. So, those would be issues we'd have to discuss, and we can certainly work that out, in that if RTC were to purchase it, which is a very difficult manner for the RTC to purchase that, because we don't own any facilities except for operational transit issues. But we would certainly work on agreement that Reno would still operate, whatever the case may be, if we purchased an existing course. But there's a timeframe of when Reno actually physically moves from Rosewood to, say, golf course A, the operations would still continue, such that Reno had a municipally-owned course in their operation.
Okay. Did you have something to say, Jeff?
I just wanted to point out that we are not performing environmental clearance under NEPA regulations. We do not have federal funds in this project, so we're not subject to the NEPA regulations. We're under the Corps of Engineers.
That was one of the questions that was asked. Okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say no. You don't have to tear out the whole course. You could leave nine holes and build another nine holes across the road.
Correct.
If that's what we decided to do.
I believe that's one of the options.
So, you could salvage the golf course to be an 18-hole golf course.
Correct.
Nine and nine. But I mean, it's just right across the street.
Councilman Iasi?
Yeah, I think it is appropriate that comes forward now, if not, that we select one, but maybe we take some off the table. I mean, for instance, I don't know if we need another golf course in this community. We know we're losing money. So, to me, building another golf course somewhere is something that is off the table. Or at least, it's off the table for these neighbors, because if we build another golf course somewhere else, it would be up to those neighbors about where we build something new, if we're going to replace it. And that, to me, is a council decision based on if I'm going to build a new golf course. So, that should be off the table, at least for this discussion, in my mind. I think it's up to the council to decide whether we build nine holes across the street or not. I'll ask them for what their preference is, but we're seeing now that the nine holes out there isn't, I mean, 18 holes is not generating a revenue. So, that's something to think about. And I think the part about us violating the law is absolutely incorrect, not only because we're not following NEPA process, it's our golf course. We could shut it down tomorrow, we could convert it to nine holes, we could build another outside of the road, we could look at some of these issues. So, I think that they're coming forward to get the feeling from the council, is there anything that we should take off the table for those discussions for the people around there? Because I personally don't think it makes sense to build another 18-hole golf course. They've been shutting down everywhere.
I agree with that part. But I mean, do we want to maintain, like you said, we need to make the decision whether we want to maintain 18 by them building nine more holes, or do we want to just keep the nine holes?
And if that's the case, Mr. Mayor, it's, the footprint of where this Rosewood is would still be a nine-hole golf course under that scenario. So, that's the discussion, whether we have nine or 18-hole golf course out there, I think that's presupposing that the roads going through there, on that location, there will only be a nine-hole golf course. And that's the discussion that should be had. Should it be all wetlands? Should it be a nine-hole golf course? Should you try to figure out something there? So, I think it's appropriate to start here. I mean, saying that we wish that there was a place for the public to start talking about, that's why it's here. This is where it starts, right here.
It's been discussed for 20 years.
They're asking us to pick an option.
Well, we don't have to do that. I know that that's on the agenda, but to say that it shouldn't come to us first, it should go to the residents, because I've seen this a thousand times. They go to the residents first, and the council gets mad because we didn't get to see it first. So, we don't have to pick an option. I think we can drop things off. We can say, what we want our staff to look at when they go talk to the public, do we want them to be able to say, do we have 18 holes out here, or nine? I think that's up to us to give the parameters. I think we'd all be upset if staff just started going out and meeting with the public without us knowing what they're talking about.
And you're absolutely correct, because Brookside was a nine-hole course, and it was very, very popular.
Yeah, but my preference, if you're asking, that's what you're asking, is to be an 18-hole course. I think you change the whole dynamic and the revenue of everything going to a nine-hole course. And Brookside was a lot, it was more of a pedestrian course, if you will. This is a golf course, a golf club. I would certainly favor the 18-hole variety rather than the nine-hole. And you know, when it talks about here, about you'd have to put either below or above road, I can't tell you how many golf courses I've played. There's a, you have to go across a road, and sometimes you can cross over. I think Arrow Creek, you can do that. You do that at Genoa Lakes, or someplace, at Lakewood, you actually go under. And so, I don't see that as a roadblock at all. But I would certainly opt for the 18 holes as opposed to nine. I think it creates other financial and revenue problems that we don't want.
That was actually one of the questions I had, is if we're going to go into this discussion, why do we have to go under or over? Why can't we just go across the street?
Ultimately, any of those options are up for discussion, and I think it would be a preference from the people that would use it. There's safety aspects of, you know, at-grade versus under-grade. There's drainage issues of going under. There's cost and expense of going up and over. So, those would all be on the table for discussion.
Well, I think Pembroke is a little bit more difficult to cross than Lakeside would be.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, that, you know...
I'm not going to cross Lakeside. I'm not going to cross Lakeside.
Actually, I think if you haven't played Feather River, you have to cross the highway.
We've all played those courses. My question is, ma'am back in the red, do you have a question? That, ma'am back in the red.
No, no, not you, sir. Not you, sir.
Ma'am back in the red.
The lady in the red.
Judith Snell.
Judith.
Come up here to the mic, please, again.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Thank you, Judith Snell. You know, here's part of my issue back there, thanks. This is not a NIMBY issue. This is a citywide issue. I repeat, five public courses. Have any of you explored the fees for playing other courses in this city? And one of the five is actually listed as Wolf Run up there, which is Arrow Creek. That's not public, they just let you play. And the other one is Instead. And I really, really would hope that you would not focus on this as a NIMBY issue. It impacts the city. And I think you're holding up really well.
Wolf Run and Arrow Creek are two different courses, because I belong to Wolf Run.
Oh, okay, so is, can you tell me that, Wolf Run, is that public?
Absolutely.
Thank you, okay, we have four, one instead. Thank you.
So is Washoe County.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
They don't have disability equipment.
And my other question is, Mr. Osinski, do you have a question?
Thank you, Ms. Adra. A lot of this uncertainty will be resolved once the RTC submits its application to the Army Corps of Engineers. It's their stated intention to do it in May. So by delaying until after their application is submitted, then it's pretty much a done deal as to where the golf course, or where the road is going to go. Then it's just a matter of, you know, rearranging chairs on the Titanic. So at that point, you know, just waiting a couple of months takes away a lot of the uncertainty, and that's the point we're trying to make, okay? As Mr. Dorch pointed out, the RTC Commission decided long ago where the road is going, what their preferred alternative is, okay? But there are mitigating circumstances that you need, that the city council should consider, so it doesn't get involved in a lot of mess. Thank you.
Would you give me some of those examples? You said there was some things that needed to be done or thought about or something?
I'm sorry.
No, never mind, never mind. Forget it, thank you.
Well, I do think it should be continued.
Okay.
Let's just continue it until.
For 30 days?
Well, can it go till May, till after you submit the application as been suggested?
I think from a decision standpoint from City Council, I think May would be appropriate. However, would there be a benefit to continuing discussions, one between RTC and City of Reno in that timeframe, and then possibly, as was mentioned before, City of Reno and residents, just to kind of get the ball rolling?
Well, absolutely.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? But won't the actual alignment, will you submit a permit? Because out here, you've got like four or five different changes within, you know, moves 100 yards here and there on the alignments, correct?
The alignment that we will be submitting is set. We have, you know, to use engineering terms, we have an X, Y, and Z. We know where it's going to be, we know the height of it. That's what will be submitted, and that's what will be evaluated by the Corps. The only potential I see is them maybe asking us to move it 50 feet here or there in order to further minimize our effect on wetlands, which we're currently down around six or seven acres. And I have that range still, because we're still evaluating the footprint of the roadway to try to minimize our flood volume impact and minimize our wetland impact. But we are down to eight acres of waters of the US that we're impacting, and we're trying to get that down to seven or even six.
So Garth, when I look at our staff report, this map that shows, I'm sure you've got it there somewhere, that shows all the different alignments. There's like four, four different alignments?
That is unfortunately.
An older one?
An old image, yes.
Okay, so one of those has been picked?
Yes. In the presentation, and it's up to council if they'd like to see it, I have it, so it's just one line.
So depending on the, what I'm trying to get to, depending on the citizens' discussion, the council's discussion on what we're going to do, that wouldn't change the permit, like if we chose one option over another, your permit would move the road at all, then?
Correct.
Correct, it would not?
Correct, it would not, yeah.
Thank you, then.
I think we're looking for a motion.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and move to continue until May, but in the interim, that we have a town hall meeting with the residents to find out what their preferred alternative is regarding the course. And, but not just the course, I think some other things need to be discussed at that meeting, Mr. Mayor, regarding Boynton Slough, and also Hearne's Landing, that issue there with the wetlands and their subdivision. I think there's some other mitigations that need to be explored if this road moves forward. So I just want it all on the table, not just the golf course, but those other issues for discussion, so.
Jessica, for clarification, you're calling at a town hall meeting, so that would be posted and any council member could attend? Sure, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Mr. Mayor, we are on J-7, and I do have a comment card on the lady who still wants to speak, she spoke in the previous one.
J-7, Terry Thomas.
I was only on J-6.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. All right, item J-7.
Yeah, that was continued to.
That's continued to, all right. Item J-9.
Oh, wait, on J-7, though, this is just for clarification, that's just so they can do the studies?
Yeah, don't they need to do that?
I mean, yeah, I don't, I think they've got to be able to go onto the property, that's all. Can I get clarification, I'm sorry, from staff on that?
Yes, mine is Steve Hardisty, City Reno Public Works. Yes, that's just a licensed agreement allowing the RTC to do their site studies for this project. They would do all coordinating through Jonathan Skinner prior to going out there. So this is just a licensed agreement for them to do their site studies.
Move to approve. Motion, do I have a second? Have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Discussion potential direction, City Attorney's Office for M Resorts LLC. Yes, sir.
For the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney. Again, you've seen this before, this is the Clean Water case, this is the case down in Las Vegas where the legislature came in and swept some accounts. And we, you provided direction in the past for us to submit an amicus at the district court level. That is now going to the Supreme Court, and we'd request similar direction at this point.
We've got to. You got a motion, do I have a second? Have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Jay Lovin.
Good afternoon, Deputy City Attorney Susan Ballroth, for the record, before you today, for discussion and possible action is the Amendment 7 to the Option Agreement with RJB regarding the acquisition of Northgate property. What this Amendment 7 does is simply extend the option term through May 12, 2011, for no additional consideration. And the second item is just to approve the size and configuration of the property being acquired by adjoining property owners directly from RJB as set forth in Amendment Number 5 to the Option Agreement. That was to be approved by the city, and I believe on Monday, you were provided with that configuration. It was just so we could make sure that there was no unusual property lines being created.
I haven't seen a map, do you have one there? I don't think it's any strange thing, of the property lines?
Yes. Yes, I do. For example, if you look, that would be, that would be one area. So all the items that are noted are parcels that are being sold to adjacent property owners.
And the further south, can you show, push that up a little bit? Did they, no one purchased down there, not very many? Are all those purchases?
Yes, correct. Yes, correct, all those are purchases.
Okay. I'll move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion, second discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously.
And for Susan Ballroth, Deputy City Attorney, for the record, that was both Amendment 7 and the size and configuration.
And that's the final one for this now, they can't sell any more property now, correct? We're done with that? Okay, thank you.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Deputy City Attorney Susan Ballroth, the second item is just the resolution moving forward the assessment process.
Move to approve, second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Tracy Chase, I'll read the resolution before you adopt it, please. Resolution Number 7559, resolution approving the cost to be assessed in the City of Reno, Nevada, 2010 Special Assessment District Number 2, Northgate, and ordering the city engineer to prepare and submit a preliminary assessment roll. Thank you.
Now I'll move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
All right, you got a second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Item J-12, upgrade on grievances and arbitrations.
Renee Rungis, Director of Human Resources, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council, and City Manager. You have before you the updated report on grievances and arbitrations. It's recorded in this report, the staffing arbitration decision that I referenced at the meeting last week, where the arbitrator stated that the city did not violate the collective bargaining agreement. He also indicated that both parties abdicated their responsibility to negotiate over safety impact, so therefore, no remedy was stated, and a split of the arbitration fees. And then, at the end of the report, you'll note on page 184 that on two discipline grievances, older grievances, that Don Christensen has successfully argued in court and received an award of attorney's fees in a total for the two of $11,400.
Move to accept the report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
They've got money for the senior games.
Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Item J-13.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Update potential direction.
John Hester, Assistant City Manager. We have contacted the county manager, let me back up this, city manager assigned two of us to work on this, contacted the county manager, let her know that we are available. She's indicated they're extremely busy and will contact us as soon as possible to set up a meeting on an action plan and timeframe to start working on consolidation. So that's my update.
Motion to accept the report? And motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Update discussion, progress of shared services.
Good afternoon, Kevin Knutson, Director of the Office of Management and Budget. Since last time I spoke to you, we have set a date for the next Shared Services Elected Officials Committee. It's on March 21 at 1:30 at the Washoe County Caucus Room. There's been no changes in any of the projects since then, and we are still working with the subcommittee to set a meeting for the next building's subcommittee meeting.
Okay, question?
Yeah, can we put on that agenda item, the prior one we just had, on discussions about consolidation with the county, so we can have that discussion at the Shared Services Committee?
We can add that to the agenda.
That'd be great. Motion to accept the report?
So moved, second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Discussion potential direction to staff, budget reductions for parks, recreation, and community service, we already did that one. Discussion item J-16 regarding legislation, will we be, oh, there you are.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Kayden Smatievich, Legislative Relations Program Manager, here with your update for the fifth week of the legislative session. I have two items to bring to you today, seeking your council direction. The first of those is AB 216. I believe Mr. Good provided you with copies of that at your most recent meeting. And this addresses what's commonly known, excuse me, as the cherry-picking provision. There's a summary in the staff report, and I would be pleased to answer any questions. At this time, staff is recommending that council support this measure.
Any discussion? Ms. President.
Yeah, I guess, Kayden, are we moving forward in supporting consolidation of law enforcement? I mean, why would we take a position on this bill, since it really doesn't affect us?
Jessica, could I kind of add to that question, consolidating under the metro model? Because that's where this would have effect.
I have concerns about supporting it, so I'm not going to.
Certainly, you know, the policy discussion about whether or not this council supports consolidation under the metro model that is detailed in NRS 280 is certainly, you know, your policy decision to make. I simply brought this forward, I mean, this particular measure, or NRS 280, is often cited as one of the barriers to cost-effective consolidation of law enforcement. It was identified in our joint AB 494 report to the legislature as one of the potential roadblocks to consolidation in our community. And so I bring it forward for your consideration. Certainly, if consolidation of law enforcement is not something that this council wishes to pursue as a policy, then supporting this measure would not be recommended.
I guess I'd need to know why we wouldn't, if it doesn't require us to do anything, it just gives us the option, correct?
Right.
So why wouldn't I want to support that?
I'll answer that. I think that this is trying to put into place one of the major chess pieces for the metro model, and I am entirely against the metro model.
But if it doesn't require us to do anything, how is that putting, I mean, if they want to, they could just require us to do it. If you're worried that that's what they're getting to, they could just, if they could pass this bill, they could just say, you're now a metro model. I think it gives us the option to look at that model as to how to do it. But this, I don't know if this limits us to the metro model, it just says that you don't have to do the cherry-picking if you merge law enforcement.
It does change the provisions for emerging under the metro model. You know, certainly, we have not seen any legislation that would require us to consolidate our law enforcement, but that would certainly be a potential. And so if that were imposed upon us, if this provision is still in there as it stands today and does not have this amendment, then it would be more cost-prohibitive for us under the current model. So this amendment to the current process would be to our benefit if we were, in fact, mandated to consolidate under the metro model.
Well, Kayden, sir, maybe this is better for the chief. Is there any cherry-picking that we would be on the downside of? Wouldn't it be the other agencies would be in a far better position to consolidate if they didn't have to assume our, what they consider to be extreme contract and salary points?
For the record, Steve Pitts, on behalf of the Reno Police Department. I would have to look at those kind of line item, those benefits, across the board to answer their question accurately. But I would say, from my recollection, you're correct. I mean, generally, you are right, Ms. Son.
So this would just benefit the other agencies?
Potentially, yes.
It would have no effect on us, because we've got the most extreme, or whatever the right word is. We've got the most onerous conditions that they would want to avoid having to assume.
Potentially, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes.
But I'll tell you why it would affect us, though, because if we consolidated, everyone in the Washoe County would have to pay it, which means if the sheriffs move up to this level, then we would be paying that difference. So it absolutely would affect us if we're doing an absolute consolidation, means everybody pays the same. So if that total cost goes up, we'd be paying our share of that cost going up, too.
And I'll buy that argument, that's another reason why I wouldn't want to support this legislation, because it's putting the cart before the horse. We haven't had discussion about consolidation of law enforcement, so why would we?
We've had that discussion for 20 years.
Not specifically law enforcement.
I sat on a panel for two years, the Law Enforcement Task I was sat on, I sat on a panel for two years, the Law Enforcement Task Force, that looked at exactly this, and the reason why the conclusion was, is because of this law, is why we can't consolidate those two things.
Mr. Mayor?
If I may.
Cadence, can I have a, I have a question, though, because, again, the city of Reno getting caught in the crossfire here. Does this bill have bipartisan support? I mean, really, it's, I look at the sponsors, and it's really going to die. I mean, and I think that's part of your job to tell us, I mean, is this even going to move down there?
Councilwoman, I wish I had a crystal ball that could tell you that.
I know, but you're seeing.
But the likelihood of this, it has not been scheduled for a hearing. You are correct that the sponsors of the bill are from the minority party. That being said, you know, the majority party has some strong feelings about consolidation. As you know, Assemblywoman Kirkpatrick, who chairs Assembly Government Affairs, and is in the leadership of the majority party, has very strong feelings about consolidation, and, I mean, I know I'm not telling you anything that you don't already know, but anticipating that perhaps this would get a hearing, and that we would be asked for our position, I wanted to bring it to the council for your direction.
And her opinion is we should consolidate?
I believe that she, that.
I won't even say, but all of them do, I mean, they did it with the water company, they want us to consolidate, they want us to do consolidation. So the odds are that if they want us to consolidate, they're going to make us do it anyway, under whatever model they want us to make, to have.
Right. And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, to follow up a little bit, Councilwoman Zodger, to your earlier comments, the current language says that the most liberal provisions, and I think that's the word you were looking for, it's liberal, of each contract would transfer. So there may be provisions in the sheriff's, in the contract with those employees, that are more liberal than ours, that we are not currently paying for those benefits, that under this consolidation model, we pay for the liberal benefits of ours and the liberal benefits from those. So I do, I mean, I know that the chief indicated that he was going to go back and look at those, but I think that there are benefits that perhaps our employees don't have, that the Sheriff's Department does have, that under this consolidation model, they would now be entitled to, and so under that model, those costs would increase.
Chief, as you see this proposed legislation, is there anything that would be more advantageous from your viewpoint of consolidating law enforcement, or would this make it, for the city, for the city of Reno specific, would it be more advantageous or less advantageous with the language that's in this?
For the record, Steve Pitts, on behalf of the Reno Police Department, I'd like to revisit one question you did have Mr. Ozzy follow up on, and make sure the council's clear on this. There have been about six different studies, three that were fairly comprehensive since the 90s, on consolidating police services, and I can make sure that information gets to Ms. Schlerf, so it's, it is distributed to council. I've reviewed that, I have not reviewed all the language on this most recent bill, but I can tell you those reports for the last, let's say, 14 years have said, as Mr. Ozzy pointed out, the cherry picking is a huge, is a huge challenge, because what you did under those conditions, sir, correct me, because you were on the board, if I'm incorrect, is you took the best of both contracts, as you merged them, and this is different, it's more liberal, I guess, the language being used. But the efficiencies, there was no information that they collected in all these studies that proved that the efficiencies and effectiveness of policing would be improved by consolidating services. And I can make those reports available to the city manager's office. Yes, ma'am.
And I agree with that, Sharon, I mean, with his statement, I haven't seen anything that says consolidating is going to save the taxpayers a nickel with cherry picking or without cherry picking, because it's not like some other entities where you can, if I consolidate police, I'm not going to be laying off police officers, it's, the reason is to get more of them on the street. But the issue is whether we can consolidate at all under one big unit, and I'm just a home rule guy, I just don't like them putting rules on me. So if this would have applied to the fire department, we would not have been able to get to a fire contract. We would not have been able to do that, which has saved us millions and millions of dollars, contrary to what people have said, saved both entities millions of dollars over time because of better efficiencies, not because we've lowered the number of personnel out there. But if this was fire, we couldn't have done our fire contract.
Yes, sir. Mr. George.
I mean, I think if we oppose this, I think we're being a little disingenuous. I mean, I think we've been telling them, we need changes to 280 and 288. Well, they're presenting changes to 280, and now we're going to say, no, we don't want those? I mean, I don't know how we take that position.
See, and that's where I'm at. I think we pretty much told them that it's not fair for them to come in and sweep bank accounts and basically impose these unfunded mandates on local government, but at the same time, we're asking for the tools, whether that's changing collective bargaining or consolidation, to, you know, deal with the budget shortfall. So I think it's optional, I'm prepared to support it.
Okay.
So I'll make that motion. We were supporting this legislation, let's see where it goes.
You have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no?
No.
Show the vote, six, one.
And I'll clarify, since I had, obviously, very opposing comments during the discussion as it relates to 280 and 288, I can buy into that argument. But absolutely for the record, I am not for the metro model.
I like the Carson Towne model better. Anyway, the vote passes.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item for your direction would be Senate Bill 192. This is a bill that I had brought for you previously with a recommendation that we oppose it as introduced. The bill has passed out of the Senate at this point, it was amended. The provision, which I believe gave us the greatest concern, Section Three of the bill, which essentially created that unfunded mandate that I had previously described, has been amended out of the bill. However, the provision that requires Washoe County to redirect two cents of its county operating ad valorem tax to the Regional Transportation Commission does remain in the bill, and so I wanted to give the council an opportunity to consider the bill as it was amended. I know that this council has on numerous occasions, given what I felt was very clear direction on your position about diversion of local revenues, and in this case, these are local revenues that city of Reno residents pay as part of their taxes, they go to the county, but they're intended to fund local services, and they are being redirected for another purpose, and so at this point, would be seeking your direction as to whether or not you support that diversion to the Regional Transportation Commission, as that provision, it remains in the bill as of today.
Counsel. Mr. Ozzy, you have anything on that, you said on that commission?
No, I guess there's going to be an internal fight about, I mean, the governor wants that money to go to higher education, so I'm not quite sure, but the problem with this bill we had before is it was onerous in what, it gave us some money, but it made us put into reserves more money than it gave us.
Right.
That's correct, Councilman, and that provision has been deleted by amendment.
Okay. So on this one, it doesn't really matter to me, it depends on what they can allow RTC to use it for, I'm assuming it's only road building projects.
You know, there has been some discussion about that, I, my understanding, I saw Ms. White of RTC in the building yesterday, I understand that they have been providing lists of projects, and that perhaps it could be used for some sewer or water projects, but again, I think, you know, I don't want to overstate this, but at this point, it may be more of a philosophical position, or a matter of principle of, you know, that this is redirecting local revenue.
This is state's local.
So with that, I would leave it to the council for your direction, I mean, if we want to stay neutral at this point.
I'm assuming the county's taking a position on this?
The county adopted a position yesterday to oppose.
Opposed to on, because they just didn't want any diversion? Is this seen as, if we agree to this, then we're agreeing to the diversion?
No, I think they opposed it, that this is two cents of their operating revenue, that they had, that they had budgeted as being, I mean, the provision that swept it in the previous session is set to sunset, and with that sunset, these revenues would be returning to the county, and they, like us, are facing a significant budget shortfall, and this diversion only makes that shortfall larger.
Of course, at the same time, the county doesn't spend any money on streets in Reno or parks.
Mr. George.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you, Dave, but in this, in this sense, and with what we're going to be facing over the next few months with the legislature, I think we need to oppose this.
Give me a motion.
And that's where I'm at, too, I think if we open the door just a little bit in consenting them taking our revenue stream, that just sets a dangerous precedent, and I'm assuming that's why the county opposed it.
Right.
Because really, that should be our decision, not that we don't put a lot of our own money into streets right now, anyway, so. So I'll make a motion to oppose.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no?
But what they're asking us to do is, we get to vote on whether we want to get beaten with a bat or with a belt.
Motion carries unanimously. All right.
Okay, thank you for that direction, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I do want to give you just two other quick updates. As of my reading of the staff report last evening, AB 144, which I have previously reported to the council on, and I know that, Mr. Mayor, you came down early in the session to support this bill, did pass out of Senate Committee today, so it is on its way to the Senate floor for a vote, where if it is approved, it would go to the governor for his signature. The measure is effective upon passage, this is the bill that's part of the leadership's package for the jobs bill, it's the one that's known as Nevada First, with the provisions for our, for public works contracts, for percentages of workers that must be Nevada residents, percentages of materials purchased in the state, those things, so that bill is moving very quickly. And then one other bill that was introduced today, Senate Bill 228. Councilwoman Sveraza, I know that you had previously been concerned about the substance known as spice, and that bill did come out today to have that included on the, as an illegal substance, so that bill came out today. We're reviewing it, and we'll be bringing it forth for a position to you at a later time, unless it's your desire to take one now.
Cadence, can we add things, can we do suggested amendments to bills?
We certainly can.
I mean, because maybe this issue of the paraphernalia, we could add to this bill, that, 228.
I can certainly look at that, Councilwoman, I'm not certain that the section of NRS that this particular bill relates to, when we add amendments, it has to be, at least at this point, that it has to be for the same section of law. I'm not certain that the paraphernalia falls into the same NRS 453-146, which is the schedule of controlled substances. I'm not sure that there's an opportunity to amend another section of NRS that relates to the paraphernalia, but certainly, we will look at that.
I mean, I think we should look at it.
Okay.
Because right now, I mean, that's embers on our hands, because we can't do it through city ordinance, and that's an issue for us.
Okay. Councilwoman, perhaps I could ask for some additional clarification from the council, that if, in fact, this would be a vehicle to introduce that amendment to, what would, does the council have specific direction on what they would like to see included in that amendment? Are there certain paraphernalia items? Just looking for a little more direction, so that I'm sure that I'm.
Yeah, I would ask the chief, I mean, that's, I mean, there's obviously pipes to smoke crack, and can we add it to a bill to make it illegal?
For the record, Steve Pitts, on behalf of the Reno Police Department, I was going to mention this under L. Five, but since you've asked now, we've been working with DEA, obviously, council gave us direction about three or four months ago on the pep spice, basically, the cannabinoids and the synthetic marijuanas, and they scheduled that last week, it's a Schedule One, as Cadence indicated, and our recommendation, we worked through, obviously, the city manager's offices, the Reno Police Department, along with DEA, will contact all the local businesses we believe are in the possession of these types of synthetic marijuanas initially, we've got a pretty good list of the locations. We're going to go out and do some education, do some follow-up, and then there'll be enforcement if there isn't, if there is no compliance. The other thing is, is I think Alex had mentioned in previous meetings about the Community Safety and Service Program, or the team that we've put together with the Fire Department Code Enforcement, and we'll utilize other collateral organizations like Public Health and organizations like that, we're going to go out and do audits of various businesses in the community, so we can work with those businesses. In this case, obviously, we would do follow-up audits of these stores that were previously in the possession of pep spice and synthetic marijuanas, and a variety of other, basically, regulatory things that that group can do, so I'd recommend those things. But the DEA Reno PD approach should probably start in about two weeks, I talked to the local, Greg Westfall, the local director of DEA, this morning specifically about this.
But chief, what about the issue of paraphernalia? I mean, is that something that we can work with you on, and I see Alex getting up to, with code, to add that to a bill? I mean, to work with the legislature and see if we can get that outlawed as well?
We can, Alex has a few ideas, and I know that Gabby has worked on this report that was provided to council this week. Our, basically, RMC mirrors the current NRS, and so we would have to look at a legislative change, and Alex might be able to answer some of the questions or recommendations he and I discussed this afternoon in the hallway, excuse me.
Thank you, chief. Alex Woodley, Code Enforcement Manager for the city. As the chief stated, that is correct, I've been doing some research since the last council meeting at other cities and other counties. The sticking point for us with regards to the paraphernalia is the wording of intent, that's what makes it illegal, is with the intent for use for, for example, the pipes, the use for hashies, marijuana, et cetera. What I have found in other counties in Washington State is that they've removed the word intent, or they've used the wording regardless of intent, this is drug paraphernalia. So I think that an amendment to that effect, or an edit to that effect, would be something that we could pursue with the legislature.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Mayor, this is the time to do it, I mean, there's no other intent, I mean, having these shops, we see them, we should take this opportunity now, especially since spice is in the spotlight, the legislature's acting on it, if we can, I think Cadence, working with Alex and our police chief, get some language and see if we can change it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, I agree, and any other changes you think are appropriate to make sure you've got a bulletproof statute that could be enforced by the police department or Code Enforcement?
Okay, I'll take that direction and work with the various departments to see if we can attach that to this or some other bill that would present that opportunity this session.
We'll work with Mr. Woodley and the chief and see what we can come up with. Okay? All right. Anything else?
No, sir, unless you wanted to just make a motion to accept the full report.
We'll make a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Motion made, and second. All in favor say aye. Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, why don't we roll right over to L. Five, because it is exactly, the conversation we were just having is exactly what Alex and Gabby and I have been talking about for quite some time, and it was part of our prior discussion. There are other locations, locales, Washington State being one, like I expressed to you last week, so I would just like for council to give direction to allow them to continue to pursue what exactly is available as history in other jurisdictions and bring that back to us, and if we have the complement of legislative action as well, that would be great. So that's my motion.
Second.
Motion made, and second, and all in favor say, whoops, wait a minute, that was L. Five?
Whoops, wait a minute, L. Five.
Huh?
Oh, I just said what you said to say.
I'd not go call for the vote, I got a couple people wish to speak. Lee?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Leah Towkin with the Retail Association of Nevada, and we are just curious to understand what would be considered near parks and schools. Our membership consists primarily of grocery stores and drug stores, but we also represent some convenience stores and gas stations that are associated with those grocers. Most of these stores are. with those grocers. Most of these stores are located near schools and/or parks, as they tend to build their businesses in neighborhoods. And typically, master-planned communities would contain all of the above. So it also seems pretty common to place schools, especially high schools, on major surface street arterials where they're also near commercial areas of zoning. And so again, we would just need to know what kind of radius is being considered to determine if the proposed change would impact our members. In addition, typically in grocery and drug stores, tobacco is kept out of the shopping pattern, behind a counter or barrier out of customer reach, and also in a locked container. More commonly, however, alcohol is located within the common shopping area, but we do not believe that minors are more susceptible to being exposed to alcohol by having grocers near schools, and that if there is suspicion of selling to minors, a sting operation would typically result, and the consequences are obviously already in place to address this by suspending or revoking their business license. So if council should proceed with this proposal, we would just respectfully request that an exemption for grocery and drugstores be considered, and the inclusion of a grandfather clause for the stores that are already located near parks or schools. Thank you.
And I can respond to that. We didn't put any parameters on this yet. It's to give staff the opportunity to go out and look at whatever options and whatever measurements are appropriate, and we would absolutely encourage you and your association to be involved in helping them come up with a recommendation.
Thank you. We look forward to that.
Eddie Lorton.
Hi. For the record, Eddie Lorton, council. Well, I ended up too. I'd hope there are no exemptions. Everybody should follow the same rules. But I don't agree with the sales of these crack pipes and stuff either. Where I had my club before, right down the street, they'd be doing this to all these people on the street, so I don't agree with that at all. But at the last meeting, what sparked this, like Jessica was wondering, they always go for the liquor license, and it had nothing to do with the sales of paraphernalia under the liquor license. That's under the general license, so you could do these requirements under their general license and attach that. And then, Dave, on the other thing you were wondering about, if they attach the license to the address or the parcel, and it's to the address, not the parcel. So just to be clear on that. And then, but you could put those down under their general business license. I don't agree with that stuff either. And but as far as, here we are again with these moratoriums and stuff. And then part of the problem, too, is that school down there, which Dwight had pointed out, was under a variance. All these people bought commercial buildings in that area down by Norm's Auto Sales, and then they gave this school a variance when people bought these commercial buildings. So that's an unfortunate circumstance, because then everybody has to stick to, all of a sudden, these rules through a variance, which they were kind enough to give these people a variance, and now people can't do what these buildings were meant for, which was commercial use. So it's a tough situation under that.
For a car dealership.
Huh?
Was it there for a car dealership? Is that the one you're talking about?
Yes, sir. But around there is all, you know, 7-Elevens, AMPMs, and it's a commercial area, but they were kind enough to give this variance. And now, if this goes through, you can't do what those buildings were meant for, which was commercial use, which, then again, you can't sell a building, rent a building, on and on. So I hope that we could come together here. I don't agree with any of this stuff near schools, but they do have laws for, you know, they don't sell to people under 18 years old for smoking, over 21 for alcohol. So I hope that the people can be diligent, and I don't know if in a certain radius of a school will prevent that or not, but definitely the crack pipes, you wouldn't want someone even to have one around it. So I'm for that, but I hope at least people can do their rules, and if they do enforce this, it's like 100 yards, but everyone has to stick to the same rules. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Can I ask Councilwoman Zodra for clarification, because on the paraphernalia, I don't think it should be sold anywhere. And so your agenda item, I just want to be clear on the motion that the paraphernalia piece is not limited to certain areas.
Correct. I mean, I want to give staff all the latitude to come back to us and evaluate the entire spectrum and bring back what they think we can reasonably enforce, including paraphernalia.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we also look at, because I'm not, I don't know if I'm for all of this, but what we did bring up during norms is maybe regulate the hours of sale of alcohol. You know, instead of outright banning it, is if you're this close to a school, you just can't sell it like an hour before and an hour after and during school hours, if that's what the problem is. But it doesn't have to be an outright ban on it. It's everyone has to live with some different regulations.
Right. And again, that's the flexibility that we're asking staff to be able to look at the entire scope and bring back the most reasonable and effective kind of ordinance for us.
But I guess it brings up a question for me, too, is what's the problem?
That's my question. I mean, is there somewhere out there that we've got a problem with stores selling alcohol near a school that is creating...
We're not busting.
That's what?
That we're not busting them.
Yeah, that's creating that big of a problem that we need to go out and change our ordinance to restrict the sale? I mean, I guess I don't know what's driving this.
We need to see. We need to see. The alcohol was added to my portion, which was the drug and paraphernalia piece after the discussion.
I'm fine with that.
So staff may come back to us and say, we really can't find that there's an issue with these points, but we do see an issue with these points.
But I guess what's driving us to spend staff time to go look into this alcohol issue if I don't know of anywhere in town where we've got an issue?
And tobacco.
For the record, Steve Pitts, on behalf of the Reno Police Department. The set team conducts, the regional set team conducts stings all year round, and I'll make sure that information gets to you for the next council meeting. That deals specifically with Mr. George with alcohol.
And I guess the question would be, is it any different, though, if it's near a school or not near a school? I mean, is the problem, is the problem a bigger problem for a store that's, you know, 100 yards from a school?
I can tell you, the Reno Police Department, if we know that there is an alcohol sales problem with minors near a school, we're going to engage in that immediately. But SET does a random sweep across the city several times during the year, and I'll make sure the information is available to council.
Alex Woodley, for the record. Councilmember George, I think what this came out from was the last hearing we had. We had an item on the agenda that has been to three different hearings.
Right.
For the liquor store, and many citizens came up during public comment, and their argument was that they were, we had too many liquor stores popping up or convenience stores which sold liquor within a certain radius of a neighborhood, or one on every block, which was the quote from a citizen last council meeting regarding Virginia Street. And in fact, there is a significant number of new liquor licenses that we have been approving, and I believe that was the concern that came up. And the mayor mentioned that, you know, we're seeing a lot more of these liquor licenses, and to see if whether or not we want to disperse them a little bit within the community so that we don't have three or four liquor stores within a single block.
Right. And I get that. I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, the issue that you're talking about, and I brought this up last time, it was okay for the school to go in next to a liquor store, across the street from a liquor store, but it's not okay for a liquor store to go in across from that, from that school.
Right.
Obviously, they didn't have any concerns putting that school there, surrounded by bars and liquor stores. But the minute someone wants to open one adjacent to that school, it's an issue. And to me, there's something really wrong with that argument. So...
Just depends on what you want to say in your committee.
I don't think it hurts to look at it.
No.
If it's a non-issue and it's not causing any problems, then it's not going to be part of what we're going to do with our new regulations. And if it is a problem, we'll address it. So there's a motion to second, Mr. Mayor.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Any K1, any boards and commission appointments? Ward Two, Neighborhood. Continue. Historical Resources.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, for the Historical Resources Commission, I would like to appoint Mercedes Delagarza.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Regional Planning.
Move to appoint Kevin Wyskey.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Don't, don't, don't. There's one that I missed. Item L1, agenda items for next council meeting. Stan Nutt, you got something?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like a monthly report similar to what we do with the arbitrations and grievances on overtime.
And I'd like to know where we are on getting with adding two years, where we are on Kefory Armstrong coming in, getting an audit of the Fire Department.
It is. It's on L7.
Oh, I didn't read far enough.
But overtime, I want to report like a tracking report where we are, Mr. Mayor.
Is that all staff or department-specific?
Yeah, the Fire Department.
For Fire Department.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any liaison reports?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think that we need to give public credit and big accolade to the Small Business Development Center up at the university. And in fact, I should have called them today to let them know that they could be here to hear this. But we all received from them a letter earlier this month stating that they certainly recognize the financial situation that we're in, and that they are not going to ask to receive the funding that we have given to them for the last several years to help with their services, but they will continue to provide for us training and analysis. And I just think that that's a very generous and respectable offer, and they should be credited for it.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Yes.
John Hester, Assistant Manager. I sit on their board, and I sent Mr. Mail as a letter thanking him for that. And in case the council didn't know, they have a business counselor in the Community Development Building once a week to help small businesses. So besides the information they give us through the Center for Regional Studies, and I know you've all seen Mr. Bonifat give presentations, so they're a great resource, and I'm glad you brought that up.
Good. Thank you. Recognition for good deeds and positive events in the community.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Acting City Manager, Chris Good from the City Manager's Office. Here's the, here we are for the second iteration of this new recurring item on the agenda. And again, I bring you three items of good news and positive events in the community. The first is that the U.S. Green Building Council released its top 10 states for LEED green buildings. LEED is leadership in energy and environmental design, as you know. And Nevada is in the number one spot, number one for LEED-certified buildings. Now, the way, the interesting thing is, the way they measure this is it's in purse, it's in square foot of LEED-certified building per capita, because the organization said what's important about LEED-certified buildings, green-friendly buildings, is the number of people that it affects in your community. So they look at this per square, as in square foot per capita, and came up with Nevada in the number one spot. Nevada has 10.92 square feet of LEED-certified space per capita statewide. We're number one. Number two is New Mexico, and they're quite a bit far behind us. They have only 6.35 square feet per capita. So we're way ahead on this. It's yet another example of the state of Nevada, and northern Nevada is a big part of that, being in the lead in green efforts and green design. Just a couple of quick examples. The Patagonia Building, which is pictured here, is a LEED-certified building. The Guy Denby Office Building on Center Street, here's an artist's rendering of it. It actually does exist there on Center Street. And there's another one that I couldn't grab a photograph of quick enough. The Desert Research Institute's Drive Six facility, which is the, that very modern computer visualization facility that is also LEED-certified. So a couple of examples, northern Nevada being way ahead of the pack in green efforts. Another positive thing in our community that just occurred yesterday, as you know, March is Women's History Month, and yesterday was the 100th anniversary of International Women's Day. This will be, we plan to acknowledge this at the March 23 council meeting with a proclamation to recognize those two things. But just as part of this, yesterday, there were 273 events held in 48 countries to recognize this, and Reno was one of those. It's with a celebration of women's rights, especially women in war-torn areas. It was a call to stop violence against women internationally, and to include women in peace negotiation efforts around the world. One resident who was actually here earlier, Donna Clontz, participated in this international movement. Oh, she is, she's here. Very good. She participated in this and put together an event on Virginia Street over the I-80 overpass yesterday, where people gathered, held signs and placards, and made their voices heard for these efforts. And then also, as part of International Women's Day, last evening was the International Women's Day Scholarship fundraiser at the Atlantis. But I want to iterate that the theme of that event on the bridge was, it was the Join Me on the Bridge program international. The theme was stronger women build bridges of peace. So that was a real positive event in our community. Third and finally, for today, I would just like to draw your attention to a thank you call that city staff received. On the night of Tuesday, March 1, a resident called dispatch 911, emergency dispatch, said there was a noisy party near his residence. The next day, he took the time to call back on non-emergency dispatch. And for those watching, I would just like to remind everyone, for non-emergency calls to dispatch, it's not 911, it's 334 cops. That's 334-2677. He took the time the next day, March 2, to call back and say thank you for the quick, prompt, and courteous response. He said the call taker was courteous. He said, if you'll excuse my pun, she performed her job with dispatch. The officer responded rapidly and solved the problem. The resident was impressed with how quickly the noise was stopped. So I just want to draw attention. The dispatcher involved was Crystal Hume, and the officer is Matthew Durio. So just a small recognition of the fine work that your city staff performs on a daily basis. And with that, I'll take any questions or conclude.
Any discussion from anybody? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. There's a blue piece of paper underneath the other chair that dropped out of your...
Oh, thank you. I didn't see it.
Okay. Item L6, discussion potential direction to staff, whether it's a moratorium or a study, or whatever you call it, on bars, packaged liquor stores, tattoo shops, gaming and grocery stores and bars, and taverns, to find out where we want them, what we want to do, and stuff like this. So let me go here with Jason Freeman.
My name is Jason Freeman. I'm the owner of Triumph Tattoo. I've been working as a professional tattooist for about 18 years, and through those 18 years, I've actually traveled around the world tattooing. I've experienced regulation throughout the states, and I've put together a few proposals for tattoo shops. Wouldn't have enough time to speak on it right now, as I got to pick up my child, but I'd like to...
If you would give those to the secretary, we'll get them to staff, and we'll look into it.
Okay.
We're not against tattoo shops or anything. We're just trying to...
Oh, I realize what you're trying to do, and I appreciate actually what you're trying to do. So...
Okay.
I'm offering any kind of service I can help you guys come up with a decision, so please feel free to contact me at any time.
We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Could you tell me, excuse me, could you tell me where is your physical location?
West Second Arlington. That's my cross street.
Thank you.
Raphael Reeves? He did leave. He's in opposition to anything on tattoo shops.
Can I say?
You come on up, Jose.
Actually, I'm all for what you guys want to do with tattoo shops. I think there's too many in our town. I, like I said before, I own the oldest shop in town, and every good legitimate tattoo artist is totally with what you guys want to do. We don't like seeing all these tattoo shops open. And what's happened with like the internet and stuff is we have a lot of not legitimate tattoo artists opening shops, and we don't like that because it makes us all look bad when we have like, I'd just say, not as classy tattooers and unethical tattooers opening up around our town. So all of us would be happy to help any of you guys in any way with doing this, and I think it's a great thing that you want to put a cap on some kind of tattoo shops.
Well, I'd just like to have some recognition, regulations and definitions and stuff.
Yeah, definitely. And there's, you know, there's other states that have done, like Oregon has tattoo schools, and that's a way to regulate it. Philadelphia has made it so there's a cap, and you have to be grandfathered in, and there's only, the only way to open a new one is to be grandfathered in unless the population surges to accommodate more tattoo shops. Because right now, we have as many tattoo shops as San Francisco, and our population's nowhere near theirs. So really, it's just taking, we're taking food out of each other's mouths. So it's, I, any, same thing. I, any, same thing, anything you guys need from me, we'd be happy to help. We've worked with you guys before too, we wrote all the health department regulations and everything, so we're more than happy to sit down and work with you guys.
Thank you very much.
Do you have, do you have a physical location also?
Uh, yeah, it's four sixty South Wells Avenue. We've been in that location about twenty years now.
Thank you.
Before you say that you agree to everything, you should know that what the mayor wants to do is he wants to outlaw that little heart with mom in it and you can only be Bob. You can only say Bob from now on.
I wouldn't mind that, I guess.
So before you say you'll do anything, I don't know.
I do mostly anything.
Thanks a lot.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you. Jose Cabitz, Cabitz?
Yeah, it's from M A R.
Jose Cabitz, Jr.?
T Y.
Kevin Hammond?
I.
Kevin Hammond?
No, thanks.
Trey Abney?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Trey Abney with the Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce. Uh, Mr. Mayor, we, we understand what you're trying to do here. We want, we want a nice looking city, we want a nice looking downtown, we want a city that'll attract, uh, tourists here and, and allow the families that live here to come downtown. We are pretty concerned about the very broad, uh, nature of this language. I know it's just a discussion item at this point, but the fact that it's citywide and the fact that it's bringing in a lot of different types of businesses, I think we need to look and I, I noticed you said, uh, study when you were introducing this, so it eased my troubled heart just a little bit, but, uh, you know, can we, I think we need to look at specific issues in specific areas. You know, about a year ago, this council formed the Downtown Alcohol Advisory Committee that Roberta Ross chairs, and if I'm not mistaken, they may be ready to make one of their final proposals, uh, next month to this, to this body. And so, you know, if there are specific areas of town, specific blocks, specific streets we need to look at and focus on different types of businesses, but, but to, to paint any one type of business with a broad brush and to say that all tattoo shops are this or all bars are this or even gaming and grocery stores, uh, which, which, uh, is, is an interesting part as well. I mean, we are talking, you know, it seems very subjective. If you're talking about a certain area and maybe it's the look of a business, then if you have design standards, that they should apply to every type of business in that area, if that's what you're going to do. But to, to single out one industry or one type of business, uh, is an issue. I, I must admit, you know, I'll take a little bit of issue with, with one of the last speakers who talked about, uh, you know, them not wanting a lot more competition, I can understand that. I can understand the guys that are in business now not wanting more guys to open up, but I, where, you know, to limit competition in that way, uh, you know, in the, in a free market that we have, I, I don't think is, is a very positive signal, uh, for this city to send, uh, to anybody, you know. Can we afford in this kind of job market to be that picky, uh, in order to, you know, limiting taxpayers, limiting, uh, potential job providers? So we just hope, we'd like to be involved in any discussion, worried about the broad nature and the citywide nature of this. Does this put Reno, uh, at a disadvantage with, uh, the city of Sparks and then incorporated part of Washoe County, if, 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 if these types of businesses can't open here for the next little bit? So I think, um, I think I've, um, made all my points and I, I appreciate you giving me the time. Thank you, sir.
Do those bars drive in, into customers from California?
I doubt, I doubt specific bars do.
Grocery stores from California? So those are things that I want to look at.
I understand, thank you, sir.
Lee? Lee, I'm being nice because I don't try to butcher your name.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's Leah Towkin with the Retail Association of Nevada, and I won't repeat any of my previous comments regarding the proximity to schools, but, um, we would just like to express our concern for any citywide moratorium. And, um, similar to what Trey just said, if there's a specific area that you feel is being blighted, uh, impacted by blight, criminal activity or public nuisance, then we can understand that being studied and, uh, we will look forward to reviewing those findings to, um, you know, see that that would support such an action. But at this point, such a broad moratorium does seem like a blunt instrument and in a time of unemployment and economic downturn, downturn, it doesn't seem wise to limit the creation of new business in Reno. As Trey mentioned, it does, that action would also, um, provide a distinct competitive advantage for those that already have the licenses as well as limit potential tax revenue to the city. So I hope that we have the opportunity to examine some other tools to address what the problem seems to be and, uh, hopefully not stifle business growth in that process. However, should council proceed with the proposed, um, uh, moratorium, we would respectfully request that an end date be included. Thank you.
Lee, do you have any, uh, convenience stores being built in the near future you know of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Any bars or grocery stores or anything being built?
Not that I can think of.
I didn't think so, thank you.
Thank you.
Eddie Lorton?
City Council, Eddie Lorton for the record. Well, we ended up, um, I don't know, under the agenda items, is this just near schools or you're trying to do citywide here? Because on the agenda item, it says schools. See L six or near schools or...
L six, uh, essential...
Near the bottom?
Allowable and allowable proximity to schools and status, but this is the whole thing, nine yards.
So is it near schools or you're trying to just wipe everyone out?
No, 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 it's near the schools, it's near everywhere. It's what we want to see around the community.
Okay, and that's where I have my problem is who wants to see that? It's the city council again, I mean, here we are, it's free enterprise here, let the people decide what they want to do, same thing as what I talked about earlier, and I know, who's to decide what an unsavory business is or isn't? By the same token, people don't want a tattoo parlor across me Eldorado, but I didn't want a homeless shelter in the middle of it, so we're back to all that.
Too bad you weren't there.
I was, I was at every meeting, tried to make a difference, it made none.
Never mind, I don't want to get in an argument with you.
I know, well, I don't know. I just don't see the town going in a positive direction when it comes to business owners, rentability of buildings, and that's why you have your laws in place, like Mr. Pitt said, that's what stings are about. If people are breaking the law selling tobacco to kids over eighteen or, or liquor, you know, to people over twenty-one, that's what they do stings for. But instead of just because we had a bar problem with one bar and now there's a dragnet being thrown over the whole town because of the control of this one bar, doesn't make sense to me. There's times to pick your battles and that's why I've been here. I mean, I'm not here under every little situation like a few people, just these ones that matter to me. So, I don't know, when you're one person alone, it's hard to make a difference, but I hope some of it makes sense. I just would like my opportunity to make some of the choices you've made, Bob, you've done pretty well for yourself, and then these opportunities get taken away through constant things like that for me or normal people on the street. How can they buy buildings, not rent them out or do businesses when it's just continuous? I don't understand it.
Well, that's why I brought this up, is I don't want it continuous, I'd like to have some definitions and directions and stuff, uh, where we want certain things or what we want in the community.
Well, it just gets...
And I've had a lot of citizens say, well, this and that, and so I thought, well, let's look at the whole thing and look at the spread, look at across the community, do it for six months and go from there.
But like before, when we did the attempt at a liquor license moratorium before election time, which we talked about, and then that's part of the reason why the ballpark gentleman had pulled out of his six phases of fifteen acres, what you wanted to do over in the Freight House District there was because the city so wishy-washy, one day we do this and then we do that.
Wish you knew what you were talking about.
Huh?
I wish you knew what you were talking about.
I was right there, well, I'm a savvy investor too, Bob, just like you.
Oh, I'm not, not saying that.
I'm aware of it.
But the baseball people didn't pull out anything because of what we've been doing.
Well, I don't know, I mean...
I'm not going to get in that, anyway, go ahead.
When you lose events continuously, why do business there? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment, bring it back to the table for discussion. What I really was looking for is some discussion and some input, I don't care if it's a moratorium, if it's just a study or what it is, but I want to look at the effects of bars, I thought you were cutting me off. Bars and packaged, bars, packaged liquor stores and taverns.
Apparently it didn't work.
Didn't, didn't work this time. You know, the taverns and stuff like this, I, I think that, uh, other states, uh, other people compare us to other states about gaming, uh, they can no way compare us with other states because, uh, I don't see bars and I don't see, uh, convenience stores, grocery stores or things with slot machines in them, bringing new customers to town from anywhere. Uh, I don't think it, uh, doesn't bring anybody from California or any other place as far as tourists goes. I think the, uh, the tattoo shops, I just wanted to know what our, our definition of where they go and what they do and how they can do. And I don't want to regulate their business or anything else, and I'm not against tattoo shops, but are we just going to have a tattoo shop every other door? Uh, if that's what you want down Virginia Street, fine with me, but, um, the taverns and bars and all those things, I just think we need to look at it and come up with some definitions of our zonings of where some things can go. Mr. Dorch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I mean, as far as a moratorium goes, I don't, I wouldn't support a moratorium citywide. I, I think it's just too, I think, one, it's too broad and I think we need some specificity in what we're looking for. Um, I, I mean, I don't even know where you start on doing a study on, on what you're, what you're looking for. I mean, I don't know if you're looking to hire an outside company to come in and do some analysis or...
No, I don't know whether it's an outside or zonings or what.
But, you know, I, I do think as far as, I think we all would agree, what we're seeing downtown as far as the, the, the look and feel of downtown with the tattoo parlors and the liquor stores, um, I think it creates issues for tourists. Um, so I think we could look at maybe some design standards and some separation requirements, maybe, for, for tattoo parlors, some things like that that we could have, um...
Zonings?
Yeah, through zoning that we could look into. Um, but, I, I mean, to go out and, and put a ban, a moratorium on, on liquor, liquor stores or liquor licenses, um, or, or gaming licenses, I, I think it's, I think that's a, a, kind of a dangerous road to go down. Um, you know, I mean, I mean, if someone wants to come in and open a restaurant, are you, are you going to say they can't open a restaurant because they've got a bar attached to it?
No, if they got a zoning and stuff, no.
I, I mean, so, I mean, I just think, I think, I think it's, I think what you're trying to do is worth looking into. I, I'm not sure how we go about it.
I'm not either.
I'm not sure how we get there. Um, but I do think, I mean, especially like with tattoo parlors and those types of things, we can, we can look at maybe some design standards for those, um, and maybe some separation requirements.
Right.
And I'd like to see, uh, the definition of a convenience store because we've had five or six, seven convenience stores open up in the downtown area and fifty percent of their products are pipes and stuff like that. Yes, Mr. Aziz?
I think that's something we brought up before, um, with norms was what is a convenience store and when does it become a liquor store? I have no problem looking into those things. Um, I think, I, I really appreciate the owners of the tattoo parlors coming in today to say they're willing to help us.
Right.
Frankly, I don't see a problem with tattoo parlors, as tattoo parlors, it's, a lot of them put up, for me, what's interesting is, I, I'll go to some of them, and their signs are so horrible, I don't know why they would go into the tattoo parlor. They're going to get a crappy tattoo because the sign looks bad. So I, I think it's just like anything else, it's how they look. It's got nothing to do with what goes on inside.
No.
It's, it's what's happening, uh, I know, I don't remember what happened, if Alex is here, but all those, even those temporary signs on Second Street that we've been allowing to sit there for a long time, those vinyl signs, I know we've, find those people, but it's sort of dropped off, off the, the radar. But I think we got to get to what the issue is, Mr. Mayor, what you want to look at, there's, it's a big broad brush.
Yep.
With the tattoo parlors, what it, is it there were some regulation that can help us out with the health department or, I was thinking when they came up, maybe it is something like a license that we used to have with massage therapists or where they had to pass a test to actually open up a, a tattoo, so everybody just can't come in here. They, we, they regulated themselves, saying you had to do so much, uh, time and working with another accredited massage therapist to make sure that you could be a tattoo artist. So that, that kind of self-regulation, I'm all in favor of.
Yeah, I think it's important to give staff direction on where you want to go, Mr. Mayor. I agree, a moratorium, we're just asking for trouble.
I don't disagree.
Yeah, I think design standards and separation requirements, the things that Dwight mentioned and what Dave mentioned are, are a good idea just to get a sense where things are at and why they're going, why they're going there, so...
I think we ought to give that to Mr. Woodley to address for us.
Yeah, even if he just did a map.
Through the city manager.
Even if he did a map.
Mr. Mayor, what I might, uh, suggest is that we come back, that staff comes back to you with not only the design standards and separation requirements of some of the, uh, types of business that, that we currently regulate, but also a look at maybe some other communities and what they look at so that you have, uh, an opportunity to, to look at. Is this what you want as far as minimizing a proliferation? Is it the presentation of the business, that sort of thing, that we could come back to you, uh, with what is currently in place and what you might look at modifying?
If I could make a suggestion, I, I think it's been a couple of years, remember we had the group Clarion when they were here, they were going to do some research and I was looking up, I, I think they were going to redo the zoning ordinance and to address this and look at it in, in that, in the zoning, uh, vernacular if you will, uh, possibly the insertion of conditional uses for certain uses in selected zoning areas.
Right.
I think it has to do more with zoning rather than, than anything else.
And I think that's where I really wanted to go instead of the other.
And I know that study wasn't done be, for whatever reason, they were scheduled to do that, but I think it, it, it looks at zoning and then the conditions you want put it within certain zones, that way you can look at it citywide. You don't have to look at it from Fourth Street to First Street in, in South Virginia and downtown Reno.
Right. Ms. Aziz, do you have something? Ms. Sivazian?
Mr. Mayor, one of, one of the issues I see, I mean, even with gaming, you have regulations, they're only allowed X fifteen machines, what is it, fifteen machines before they have to get a, a large license?
Right.
I guess that's where the disconnect is on these liquor stores and the proliferation and that's where I see where we could, could set the policy without a moratorium is a limit on the square footage of, of these stores that, that sell these types of things. I don't see why we couldn't put that, that in our code. I mean, we had that voluntary requirement on that other store, but, I mean, that's how the other things are regulated is you have a certain amount of, and then it requires an additional license. Um, I mean, you had to have a full-blown gaming license for, for over fifteen machines.
Right.
So I think when we're looking at liquor stores, I think the way to do it is you're seeing them just open with liquor and, and cigarettes and paraphernalia. Maybe the way around it is it can only be this percentage of square, you know, a square foot percentage for, for the entire, entire store.
Right.
Because that, I, I think that's, I mean, it's the same thing that we had and those eventually ended up getting flushed out, if you recall, is those check cashing places and I think it took the legislature to take action, but I had brought this up before on the agenda where they were painting it red and yellow and green and they were opening on every corner. So I think that's the way to get to some of your issues is, is maybe there's a different license for somebody who wants to open up strictly a liquor store and, and how we define that in the code because that would be more stringent than, let's say, somebody wants to open up a food mart where the majority of the square footage is, is selling groceries.
And that's what I'd like to see is the definition of a convenience store because you start looking at it and the liquor and, and the pipes and paraphernalia they put in them and some of the bars are selling the pipes and paraphernalia too, so, are those allowed? And that's all I really want to do is study it. I don't want to put anybody out of business or defer any business, but I, right now, I don't see anybody building any of these, yes.
Yeah, and I think, I think the challenge as we go through this is going to be how do you differentiate? I mean, how do you differentiate, you know, a wine shop?
Yep.
From the convenience store that you're talking about or how do you, you know, so I think there's going to be a challenge. I mean, there's, there's people that hold these licenses that do a great job, have a nice business, have very attractive business.
Sure.
That we want to see do well and prosper, yet the ones that we look at and go, oh my God, how did we let them in there, have the same license?
Yep.
But they are opening, Mr. Mayor, they're opening on every corner. That's the pro, they are.
I, I just, I think the challenge though is how do we differentiate?
Yeah, well... Yeah, well...
Well, then, I think you do it with zonings, and you do it with the definitions of what one looks like. Well, I just, we didn't get lunch, we won't get dinner. I think we ought to turn this over. Ms. City Manager, I think you ought to sign this to Mr. Woodley, but other than that, we can go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That was just a suggestion. May I have a motion on that suggestion?
Yeah, I'd like to ask staff to, uh...
Make a motion that we hand this over to code enforcement to look at other communities and try to come up with some best practices on the very things we talked about tonight. And obviously involve the people we heard from tonight, obviously, would be part of that solution.
Sure.
Our stakeholders.
Have a motion, second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go to item L7, discussion potential drug staff regarding retaining consultants for operation financial consulting. Ms. Sivazian, Mr. Isaac?
Yeah, I guess this is some clarification. I put this on there to hire someone, and I heard we've hired them. So I guess, I don't know what the parameters of, of what we're having them look at, so if I know what you guys are looking into for us, that'd be great.
We currently do have letters with both PFM and Cofory Armstrong, and I'm going to ask the budget director to give specifics on what we have them doing currently.
Kevin Knutson, Director of Management and Budget. We've asked Cofory Armstrong to work with us on one project for certain so far, and that is the Department of Taxation response and the letter that we're going to be sending down, and the presentation we're going to make to the Committee on Local Government Finance.
An audit on those funds too, or strictly, I'd like to hear from them what they're doing.
Well, they are here today, and they can bring you up to speed on what they've done and what they are continuing to do, but before we get to that, if I could just add, we've also started to scope out, looking at the fire departments, overtime and sick leave usage. We've got the matrix report that we're going to share with them, and if there's anything else that you're interested in, we could certainly talk about that.
Well, on the fire department stuff, well, maybe I'll ask them too, but isn't that a more appropriate, like, to a statistician more than an auditor?
In some respects, there's several different elements to what we'd like to look at here. A statistician would help us looking at, like, linear progressions and what the optimal use of overtime is, but...
Or just to establish what's being done now. I mean, audits do a couple of different things, they just say, you know, is what it's doing legal, is what they're doing legal, and I want to know, just if I said, how many hours of overtime was spent last March 12th?
Yeah, an auditor would help us look to see, number one, are we reporting it correctly, and have we actually done what we said we were going to do, and things like that. There's certainly a lot more that we could look at with this.
Well, so, I mean, is there any question that we're not reporting it correctly?
Not in my mind, sir.
I didn't think so. I mean, that's not what I'm looking for, somebody to audit what we're doing, but just to go, I mean, we just got our standard of cover document back, and its main recommendation is, we don't have enough data. So I think it's just mining all that information to get the data right, that then maybe we would have an auditor look at it, but just to get the data, like, from the university, if they did some, from the business school, to look at that for us, so we could get some of that information out.
Yeah, we're pursuing that as well, because we believe that there's studies that could be done that could help us most optimally use overtime, or determine whether or not what we're doing is the best approach.
Again, I don't want to, right now, I don't think we need to look at our current practices as to whether it's right or wrong. We have to go back from, and look at, I mean, the union even agreed to start looking at what happened in Clark County, make sure it's not happening here, start looking at, is, does two hours calling in early help, would it save overtime or not save overtime? And I guess I just need to know, is that an auditor's job or a statistician's job?
If I understand you correctly, it could be both. What happened in Clark County was an abuse of the system that they had set up, and auditing it and looking at how those hours were actually used could be done by an auditor. When we're talking about how we use overtime in the future, we may need help from someone who's got skills in statistics to help us determine what the best use of overtime is. So, if we're looking at what already happened, auditors can be of great assistance. If we want to look at how to behave in the future, we might need someone who can help us model it, rather than just analyze it.
Yeah, and that's why, I guess, I'm glad we have this discussion, because I'd like to know what we've done in the past. We're in negotiations now, I mean, this last two weeks has been very mind-opening for me, because we wanted something for the union, and they keep saying it doesn't mean anything. It doesn't save the city any money.
Right.
I'd like to find out whether it actually would or not. Now, if that's something that Cofory Armstrong can do, okay, but I don't know, I'd like to know how long that takes, and what the tasks actually are right now for them to do, what we're asking them to do.
Okay.
Good evening, Kristen Burgess with Cofory Armstrong and Company. I also wanted to mention Felicia O'Carroll, she's with Cofory, shareholder with Cofory, she's here as well. So, as we make our way through this and you have any questions, hopefully we can talk about and develop some of these ideas. I guess in answer to, I think the first question that was posed is, what are we doing in connection with the Department of Taxation? So our involvement to date has been to participate in the meet, that original meeting with Taxation to go through the items identified in the city's fiscal year 10 comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFER, specifically items noted in Note 19 and Note 20 with respect to inter-fund transactions. So we met with them, had some discussions, and requested some clarification on statute interpretations in order to verify or determine whether or not these really truly were compliance statute violations, namely with respect to NRS 3546118. In follow-up to that meeting, city staff have drafted their corrective action plan in a letter to Taxation in follow-up to that meeting and the compliance violations. We have read that letter, suggested and recommended language changes and additions to the responses and corrective action plan. I believe that letter, has that gone?
Not yet, sir.
It's in, it's en route to Taxation, I understand, and then we're anticipating our involvement with city staff in their meeting with the Committee on Local Government Finance, which I, and I hear is at the end of this month.
So are those the only two issues left with the Department of Taxation? Are those Notes 19 and 20?
The letter that went to Taxation, the corrective action plan, is broader than that. They had a variety of questions in connection with over expenditure, which was in a different footnote to those financial statements, deficit fund balances, some questions about, at the government-wide level, the unrestricted net assets that are in a deficit position. So all of that was in the letter to Taxation in response to the violations and their questions as a whole. Cofory really was brought in to look at the inter-fund transactions primarily, but we did get involved, at least with respect to that letter and the responses in those other areas, too.
I guess, I don't know whether this is for whoever would send the letter, but when was council going to see the letter?
That's exactly what I was going to say. When were we going to approve this action plan?
What we've done is we've drafted the letter, and we're going to send it to Taxation for them to review. Once they've reviewed it and told us that it meets the needs of the committee, we were going to come back to council, because before we go, before the Committee on Local Government, we'd want you to have awareness of it. But we wanted to make sure that the plan we were putting together would be something that would meet their approval.
But if we wanted to change something, what makes you so certain that what we wanted to change wouldn't also meet their approval?
We could make changes after we show it to them, this is really just a courtesy review.
This whole thing, we haven't seen one report from our staff about what the heck's going on with Department of Taxation. I saw one matrix of something going on about where we are, and it's things like, staff will take appropriate actions. I haven't seen anything. And that's one of my questions here, why I put it on the agenda, is, does Cofory Armstrong work for the city council, or they work for the city manager?
This letter is with the city manager?
And that's one thing I'm going to ask to change today, is, I think if we broaden the scope, that Cofory Armstrong would work for the city council and report to us directly, which is a change, because, I mean, we're being hung, we have no idea, unless somebody else knows what's going on with the Department of Taxation, we haven't been told it's been going on for months.
Mr. Mayor, and that's my issue, Kevin, when are we going to get exactly the letter, the letter that they sent to us? I mean, council hasn't seen it, we don't even know the amount of the transfers, I've heard it's 22 million, the press has reported it's 8 million. When are we going to get this stuff? I mean, seriously?
We can put all that together.
I think you got it in the spread that we, everybody was...
Where is the letter from Department of Taxation, Mr. Mayor? I've never seen it.
I haven't.
I've never seen the letter from Department of Taxation. Also, what I want to ask Cofory is, if you guys, and maybe this is a change of scope, I want to know who signed off on those transfers? How that was done in our system? The $22 million, I don't know if that's the number, but who did that? Who authorized it? Who signed it? How did this happen without internal controls? And I understand we had this outside auditor come in, and you guys weren't involved in that, but how does something like that happen? To me, that's, people need to be held accountable for this. This is a very serious matter in my mind, and I, if we do something, I do want this auditor, and I would ask the attorneys, and I've asked this before, when we had the internal auditor with the city, that the contract, that they directly report to the city council. That's a big, big, big issue of mine as well.
And I'd like to broaden that scope to look internal, because I'd like to know when we did those transfers.
Yep.
Because what I find irritating is, the auditors we had before, if it was not just done last year, but if the transfer was done before the years, they didn't find out, they didn't, they didn't report it to us on the earlier CAFERS that I saw. But I think that's an important thing, that we've got to get the public trust back to say that we fixed these problems, but who signed off on those transfers, and what year were they happening? Was it gradual over time, or did it all happen last year?
Okay.
Or what happened?
I think it was over the last four or five years, and it was in the CAFERS.
I think we just, I think we just need to get...
I want to see it, I want copies of how this was done. I want copies. Who signed off on these? And a public report, quite frankly. It's no different than what you guys did on the RTC with the overruns, we've got to start holding people accountable. And the other issue, I think, is with the, my understanding is, that one of them was brought to city council, one of the loans, but then it wasn't approved by the Department of Taxation. So I want that letter, when they didn't approve, because that's the state law, they've got to come to us, get council approval, but I'd like a copy of that, all the documents that we have had so far to the Department of Taxation, given to city council, and a copy of the letter of the response, because I think that should have brought, been brought forward to council for the remedy. And the city attorney's office, where are they in all this? Do they sign off on these? I mean, the fact that it's, that there was a NRS violation that occurred here, I haven't heard from the city attorney's office, are we reviewing our internal controls with finance? There's been silence so far, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other discussion or question, Mr. Hesch?
Yeah, there's the other viewpoint, too, and, yeah, maybe it is a good idea for Cofory to report to us, and I understand we've got an agreement with PFM, too, to look at our municipal financing. But, I mean, I guess the other piece of this that needs to be mentioned is, inter-fund transfers are done all the time.
Yep.
And we do it, everybody does it. They're reported in the CAFER, they're approved by the Department of Taxation. I mean, obviously, errors were made, but when you read the newspaper and they say there's exotic accounting, and somehow this is compared to maybe what Enron did, it's not even close.
Yeah.
I mean, there were mistakes were made, and we're going to correct them. But, you know, the conversation about investigation and this and that, over an accounting entry? I just don't see it. So I just want to make sure that was on the record.
All right. I don't disagree at all. Ms. Isaac?
Well, and, Mr. Mayor, I think we need to be cautious as a city council, to remember our role is policymaking, not administrative operations. There is some obvious need for crossover at levels, but we need to remember we're the policymakers and give solid direction to our city manager, and fulfill our duties as defined in our charter.
Okay. Anything else?
Sorry, I'm going to have to respond. This is more serious than that. This is $8 million that we have to pay back, that we have to pay back, with no authorization by the city council. This isn't just some policy decision, we have to pay back this money at some point in time, and it was never authorized by this body. We're sitting here earlier today, talking about $200,000 and how we're going to fund our programs, this is $8 million. Am I wrong? Am I wrong that we have to pay this back?
Yes, that's right. But it's not, nobody stole anything, no money's missing or anything.
But, Mr. Mayor, when we go forward and we adopt a budget every year, I'm sorry, we allocate money every year to go to programs, that's why we adopt a budget.
I understand.
That's why we're here, as city council, if $8 million was added to one fund or another, I'm sorry, that is a violation. That, I, you know what? I'm tired of hearing, oh no, this is just, this isn't that serious. Yeah, it is that serious.
I didn't say it's not that serious, I'm just saying it was a transfer.
Ultimately, we are responsible, we're held accountable, and the fact that this didn't come to us, I'm sorry, that's a problem. And we need to, we need to get to the bottom of it and find out how it happened.
Well, I don't disagree with that, and I support it, but, I mean, there's no money been stolen or anything, the money's been transferred, and we did approve it when we approved the CAFERS over the last four or five years, and sent it down to the state.
Well, we have an auditor here, I mean, I, this is the way it's been explained to me, it was, it's about an 8 million, 8.2 million dollar transfer over a period of years, starting in 2006, and it came from the, our self-funded medical plan, and it was actually transferred to the workman's comp plan.
Correct.
So two things happened, or should have happened. Once, it should have come back to us as a finding
Right.
to the council that says there were excess in the medical plan, excess funds, which would then allow you to transfer the excess to the workman's comp plan.
It would allow you to transfer it to the general fund.
Correct, and that was going to be my second point, that they have to make the finding, and then you're not allowed to transfer to the workman's comp plan, it should have been transferred to the general fund.
Correct.
That's the only place it could go, assuming you make the finding for the excess.
And you've got the finding to substantiate that you had reserves in self-funded medical in order to transfer it out, correct?
Correct. So when you say, we have to pay back the 8 million, it's not like the 8 million was squandered away, it went to the wrong fund. So presumably, if it was that bad, then the department wouldn't allow us to be working through a solution.
How do we have to, what fund do we have to use to pay it back?
Kevin can probably talk about the resources in which it's going to be paid back. Kevin?
Because those funds are unable to be used the way we were using them, our plan is to pay it back out of general revenues.
So in essence, it was taken from the general fund to go to a different fund?
Well, the way I would phrase it is that we did not sufficiently fund the workers' compensation fund over time, and now we're needing to catch up.
But you used it from a different fund.
Yeah, money from a different fund.
I'm just going to use this term generically. We give the city manager authority to spend, what, $50,000?
Twenty-five thousand.
$25,000? This was, over time, $8 million with the transfers, not approved by this council. However it comes back, but now I've got to take general fund money to pay it back. So the way, I, and the reason I want this audit done, little, maybe I'm wrong, I'd be happy to see you if I'm wrong, but it's that we moved money around to make the general fund look better. So, starting in 2004, our general fund looked better than it actually was by the tune of $8 million, that we maybe should have started cutting earlier, that it was arbitrarily posted, that we had a better general fund than we actually had. And I'm not saying, I'm not going to even go there, but I don't think that that did go to this council, and I think we may have had a different attitude at the time, if that's what was going to be the case. Maybe we would have voted for it, maybe I would have spent 2 million from here to boost up the general fund. But the point is, we didn't get that option. And what's been put in place to say it won't happen again?
And Dave, that's exactly where my comments are coming from. I think what I'm hearing is blame is being placed on current management, who were not the ones that were doing...
That's why I want to know what year.
Yeah. So, that's why I want us to be cautious and remember what our role is, because we are blaming people who've stepped into this role far after those decisions were made by prior administration.
And that's exactly why I think we should go back, because it's all being placed on last fiscal year, right now, in this discussion, I don't think it happened, and I think it happened earlier.
Exactly. And that's an appropriate analysis that Cofory could do for us.
Exactly, and that's what we wanted to look for, is to go back, just like the fire union, in my opinion, they're very, 100% saying, we welcome you to do an audit of our overtime here, so that we can be exonerated from what's happening in Clark County. I'd like an audit here, so if it's the current staff, or to tell the public that we didn't do anything wrong, it's something we've got to fix, but it's still, in my next year's budget, I've got to find some millions of dollars now, that I've got to refund that back.
Yes, sir.
But you would have had to, you would have had to do that anyway.
I would have had to do it two years ago, maybe, or three years ago, or four years ago. Maybe I would have done my layoffs earlier, and I wouldn't have a bigger budget gap as I had now.
And that may be true, but to me, the fact is, if the workman's comp plan was underfunded, and we had to use general funds to make up that deficiency, it would still have to come from the general fund in any event, so it's a timing issue, right? It's not like we have to, it have to, we have to fund workman's comp and the medical plan anyway, out of general revenues.
Other budget decisions?
Right.
And that, that's one of our primary roles as a city council, to make those decisions, Pierre.
And I don't disagree with that.
We cut and choose and transfer and...
But we need to talk about investigation, that's where I guess I draw the line.
Well, I think we've discussed this, and we know where we're going, so unless there's So unless there's something new to add, let's move on.
What's, I, I, what's the dollar figure for what we're paying them?
Currently, we have a not to exceed authority under the city manager for $25,000. I don't believe, it's like 12, I'm sorry, Kristen, for this particular project.
Yeah, we base the contract in standard hourly rates. I think we're at $2,503,000 now.
If we add on this stuff to look back at where this happened, will it exceed that $25,000?
I would anticipate no. It would not.
And do we have to make a motion to have you, and I, I know your, your responsibility is to who hired you, but to report to us instead of the city manager?
No, I think we're, right now, we're under what, a consulting contract. So that, from our standpoint, even under standards, doesn't require a formal contract. It's from the city's perspective that a formal contract needs to be in place. So no, there's no issue with us directing our conversations and communications directly with council.
Okay. And then the, the part about looking into some of the firefighter issues on the, the, I mean, what I'm looking for is just to go back, say, three years and say, give me the data on, on the use of overtime, the use of sick time. Is that a bailiwick that you guys get into or would you subcontract that out to? I don't know why I thought of the school of, the business school at UNR to do that.
I mean, again, it's data extraction. It's pulling information that's already there. It's not prospective type information or anything like that. So that's something that we could do. But again, it's data that's existing. So it's just a matter of having access to the books and records in order to be able to pull that information. So if council would have an interest in utilizing business students, Cofory can inquire of, of the school of business and see if that's something that they have an interest in doing.
Well, we want them working under your supervision.
Correct.
If you don't want to do it, we'll go directly to them. But I just know, I, Mr. Mayor, I just know on the housing stuff, they do such a great job with statistics and doing that analysis. They dig down and dig down.
And their IT skills. I mean, this is.
Exactly, exactly. They just do.
At the forefront, so absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just a, just a clarification on them reporting directly to the council. Clearly, they've got to be coordinating with staff and working with staff to get the information that they need and, and to be doing the job that we're asking them to do. I mean, they can come back and give us updates and reports, but we're not here on a daily basis for them to be working with us. I mean, they've got to be working with staff.
The difference is, is, and I really can't get into too much here. I'll get in big trouble. About, like, our, our past auditors, who they actually worked for. There's a, there's, on this whole issue of reporting back, why didn't they report to us publicly as to what was in that report? In the, in the, at the lectern? And I can't, I'm not going to go there without the attorneys because I'll say something that's going to get us in trouble.
Well, and the, the accounting firm that we had in the past probably should have reported it to us of any of these things that went over the last few years.
But I just want to clarify, they still have to work with staff and coordinate with staff to get this, to get this done.
Right. But we would get a report on what's going on too.
Right. Just if you furnish, make sure that any reports come to us and they still work with staff.
It will come back on a future council.
Right.
Tracy Chasewell.
But we want, we want it, we don't want to wait for meetings. We want it to come as soon as you get it.
Tracy Chasewell, City Attorney's Office. A scope of work could be prepared and included in that scope of work could be a report to council. So you can do that in the independent contractor agreement and we can process that.
That's a great idea. It'd be great to see the scope of work and bring even that back to see if we want to add to it. That would be very good to do.
Because it does, yeah, honing in on exactly what you want, having focused procedures should be, I would hope, council's goal rather than it being very open-ended. If you can, if we can rein in exactly what we want to focus in on, I think it's better for the city
Right.
time cost on a variety of levels, for sure.
And that's what I thought your agenda item was. They're reporting to us. We'll set the scope. We're going to do an engagement letter with Cofory and PFM after we've set the scope of work and then that'll come back to us for approval.
And if you need, oh, excuse me.
No, go ahead.
If you need Cofory's assistant also in honing in on the scope of work and, and procedures. Because I anticipate this being somewhere along the lines of an agreed upon procedures engagement, not an audit where we would have procedures that have been developed. Cofory would then go out and perform those procedures and report back any findings.
That might be step two.
Legal counsel, can I ask you a question? I've done business with Cofory Armstrong for about 35 years. Do I have to, I mean, I'm knowledgeable. That doesn't have effect on me whether I'm, we're retaining him or not. But I just want a clarification so that.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chasewell, City Attorney's Office. Why don't we discuss what that business relationship is and then.
They've never paid me a penny.
They, they'd never paid you, but you've hired them in the past is what you're indicating?
Yes, I've hired, I've hired them in the past for 35 or something years. But I've never, I've never, they've never paid me a penny. It's, I've always been it with them.
We'll, we'll take, we'll take a look at that, Mr. Mayor. In the meantime, they can go ahead and prepare the scope of work and we can get back to you on that.
Okay.
All right.
Yes, Mr. Frazel.
Yeah, one more question for attorneys. On a public records request, can we get those copies of who signed off on those transfers? Because I've, I, I've had actually people call and email. I mean, is that something that's open to the public records request?
Tracy Chasewell, City Attorney's Office. I don't know how the records were kept or if somebody signed off, so I don't have that information. Someone certainly can make a public records request and then we'll go through to determine whether there are responsive documents.
Okay. And then also the Department of Taxation letter, can we get copies of that, please?
Sure.
What, what they're looking at, Kevin, from the very beginning? All those documents provided to council?
I'll bring all those documents to the city manager tomorrow and we can go over those.
Okay. Mr. Hescheff, do you have time to work with the city manager to work on the scope of work and stuff? Okay, all right. Yeah, oh yeah, send it to everybody so we can all put our two bits worth in. Okay? All right. What, do you want to accept the report or what is that? I threw it away? Do we give them the directions? All right, we're in recess until the hour of 6 o'clock.